We're going to start the meeting in just a minute.
Okay.
Good evening. We're ready to begin. The Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be broadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I am. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Steinman?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Chairman Davenport?
Present.
Vice Chairman Goines?
He's excused.
Thank you. Commissioner Trowbridge? Truesdale, excuse me.
Present.
Commissioner Davenport?
I'm hit, no, how about, done.
Happy to be here again.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, this sounds like a mass meeting. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contends our rules of conduct. We appreciate, we would appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the August 9th Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes of August 9, 2007, of the Planning Commission.
We have a motion for approval. Please vote. Any items from the Planning Commission staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. I have down items number nine and 10. That to pull forward, to pull. And, this is messing me up. Let's move on to the housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward? Staff?
Chairman Commissioners, item 13, GPA 22587. The applicant's requested abeyance until September 27th so that this item can be heard with a related site plan review and zone change. Item 16, ZON 21702. Item 17, VAR 21703. Item 18, SUP 21704. And item 19, SDR 21700. The applicant is requesting that these items be tabled, and they do understand that they will be responsible for notification costs when they want to bring the items back. And are also items 31 and 32, VAR 23547 and SDR 23545. The applicant's requesting abeyance until September 27th. And item 51, SDR 23323. The applicant's requesting abeyance until September 27th.
Okay, is there any other that the Commission would like to have pulled forward? I have nine and 10. Right, okay. Is there a motion for the housekeeping items?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation on number 13 for abeyance, 16, 17, 18, and 19 for tabling, 31, 32 for abeyance, and 51 for abeyance.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, on items 16, 17, 18, and 19, I'm just curious, since the applicant's asked for this, is there anybody here that, you know, from the public? I just want to see if anybody is here to speak on that item before we table it.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of those items? Come on forward. Which item were you interested in?
Councilman, or, I'm sorry, Planning Commissioner, I'm interested in item 52.
Your name and address?
My name is Brian Posoda, 2727 South Rainbow.
And that was 51 and?
It has nothing to do with any of the items.
Oh.
I heard you ask if there's any items you wanted to pull forward.
Right.
On the agenda. I kind of have a favorite ask, and it's completely up to you.
Okay.
I would like to pull that one forward to hear at your earliest convenience.
Which one?
Item 52.
Okay. And the reason?
My son's first football game.
And are you the applicant, or?
I am the representative for the applicant.
Okay.
And I apologize if, in your wisdom, you want to keep it on the agenda where it is, that's fine. I just had to ask.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any others?
Well, since you already made the motion, I wanted to see if the Commissioners have any comments on pulling that forward. If it stays where it is on the agenda, you probably can go watch the game and come back, would be my guess, but any of the Commissioners have comments before I add it to the motion?
I think his excuse is perfectly valid.
Okay. You want me to do a separate motion for?
We'll do that as a separate. You don't need to make a motion on that. We can just bring it forward.
So, so move.
Okay, so, please vote on the motion. Motion carries. You have to change this whole script around, and I'm trying to find where I'm at. Okay, we're now moving on to the consent agenda. These are items that are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the department, and may be enacted with a motion. Does anyone wish to pull any of these items? Which is items 6. Seeing no one, then we'll go ahead, and item number 6 is ANX 23477. Owner, applicant, Southwest Desert Equities LLC, petition to annex property on the east side of the Polley Road alignment, 660 feet south of the Ann Road alignment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 6.
You have a motion for approval? Please vote. Post. And motion carries. Thank you.
That'll be brought forward to council in organs form.
Okay. The following items, the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. One person representing an applicant, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions, and all standard conditions for the applicant recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number 7, SUP 23436. Applicant, Eastside Pizza, owner, Boca Park Marketplace, Las Vegas, L.V., LLC, for a proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment in an existing restaurant at 1,000 South Rampart Boulevard Suite Number 7. SUP 23454. Applicant, Mary Free, owner, Scott G. Mahalik, for a bail bond service at 121 Gas Avenue. Number 9 has been pulled, and number 10 has been pulled, and number 11 is SDR 23592. Applicant, owner, Merlin T. Murphy, for a proposed two-story, 11,141 square foot office building at the southwest corner of 6th Street and Gases Avenue. And item number 12, SCN 23574. Applicant, Cliff's Edge LLC, owner, Party Homes Nevada et al., from Larry McBride Street to Brighton Village Street between Dorrell Lane and Grinnell Avenue. Staff?
These items are in order, and we did receive confirmation of acceptance of the conditions.
Thank you. These all are public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval of?
Wait a minute, I'm too fast.
Excuse me. Todd, sorry.
Or Todd is too slow.
Yeah, thank you. Todd Carl, 240 North and 19th Street. On number 8, that 121 Gas Avenue, are they going to fix that place up, or is it in pretty good shape?
Is the applicant here? Here we go.
Well, I think the staff could probably answer that, couldn't they? Some of those, I don't know what that building looks like, but some of those buildings need fixed up before they, before they get approved.
Good evening. Frank Koca, attorney for applicant.
Okay, well, let me just pull this off, then we'll take a motion, and then we'll open that for public hearing. So, we'll take a motion on 7, 11, and 12.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of, one motion, one vote, item 7, 11, and 12.
Thank you. We have a motion? Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
No matters, go forward to council on October 17.
We'll move back to item number 8, Dan, it has been read into the record. Would you give us your name and address?
Sir? Frank Koca, K.O.C.K.A.
Is that mic on?
No. Is it on now?
Yeah. Remember, the lowest bidder got mayor.
Frank Koca, K.O.C.K.A., attorney for applicant, 1900 East Panazzo.
Do you know if your client has any intention of improving, or?
Actually, I believe it does meet the standard requirements already. It is open for business, and any improvements that needed to be made have already been made. I believe the concern was voiced by someone who basically has not seen the location. I can advise the Commission that it is up to standards.
Okay, thank you. And is there, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close it, and is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on agenda item number 8, SUP 23454. Move for approval. Subject conditions.
Please vote. We have a motion for approval on item number 8. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to city council on October 17.
And now we'll move on to item number 9. SUP 23572. Applicant, Avis Rent A-Car Systems LLC. Owner, Sears Roebuck &amp; Company, to allow automobile rental with a waiver to store 10 vehicles where five is the maximum allowed at 4,000 Meadows Lane. Staff?
There is adequate parking for this use on this site, and it is appropriately located in a commercial development. Staff's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Lenny Scar, 3753 Howard Hughes Parkway, representing the applicant. What they are requesting is to have a small desk located within the service area of the office for Sears at this location, and they would like to be allowed to have 10 vehicles at this location. Actually, the business has been here for a while. They switched managers. The old manager neglected to get a business license. When the new manager noticed that a business license was not hanging there, he went down to apply for one, and was told, oh, can't do it, have to start over with a new use permit. So, that's why I'm here tonight. So, they've had 10 cars at this location, and I've been told that they rent most of them most days. So, they would like to be allowed to continue to have 10 cars there. They agree with all of the conditions of approval. I think you have one that you wanted to add, and I talked to the architect this afternoon. He has spoken with Avis, and the condition you are going to add, they are very agreeable to.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on side of it as much as manage a property that's adjacent to this site.
Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and, yeah, my, I actually get to solve the problem for myself. Those 10 spaces, so they were agreeable, and I got, it is in your package, to either move out here, or where did they prefer?
I'll tell you what I told them is, when we spoke previously, you had told me you wanted them south of the service bays.
Right.
So, if you tell me where to draw a line on this site plan, I will draw it here. But this is what I told them.
Yep. Oh, yeah, that's anywhere over there. Actually, yeah. Anywhere that, yeah, because that was where Handicap used to be, and a lot, and I know they, they're empty, it's irritating, because half the time they're empty, but it says reserved for?
After we spoke on the phone, I drove over there, and there were two cars, and then one 18-wheeler delivery vehicle in that entire lot.
Yeah, and nobody's ever over there, so, okay. Is there any other comments by the other Commissioner? Is there a motion for approval subject to one added condition, which the Director will have?
I'll make a motion to approve SUP 23572, subject to conditions 1 through 4, and condition 5 to be added by the Director.
I would recommend, Chairman and Commissioner Steinman, that the reserved spaces shall be moved three aisles south of that shown on the submitted site plan.
Okay.
As a man?
Works for me.
Works for me. We have a motion for approval, subject to five conditions. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to council on October 17.
Thank you. The system works.
The system.
And we'll move on to item number 10, SDR 23554. Applicant, Bullseye Commercial Real Estate, owner Hugh H. Tawuli, for a proposed 11,000 square foot retail development with waivers to allow no landscaping buffer along the north and east property line where eight foot is required, and to allow a 10-foot landscaping buffer along the west property line where 15 foot is required at the northeast corner of Joann Way and Cheyenne Avenue. Staff?
Chairman and Commissioners, the proposed general retail and restaurant will be within the range of uses permitted in a C2 zone. The permitted landscape waivers that were requested were acceptable as the applicant complied with access throughout the site. In addition, the site and area would benefit from this development as a vacant lot as a history of illegal dumping activity. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
They have a history of illegal dumping. This is a public hearing, or, is applicant here? Come on forward. Give your name and address, and any comments, if you wish.
Kim Hardy, 3980 Howard Hughes Parkway, Perkowitz &amp; Ruth Architects.
Ted Kruger, Bullseye Commercial Real Estate, 28632, roadside drive of Gurrr Hills, California.
Did you wish to make any comments, or, I mean, they recommended approval, but?
We are in agree, agreement with all of staff conditions, and we would certainly hope that you recommend approval as well.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I believe Commissioner Dunham.
That's correct. I pulled this forward to be heard. I just wanted to hear some compelling evidence as to why we're providing a 10-foot landscape buffer on the west property line, where normally we get 15 feet of landscape buffer adjacent to those.
There's just a small area, if you'll notice here where the trash enclosure is, that?
I'm going to have to point, I can't see where you're pointing.
This area right here, just the trash enclosure?
Overhead, please.
Is the only part that goes into that landscaping.
Let me see if we can get that focused down.
Yeah, this one's a little larger.
Now we're getting better. So, we're down to 10 feet where?
Right in this spot here, just for the width of the?
That's the only place where we're 10 feet. Everything else is 15.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of item 10 with staff's approval, with per staff's recommendation.
Staff prefers, that is correct.
Okay, we don't need any clarification on the condition. We have a motion for approval on item 10. Please vote. Post. Thank you.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the clerk's office within 10 days.
Chairman, are we going to move 52 forward?
Boy, we'll yield to the pressure here. And, yeah, we'll get that one next. Item number 52, SDR 23483. Applicant, Green Street Properties LLC, owner, Olympia, Olympia Group LLC, for a proposed 110,000 square foot, 110,773 square foot commercial center at the intersection of Osoblanca Road and Severance Lane. Staff?
The proposed project is consistent with Title 19 and town standard development standards, and is compatible with surrounding development. Staff recommends approval, and we would like to make one modification to condition number 1. We need to add SUP S7592 as one of the referenced special use permits in that condition.
Okay. And applicant?
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for being so accommodating. I appreciate it. Brian Posoda, 2727 South Rainbow. This is a amended site development review. The reason why we're here before you is because our client has picked up residual property from NDOT and from Astoria, which is a part of the mixed-use development, and it's just here before you. Everything is the same as it was before. Every, the, an acre was added, there was 10,000 square feet of building space added, and we concur with staff recommendations.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Uh-oh, the anti-football staff is going to be heard from.
I just wish that they'd show the regular site plan on the overhead. I mean, all we have is the, is a lot.
There it is. Can you see it? Okay. Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and ask Commissioner Trowbridge if you would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make one comment, please. There are two exits on this site, correct?
I'm sorry?
Two ingress egressors. Does either one of those, especially the one that has the street across from it, have a traffic light?
Yes, there's going to be traffic.
That's going to be the traffic light.
Yes, as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, this is going to be three lanes.
Three lanes.
And we've already, I've talked to Gina, and, yes, we've already agreed on that.
Can I ask you, then, if you come out the other ingress egress point, can you pull out of there and make a left turn and go south?
It's possible.
Only reason I ask is, that, that, that's a pretty good raceway around there, for the most part, and anybody who's been on there knows that. Now, we put all this square footage on here, we have a real mass of cars.
I understand.
Is, I would like to ask Public Works if they believe that is a good point, coming around a curve for there to be people coming out and taking a left turn.
It's one of the locations that we're evaluating for a possible signal as well.
And I would really agree with that, for sure.
So, while we're not committing to putting a signal in there, we're evaluating it. We may end up with a signal there. Certainly, we'll do whatever it takes to make it safe.
And I think there's compelling evidence to do that, because in order for the person who's at the far south end of this shopping center to get to a traffic light, it's a maze to get through this site, to get down to the other end, and I'm fearful that people are going to want to go out there, and we're getting too much traffic at that midpoint.
And we agree.
And just to give you a level of confidence, that's covered under condition number 16.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion in regards to item number 52, which is site development review, 23483. Recommend approval, subject to staff conditions.
As amended?
As amended.
Adding the SUP, or the, yes.
We have a motion for approval of item 52. Please vote.
Mr. Chair, I need to abstain on this item, as I have open contracts with Green Street Properties.
Show him, so, show him.
And that goes forward to council on October 17.
Thank you. Now, you tell him he has to win, or you have to come back here.
Okay, I'll mention that to him. Thank you. He's a starting quarterback.
We're going to pull item number 51 up now.
Was that approved?
Well, he said after 30, you add 3.
I didn't see it coming up on.
54.
It was approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 54, which is the off-premise signs. TXT 23597. Text amendment, public hearing, applicant, City of Las Vegas, discussion impossible action to amend Title 19.14 to provide standards for off-premises signs. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Chris Knight, Director of Administrative Services in the City Manager's Office. It's been a while since I've been in front of the Planning Commission. Thank you very much for pulling this item forward. I think the last time I was here was a little over five years ago. Some of the faces have changed, and it's bringing back memories. I'm not sure what the moment of decision was like, that I decided to leave planning, but it's been a while. The reason that we are presenting this out of admin services is because this issue is born out of the session at the 2007 session of the State Legislature. This, billboards have a long history in the state of Nevada, at least since I've been involved in the state, with the State Legislature. In the 2001 session, there was SB 265 that was passed out that required local units of government to pay just compensation when they were taking billboards down, and did not allow us to do, to further do amortization of billboards, and that was in the 2001 session. In the 2003 session, there was legislation passed that affected billboards in relation to them being done as special use permits, conditional uses, and other things in the notification on that, that was rather innocuous to the city. Then in 2005, there was SB 262 that passed that required local units of government to be able to allow billboards to do a height adjustment on highways where there were road improvements or sound walls that were put up, and we were required to change our ordinances to allow for those height adjustments. As part of the negotiations on, during the legislative session on SB 262 for billboards, the city agreed, because there were other issues identified in the original draft of that billboard legislation, the city asked the legislature not to enact those provisions. One of those was addressing non-conforming use status of billboards, and to allow the city of Las Vegas to negotiate with the billboard industry. During the interim period between the 2005 session and the 2007 session, negotiations did take place with the billboard industry that were not successful in resulting in a proposed ordinance or any adoption of an ordinance by the city of Las Vegas. Thus, in the 2007 legislative session, there was another bill, AB 438, that was introduced in this past legislative session, that addressed many of those issues and others. The city was successful again because of the involvement of our city council, and particularly our mayor, in asking that, again, we be allowed the opportunity to negotiate with the billboard industry and see if we can't come to terms in a proposed ordinance that would answer some of the concerns that they had expressed to the legislature. The legislature agreed to that with one provision, that there was a deadline, and the chairman of the Senate Government Affairs Committee had a deadline to pass bills out of his committee by May 18th of this year, and he required us to work with the billboard companies and those representatives that were at the legislature to come up with a conceptual agreement on what kind of ordinance provisions we would recommend to this Planning Commission and then on to the city council. We were able to do that by the 16th of May and meet that May 18th deadline that that chairman gave us. Otherwise, they were prepared to enact legislation that we were not supporting and we were, we were strongly opposed to. So, under that, we negotiated with the billboard companies. We then followed up with meetings on the, on the 9th of May, which started us moving towards that May 18th deadline, and then followed up on May 23rd, five days after that deadline, and then finalized the agreement on June 7th of '07, three days after the legislature, the standard session expired. So, you see the history on this, and that explains why it's, it's someone who's, myself, who's been involved in the State Legislature presenting this ordinance to you rather than your planning staff, because of the short timelines that we were given by the legislature to come up with something. The negotiating team that we did have on those three meetings was made up of myself, Deputy City Manager Steve Howchens, who's in the audience, Attorney Brian Scott, who is the attorney for the Planning Commission, and our Finance Director, Mark Vincent. We also included our Public Safety Director, Mr. Paul Wilkins, and I'll explain that in one of the, one of the efforts, one of the provisions of the ordinance itself. In the negotiations with the billboard company, the billboard industry had three primary objectives. The objectives, as they outlined them to us, were consistent review periods for existing billboards with required reviews and future billboards. Sometimes the review period is six months, sometimes the review period is two years, three years, five years, whatever it is. We settled on a, on a review period of five years, and briefing with Planning Commission members, briefing with council members, there is some issue as to whether or not that is an appropriate figure or not. Should it be three years? Should it be five years? During the legislative session, we came with five years, because that was what was being discussed in the halls of the legislature. That is a? being discussed in the halls of the legislature. Uh, that is a discretionary number that is before you tonight, and one of the things about this ordinance is you can, you have, from our viewpoint, three options. You can not enact the ordinance, you can enact part of the ordinance, and you can act all the ordinance. It is entirely at the discretion of the Planning Commission to re-recommend this ordinance forward to the city council. Whatever you do, if it is beyond the entire ordinance, we will present what was negotiated, because it was our council that request, requested the negotiations and the opportunity to negotiate with the billboard industry from the legislature. So what is proposed here will go forward, but your recommendation will go forward as, as well, if it's, if it's any different than what's proposed here, or a recommendation of just not doing it will go forward. So, um, that, that's something that I wanted to clarify. They wanted the consistent review on, on the review, consistent number on the review periods. They asked for the ability to raise and relocate billboards over sound walls and roadway improvement projects in conformance with the statutes that were enacted in the two thousand five session, which we had not fully done, and they wanted to maintain their non-conforming status and business viability of those billboards that currently meet non-conforming status definitions in state law. The way it was explained to us is when they have a non-conforming billboard and they need to make improvements to it that require them to get a special use permit, they come forward, get the special use permit, and then a review period is attached to it. Under the definition in state law of a non-conforming use billboard, they lose their non-conforming use status unless our ordinance retains that for them. And that was one of the things we looked at that said, if you're changing the billboard, why should the billboard, even though it's a non-conforming billboard, why should it have to lose its non-conforming use status? It is still a viable business entity in the city, and we agreed to that provision as well. So those were the objectives of the, of the billboard industry, those three objectives. The city's objectives in the, in these meetings were to first, honor our commitment to negotiate in good faith with the billboard industry, to the State Legislature. We had made that, that commitment in two thousand and five, we made it again in two thousand and seven, and we were, we felt compelled to meet that commitment. The other thing is, was to maintain this Planning Commission's and the city council's ability to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down on billboards, and to be able to control the quality of life in the community. And what we've negotiated does not do away with our council's ultimate approval of any billboard in this city. Uh, we, there are some administrative approvals in there, but as you well know, all administrative approvals can be appealed to our city council, and the city council, if they so choose, can always have final and ultimate authority, and that is something that we retained in our negotiations. So if you'll allow me, I'll just go through some of the things that, that, the, the details of what we, we did negotiate. Uh, the first thing was on the review periods. I've explained the, their purpose in that. Those are addressed in Section one, three, A and B of the ordinance that you have in front of you, and, uh, it basically has the five-year period to it, and as I said, that's a discretionary number for you. Height adjustments for sound walls. One of the issues at the State Legislature that was proposed by the industry was to measure the height adjustment for a sound wall from the top of the sound wall to thirty feet below, to the, thirty feet to the bottom of the billboard. As you know, that the, the message panels for billboards are fourteen by forty-eight, which would bring the, the top of the billboard to, probably, depending upon the height of it, to forty-five feet, or forty-four feet above the height of the sound wall. What we said is, we will measure to forty-five feet above the height of the sound wall, or whatever the, the impediment is, and give them the thirty-foot clearance. But what that did, not knowing the height of the top of the sound wall, it gave indiscriminate heights to the ultimate height of the billboard. And our concern with that was, uh, all billboards in the City of Las Vegas currently are restricted to fifty-five feet in height. And, uh, when you start going too much above that, uh, there becomes a quality of life issue, because what you see from the freeway above the sound wall is one thing, but what you see below the, the sound wall and in the neighborhoods is a completely different thing. So we said, we can do that. The billboard industry wanted the, uh, planning department to have administrative approval, and we said, okay, but the only thing is, is we will only give you that to an ultimate height of sixty-five feet for the billboard. And that, that gave us, and where that came from was, the sound walls typically are, are anywhere between fifteen and twenty feet in height. So if you go the twenty feet plus the thirty feet, which is fifty, plus the fourteen-foot message panel, you're just under sixty-five feet. So that would be a sound wall at grade.
Is that the maximum, or would they be allowed an embellishment above that?
They would be, according to the ordinance, they would be allowed an embellishment above that, if you adopt the embellishment provisions of this ordinance. So that was the, the thinking behind that, and this would apply only to billboards on sound walls along freeways. The, the language in the, in the ordinance is within six hundred and sixty feet. That's how we define along freeways, of the freeways. So, uh, that is, that applies only there. It, it, any other improvement above any other sound wall, other, any other, uh, obstruction, other than that, would have to go to city council. We have to come to this Planning Commission and go to city council. Okay? So there is no administrative approval outs, off of the freeways. The other thing that they, that we negotiated was retention of non-conforming use status. And this one was, as I explained, when they came and asked for that, that is addressed in Section four, G, four and five, for those billboards along the freeways. Again, we said that you can change the billboard and still retain the non-conforming use status along freeways. However, we felt, because of the impact of billboards in our neighborhoods on streets that are not freeways, there are billboards adjacent to residential areas and neighborhoods. There's billboards adjacent to residential areas on freeways as well. We're cognizant of that. But there are billboards along streets in our neighborhoods that we did not want to have any administrative approval of. If they wanted to change those and retain the non-conforming use status, they had to go to the city council, and that's addressed. The ones along freeways are addressed in Section four, G, four and five. All other billboards are addressed in Section four, H, one, two and three of your ordinance. Other proposed ordinance or administrative changes that the billboard industry brought to us were embellishments, and that was a question you just had, Mr. Chairman, uh, was in Title nineteen. Currently, embellishments are not really allowed, and as we looked at it, and we looked at examples that the industry, and I'm hoping that the industry representatives will have those examples for you, the, the examples that the industry gave us from the county, we felt that, that what they were proposing was reasonable, and we accepted amendments. We changed the definition of billboards, and that's found on the last page of your proposed ordinance, and is a change in definitions under Section nineteen-point-two-oh-two-oh. And then Section three, D, five, six, seven and eight addresses the embellishments. The issue we had with the embellishments is the ordinance currently allows an extension of five feet above, but what we didn't, and, and restricts the square footage that an embellishment can have. What we said is that, that there needs to be some control, because what we didn't want is a fourteen, a forty-eight-foot wide billboard to be able to just be raised by five feet across the entire length of it. So we put a restriction on the embellishment that it could cover no more than fifty percent of the linear side of the billboard, so that, uh, it stays within the seven hundred, or a hundred and twenty-eight, I'm sorry, seven hundred and twenty-eight square foot, uh, restriction that currently exists on embellishments, and doesn't let them do more than fifty percent of any linear side. So that was, uh, a thing that we, we did negotiate. And then final inspections. There was an issue that you hear about probably on a regular basis, about final inspections, that when a billboard comes forward for review, there is a requirement that it meet all requirements of the zoning code, and one of the, or all codes. And one of the requirements of all codes is that there needs to be a final inspection on a billboard. There are many billboards that have gotten built and never had a final inspection, and with the growth that we have in the City of Las Vegas, final inspections on billboards may or may not be at the top of the list for our Building and Safety Department. We worked with the Director of the Building and Safety Department, Mr. Wilkins, I don't know if I should say that or not, but, uh, with Mr. Wilkins, and the, the solution we came with is that if the billboard companies were to hire an engineering firm who would physically go on-site and inspect that billboard and provide a letter that that billboard appeared to be in good condition, that from a public safety standpoint, there weren't concerns for that billboard, as the Director of Building and Safety and the person that's charged with the responsibility of enforcing the building codes, he could accept that letter as a final inspection. What that did is it gave us compliance and gave the billboard industry a way to retro their compliance with our codes. And, uh, it also gave us assurance that someone else who was qualified, that was going out there and actually physically looking at these billboards and made these off-premise signs, uh, to ensure that they were still safe and that they weren't going to fall over and someone was going to get hurt. And then the last issue that was brought up by the billboard industry, and this was really at the eleventh hour, uh, was the issue of the rights of the property owner versus the owner of the billboard. And, uh, at the, because one of the things we had talked about is the non-conforming use status. Does that go with the sign? Does it go with the property? And that became an issue for us and an issue for the, for the industry. There is a concern that if you gave the right to, and the billboard folks will have to address this, their representatives will have to address this for you, but if you gave the right for a non-conforming use status strictly to the owner of the billboard itself, the sign company, uh, they lease their sites from property owners. Many property owners have that site, and it's a non-conforming site, as their form of income. At the expiration of that lease, or during the lease, if there is an out provision in the lease, if the property owner wishes to lease his property to a different billboard company, under the current regulations, they would then have to come back in and be able to, and have to go through the approval process all over again. When we were giving the option of the billboard companies, and that's one provision that I didn't cover for you, is, was the non-conforming status, one of the things that we negotiated with them is we asked them, because many billboards sit in the City of Las Vegas that are non-conforming, they don't get improved, they have a blighting effect on the appearance of the, of the, of the community, and what we asked them is, is how fast can you take a billboard down and put one back up? And, in relation to a non-conforming use billboard. They told us sixty days, but there are times that they have problems with permitting, so they would like ninety days. So what we agreed to is if there was a non-conforming use billboard and they took the thing completely down and built, rebuilt it within ninety days, it wouldn't be considered abandonment of a non-conforming use site. And the advantage to the City of Las Vegas is where you have a billboard that's in poor condition that has a blighting effect on the community, you now get a billboard that's much nicer-looking for the community. The fact is, is most non-conforming billboards just simply don't go away. They just get uglier. And what we were trying to do is be able to revamp those and have those be better-looking in the community. That issue brought forward the issue about the property owner, because if the property owner wanted to go with a different sign company and have the existing sign company take down their billboard and a new sign company put one up, does that owner, on a non-conforming site, have the same rights that we had just given to the billboard owner? And if we said no, what we then began to do with our ordinance, this, Mr. Scott can speak to this, 'cause we had quite a discussion about it, what that begins to do then is guide and direct the free-market system as to which billboard company that owner could negotiate with. They became captive to the billboard company that was currently on their non-conforming site to renegotiate. We didn't feel that was the City of Las Vegas's position to guide and direct the private free-market system. So we have in, in Sections one B and two, Section four, G-two, and Section four, H-two, made provisions in there that applications have to be signed by the property owner and the billboard owner, in an attempt to give the property owner the same rights as the billboard owner. Uh, I think the industry may come to you with some additional, uh, work that they would like to do on that, but that's, we as staff felt that it was not appropriate for us to be in that issue, that that was an issue between the industry and the property owners, that they needed to settle out, and from our viewpoint, we should just give the property owners the same rights as the billboard owners. Whatever we were willing to give to them, we should give to the, to the property owner. That, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, is, are the, the essential parts of this ordinance. Uh, you also have before you a letter, one of the things that we discussed about that we wanted to get was a commitment from the billboard industry in the event of, uh, hazardous events, amber alerts, and other things, that if they have electronic message readouts on their billboards, that they would, uh, cooperate with our emergency response system to, uh, give notification of those hazardous conditions or the amber alerts on their billboards. Sometimes that could be the most effective way of handling an amber alert. You have in front of you at least three letters that I know of, uh, from the major billboard companies, uh, that say, that commit that they will participate in that. We couldn't figure out a way to put that in an ordinance or do an inter-local agreement, and the best that we could come up with is put it on the record, and we will ask the billboard industry to put that on the record themselves, in addition to their letters, that they are committed to participating in that emergency response system. So with that, I'll close, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You confused, I just had one, you confused me with one statement.
Okay.
Um, dealing with the sign issue, and you said, in order to allow the property owner to be able to switch sign companies,
Mm-hmm.
Um, you were going to have the signature by the property owner and the sign company, but which sign company? So in other words, if he switches to a new one, he's now with sign company A and he wants to go to B, then he would get the owner and B?
Yes.
Okay, that's why, 'cause in here it didn't really, it just says the owner and the sign owner. Well, the sign owner would be the owner of the sign right now.
Yes.
So if he's going to a new sign company,
Then he would be the owner of the new sign company.
Okay, or applicant, okay.
Right.
Commissioner Evans?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Knight, before, before you leave, I had a couple of questions, and I wanted to thank you for all your work on this. Uh, I think the city stepped forward and probably done a, as usual, a yeoman's job. You mentioned that the industry was concerned about consistent review periods, and you mentioned both the time parameter of five years and also three. And I would concur that the consistency would probably be, benefit everyone, but I'm wondering if there are advantages to the lesser period of three years in areas of the city that are seeing accelerated changes. One of the things that we hope to do in many cases is, as, particularly in the downtown area, uh, in the Union Park and et cetera, um, if in fact, there were substantial, um, changes to the area, perhaps three years, um, might be more appropriate, but I'm wondering if that will just then create, uh, you know, additional chaos. And then, uh, two other questions before I forget. You also mentioned that, um, the retention of the non-conforming use status, and you said something to the effect that in the City of Las Vegas, um, all billboards are limited to fifty-five feet in height. Um, I'm assuming that's on new billboards, not the non-conforming older billboards?
I would think that if a non-conforming billboard is higher than fifty-five feet, it has that non-conforming status. I'm not aware of any, the, the special heights on that. I was just going by the current code requires billboards to be fifty-five feet.
But there's no provision in the ordinance in this that would require the height reduction in a non-conforming use that came forward for, uh, there's nothing to reduce the height, is that correct?
No, so there's not.
Okay, and then finally, maybe before you, before you conclude, um, this evening, um, you indicated that the ordinance, uh, has a provision where final safety inspections, uh, can be conducted by persons of the industry's choosing and in their employ. And sort of a rhetorical question or something I'd like to throw out, is that in any way ab- abdicating our responsibility to public safety? And what are our assurances that any inspections would in fact be done by people who, uh, aren't playing fast with the facts?
Well, I think, I think in, in all situations, you have the possibility for people playing fast with the facts, but from our Building and Safety Director's standpoint, uh, it's the qualifications of that engineering firm. There are, there are engineering firms that are not qualified under, under his standards that he set forth to make those inspections, and honestly, I can't remember off the top of my head, but they have to be a licensed engineer in the state of Nevada, and they have to have certain expertise, and he spelled that out. Uh, I think that the industry has been working with him and can probably answer that better than I can, as to exactly what than I can, as to exactly what the qualifications of that engineering firm would be.
If there were a problem, would the liability, the legal liability then go on that engineer or on whoever paid them? Or would the city be found not to be liable in any way?
I don't know, and I'll let Mr. Scott answer that. I don't know if the city can ever get out totally underneath liability.
Commissioner, you know, the city can be sued for anything, and we often are, for, for every reason or no reason at all. So really, the licensed engineer is the one who's putting his, his or herself on the line when they're certifying that that board is, is, is of standard, or is, is up to par. So really, the first line defense is going to go with them, because they are the ones that are certifying it as being a, a, have a, a structure that's able to, to be there.
In answer to your question, your first question about the review periods, I, I think that as we brief the city council members, I think there is some justification for consideration of a number other than five years. We've shared that consideration with the billboard industry. They asked us to leave it at five years and let them justify the five years. But from our council's viewpoint, and some, some of our council members, it's not all of them, but some of our council members brought up the exact point that you brought up, Commissioner Evans, that with the, the rapid change in growth in some of the areas, maybe five years is too long, because there is the ability to take down that billboard if a residential area, residential neighborhood develops around the billboard and it has a negative effect, and the five years would allow you to take it down. The other thing is, is five years is beyond the four-year term limit of our, of our city council, and possibly, because you're associated with the council members, your terms on the planning commission, which would mean that the council member would see, again, going back to the city council's ability to say yes or no to a billboard, and if you give it a five-year review period, that council member would not see that review during their current term, if they were just beginning a term. So there is some, some consideration on the part of the city at, at looking at a different number other than the five years.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge that what you've done has gone a long way towards helping the city establish what will become a model policy for the rest of the valley. So congratulations on that part. You addressed a lot of the concerns. We've had problems with an ongoing basis here at this level, but there's some questions I need to ask, so I'm just going to go ahead. The illumination levels are addressed in 3D7, and I wonder if that verbiage gives us adequate protection from what's being discussed now coming along I-15 from one of the signs from one of the casinos, that's an animated sign. Are we comfortable with this, with this language? I know you've been working on it for several months.
Yes, sir. I, I will have to apologize, that was not part of what we had negotiated, and we haven't been looking at that, and perhaps that would be an issue that you would want to have your planning staff take a look at, or maybe they can respond to it. But as far as our negotiations, they were complete before that issue came up, and we have not looked at them. I apologize for that.
Commissioner, I could just clarify one thing. By the term illumination, we don't mean the video digital displays, we just simply mean the lighting up of the sign, you know, those, the uplights that actually light up a sign, not the digital displays that you're talking about with regard to, when they were talking about Mandalay Bay sign and those type of things. That's not the type of illumination we're talking about. We're talking about just the uplighting of the sign.
So that would be covered someplace else at another time?
The digital displays? Yes. It's not in this, it's, the illumination that we're speaking of in this, in this code section does not refer to the, the video digital display.
Okay, that just alerted everybody, it's an issue that's certainly hit the county and will probably hit here too, so we need to be ready to address it. The next one we have, we, we address embellishments, we talk about the size of them, which is, which is fine, but how does a owner of the sign, do they come forward and get approval each time they want to put up a new sign that's going to have an embellishment? Is that an administrative approval at the planning commission level?
It is an administrative approval. Again, those administrative approvals can be appealed.
But it would be, it would be...
It would be administrative.
Each time they have to come forward?
Each time, yes. And in the ordinance, it says that they, to do the embellishment, they would send notification to the planning director, and with, with the plans and the description of what that embellishment is, the planning director has 10 days to review it, give comment back, if, if they don't like it, if there's, needs to be something different, it doesn't conform to the code, to, to begin communication with the billboard industry. If there is no response within the 10 days, it's considered to be approved, and, and the billboard company would then have the ability to put the embellishment up. I thought you were going to go, and maybe I should point out, one of the other issues that we addressed for embellishments is currently, the embellishments do not allow for additional verbiage to be on there. If you have a hand sticking up on a billboard that shows a wristwatch, and the wristwatch says Rolex, but the billboard is about something else, our ordinance doesn't currently allow that. We said that's fine, it can allow that. The examples, again, that they showed us of what was done in the county and other parts of the state and the country did not cause us to have great alarm, simply because there was an additional word on that, that embellishment. So we agreed to that as well. So thank you for reminding me of that.
Commissioner, for the record, that section that you're referring to is section 2D5, which refers to the embellishments and the, submitting them to the planning director.
And then when I get to the, to the end there, H3 talks about the 90 days. I, I think it's good that the owner of the property certainly maintains control, but when do the 90 days start? Is it at the expiration of the initial lease? Is it when the existing sign is removed? Is the 90 days, if it gets all hung up at the, oh gosh, could it get hung up at the planning department, you know, or here at this level? You know, the 90 days, how much of that time is guaranteed to the, to the person who needs to erect the sign?
Again, we talked extensively with the billboard industry about their responsibilities in communicating with the city of Las Vegas, in getting permits, and, and getting inspections and doing the things that they have a responsibility in, in negotiating this, to be responsive back to the city of Las Vegas. They are, will be required to notify the city when that comes down and get the necessary permits, and, and that notification, when that notification, and that would be a, an implementation detail, I think that the, the planning department would need to work out, or Mr. Scott can help me with. But once that notification lands in the planning department or building and safety department, that 90-day period will begin then. And it is their responsibility, if they take a billboard down and don't notify the city and go beyond 90 days, and the city becomes aware of it and it's beyond the 90 days, they will lose that nonconforming use site, the property owner as well as the billboard company. So it would be considered an abandoned, nonconforming use site. So they have an obligation to protect themselves with that 90-day time period, to communicate with the city in good faith, and we have been very upfront with them about that, that they sometimes are lax in their, in their responsibility to the city in getting permits and, and doing, and communicating with the city. And they had agreed in the notification that they would, they would be more diligent in that, that issue.
I, I think that you've got the owner of the property who has a financial vested interest, you've got the owner of the sign who has a financial interest in getting it up too. Where it could, could fall apart, and I can't say this in polite fashion, would be somewhere between the building and safety department and the department of planning and development, where it could get hung up, and all of a sudden, the clock is ticking, and if they don't get that thing back in time to order that expensive pole or illumination, because some of these signs can be, the cheap ones are a hundred thousand, the expensive ones are now hitting a million dollars. You're not going to make a contractual commitment to a sign maker until you've got the approval in your fist. And so if it takes you 60 days to get the approval in your fist, and you're trying to order a million dollar sign, it has to be built down at Yescos Sign Company and you're number 10 in line, you may not make the 90 days, that two-thirds of it got absorbed or consumed rather by getting the permit. So I think it would be better if there was some kind of time for the sign to get erected after it's been permitted.
And, and I think that was...
Just lumping it all together, and we've got 90 days, and sorry, but, you know, Sally was on vacation for those three weeks, and then, damn, she didn't have a heart attack, and so that's why it didn't get approved, and I'm sorry you can't have a sign now.
Your points are very well taken, and, and they're good, and maybe the industry can address this as well when they come up to speak. But I think from the way we were thinking as a negotiating team, is that if you're building a million dollar billboard, you would probably want to know before you order that billboard and before you take one down, that you have a permit to put another one up, and that you would, in good business practice, go and get your permits ahead of time, notify the city, I'm going to be taking it down, start the clock ticking, order the billboard, and get it up in, in 90 days. That's why we asked them, how long does it take you to take one down and build a new one? And they, and they said...
So they can take the permitting process any time they need to.
Certainly, any time they need to.
Okay, all right, then that resolves my worries.
Okay.
But I still have one left that's bugging me, and that is that if they can just replace the sign, who gets to approve the aesthetics of that sign? We talk all the time about the ugly signs, and then we always set as the model, the nice-looking billboards that are along I-15 there by the World Trade Center. They have a, a different types of base that are constructed so as they match the building, and it's much more aesthetically pleasing. But is there any review of the aesthetics of the sign? Not the content, I understand that.
Right. I, I think that the whole discussion centered around the fact that the current modern standards for billboards are far more aesthetically pleasing than the two steel I-beams sticking up out of the ground that we had, the monopoles that they have today and those kinds of things. And I don't think we talked about, we weren't contemplating creating a standard that would be above the common standard that's in the industry today, from an aesthetic standpoint. So in answer to your question, I don't believe that that's contemplated in the ordinance, that, that there would be an aesthetic review, because we felt that the aesthetics came inherent with the standard model in the billboard industry for a new billboard, as opposed to what you had with an older, nonconforming billboard.
There's, there's all kinds of structural things they can do about the pigeon of bait and efforts and things along those lines that may need to be addressed.
That's very understood. It's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steinman?
I wanted to ask you, if a standard billboard is 672 square feet, it would appear from this ordinance that there probably going to be an embellishment on every sign we get in this town. Now, I've been an opponent of embellishments because they violate it, okay? If it's going to be a part of this, that's fine with me, but shouldn't we be stating that signs can be 800 square feet in this town? Because that's what we're going to allow. It's not 672 anymore, it's going to be 800 square feet. And also, Chris, as I read the definition of the embellishment, it appears as though the embellishment can go anywhere around that sign, on the bottom, on the sides, on the top, as long as it doesn't exceed 128 in square footage. Is that correct?
That would be correct, and as long as it doesn't exceed the 50% figure of any one of your sign.
Yeah, of letters and numbers, right?
You are correct.
Okay, all right, I wanted to make that, thank you very much.
No?
Commissioner Trusdale?
Okay. With regard, back to the embellishment, don't we have a minimum height from the ground the sign has to be, so the embellishment couldn't go to the ground, right? Or do we not?
I believe the embellishment can only extend five feet outside, or five feet outside the boundaries of the 14 by 48 foot sign.
Yes, okay. I, I...
On any side, five feet.
The, a couple of things in here where it talks about if the director doesn't approve something within 10 days, it's automatically approved. My concern is, in good, all good intention, something gets approved that actually winds up, it's submitted wrong, it's outside the parameters what's approved, but yet since it didn't get caught, there was no absolute obligation to respond, the, that particular sign winds up with something that's an aberration through no, no conscious fault of anybody. I mean, that's, I'm, I'm concerned about the city being in a position where something's automatically approved for non-action. I think, I think that's potentially a pitfall, and maybe we can work through the, the technical sides of that. The, the other part of this, that, whether we make, whether we suggest a, a three-year, five-year review, would that start from the time we, across the board in the community when we, if we do this ordinance, or each sign still has its current review period as it's of record?
You want to answer that?
As the signs come up for review, Commissioner, they would then receive that five-year review period.
Okay.
Or even new signs, new signs that were approved would then receive a new five-year review period.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't pass this, then, you know, five years out, we have, you know, a thousand...
No, each one would maintain that, they, they'd maintain their current review period, and then when they come up for their normal reviews, then they would receive the five-year.
Now, and if a sign is currently in existence, and it doesn't require a review, and it isn't going to be upgraded, we will, we don't have to see it again, right? Is that...
That would be correct, unless it has already a review period on it that would automatically bring it back to you.
But the ones that were pre any kind of use permit that are there, they're there.
Yes.
The only time, you'll, you'll never see those, because those will be administratively approved if they want to actually modify that sign to make it a nicer new sign.
Okay. Now, the, the other part of this that I'm, I'm kind of concerned about, we're, we're reviewing this as part of Title 19, which is our land use code.
Yes, sir.
And everything else, at least everything I understand to be in the land use requirements, talk about application requirements that do require the property owner, the deed holder to submit a, you know, so we have signed by the property owner, because in case there's conditions that affect the property. So I, I'm very concerned, the fact that the, it comes up that this, the signs are, and these privileges are not tied to the land. I mean, it, I, I believe in property rights, I believe in property owners, and I also believe in the land use code, that the city has rights to outline in, in reasonable fashion its, its view for a city going forward. And that land use issue and the fact that these signs are tied to land use decisions, I think is critical. And I would hate to see, as you put forward, I would not want a municipality to be the negotiator of last resort against a property owner. And I, I do still see there's some potential, I, I agree with Commissioner Trowbridge a little bit, that things could get caught up in the city, but I think in, in a few cases, the issue of a, a sign that is grand, I'm not grandfather, a, a nonconforming, if a sign company felt they were so compelled, they could remove the sign, not say anything for 90 days, suddenly the city finds out about, the property owner may be a little old lady that lives in Pittsburgh, and that, that would be lost. And I don't know if there's a way to protect that, and I, I'm not saying we should, I mean, some signs will go the way of, of any evolution, they should be gone, and the, the city will change. But I, I really want to make sure that we don't do something that, that takes the right of a property owner and, and gives that to a, a vendor, if you will, because these are, most of these are license agreements, they're, they're not even, I mean, they're, they're leases that don't have a lot of teeth in them, for the landowner anyway. But I could see where the, under, under that scenario, the sign company would in essence have a contract in perpetuity if we don't, if we don't tie this to the property owner.
And I think that was, Mr. Scott, and mine's concern in drafting the ordinance as well, and the, we think that the language that's in there does tie the nonconforming status to the property as well as to the structure itself. So I, I think that your concern is addressed in the ordinance as it, as it's proposed to you tonight.
And I, and the city has worked hard, I, I remember, we spent a lot of time going through this once before, and I know the sign industry has been very engaged here. And I, I would only hope that what happens in Las Vegas stays in Las Vegas, and we don't keep taking this to the legislature to beat up on the city of Las Vegas when, when we don't like what we get. Just a thought.
Commissioner Dunham, did you have any? No? Okay. Do I have a couple of questions? One in relating to my concern, most of the time when I see a six-month review, it's because the thing is covered with graffiti, it's covered with trash, there's a beat-up couch leaning against it, and if we go to five years, how are we going to be able to deal with the graffiti and, I mean, usually when this group makes it a six-month review, it's because the thing is so trashy, we say, go back and clean it up and come back in six months. And if we wait five years, boy, we could have city dumped there.
Chairman, and there's never a time when, even though there's a review period put on it, that you would have to put up with something like that. If this wasn't meeting current codes, if it was, if they were just keeping it trashy, if... if there was graffiti, that could be called back at any time. It's only for the annual review or for the regular review period. There's, you're still able to, if it's, if you see that it's not meeting current code, you can always bring that back.
But the trouble is finding them, it seems like they're not found until they come up for review.
Well, if our code enforcement section looks at it, or our rapid response section sees that it's covered with graffiti, they do let the owner know, and let the owner know that they need to come to compliance.
Chairman, yes, sir. Along that same line of thought, I've suggested once before, and I'll suggest again, and that is that, as a portion, as a condition of approving these types of signs, there ought to be a reasonable fee attached to that permit, that would provide funding for the city to hire somebody to go out and routinely inspect these things and identify the violators. And I'm not talking a big expense, I'm talking, you know, a hundred dollars a month or something, type of a fee. And that, you get fifteen or twenty operators kicking in a hundred dollars a month, you got enough to hire somebody to go out and inspect and make sure that they are taken care of. This isn't the vehicle to do it, though, I think there's a separate method that the city uses to establish fees and service charges, but I would think that we keep that in mind whenever they establish that. And I don't think that the industry would object if the fees were reasonable.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead then and open this up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. When will this be heard in this, in the, on the seventh floor up there, in the city manager's chambers?
It's got to go, it has to go for a first reading at city council, then it'll go to recommending, and then it'll come back.
And then it goes to recommending?
Right.
Well, right off the bat, to me, this sounds like the tail wagging the dog, and I, you know, I don't like this at all.
I just want to know which one are we?
I don't, I just don't, I don't like the billboard industry coming and starting laying down the, laying down the law of ours. As far as I'm concerned, you know, send, just tell them to take them all down. I'm serious.
I don't, thank you.
Is Mr. Brown going to second that motion?
Yes. We'll be brief.
Okay.
Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street. I represent a number of billboard companies, and also some property owners, but today I have one of my clients with me, and that's Orion Outdoor Media, and with me is Bo Pally, who is the CEO and chairman, as well as the company's general counsel, John Pereira. I'd like to just hit two issues. One, is one that I think that Commissioner Trobridge hit right on, and I'm not sure that it was really clarified by staff. And by the way, speaking about staff, I think the entire industry believes that staff has done a yeoman's job here, Chris, and of course, our city attorney, and everyone else. This is a very, very difficult task, and to limit the few issues I think you're going to hear from the industry tonight shows the kind of job that they did, and we're appreciative of that. As far as the permitting is concerned, you know, and let's talk about the non-conforming billboards, but the permitting, we have no problems in having to file ninety days for a permit. It'll be maybe difficult for that lady in Pittsburgh, and if she's the property owner and doesn't know it, Commissioner Truesdale raised a good point, but that's the rule. You have to have some, you know, time, and ninety days works for us. What we're concerned about is the time to get the permit approved. As long as we get the permit filed within ninety days, if Sally is ill or takes a long time, the industry, you know, shouldn't be penalized if the city didn't give the approval on the permit. So we ought to have a timeframe that we have to file for the permit within a given period of time, ninety days, whatever it may be, and then when the permit's approved, a fixed period of time to build the billboard, okay, construct it. So, but it shouldn't be our fault, it shouldn't be our fault if, if, if in fact, the city, for whatever reasons, doesn't approve the permit if it was filed timely. The second issue, and we do have a little bit of a problem here within the industry, goes to what I think Chairman Davenport hit straight on, on the non-conforming billboard. Once that goes down, I want to call your attention to the language that he brought up, and that was in, I believe it was G2 and H2. If, during Chris's discussion and presentation, which was excellent, as I said, he, I got the impression, listening, I may have misunderstood, that when he said property owner and sign owner, he was talking about the existing sign owner, you know, that has the existing sign before the non-conforming board goes down. When he was asked by Chairman Davenport, who wanted to make it clear, and he, Commissioner Davenport, I believe, said, I don't know if it went to your mouth, but that's the new sign owner that you're talking about, he said, "Yes, it is the new sign owner." So I really think the language has to be clear, and I think frankly, the best language is to get rid of the word "sign owner." I think, again, as Commissioner Truesdale said, this is a property right. When the use permit is granted initially, it's given to the property owner. If the property owner wants to replace a non-conforming board, he or she should have the right to do that within that ninety-eight period of time, whatever it's going to be. He or she should not have to get any billboard company, new, old, or whatever, to approve that request. It should be strictly, in, at least in my humble opinion, it should be just the property owner who has that right. The right goes with the land, and he can pick whether he wants to do it himself, it may not be even a sign holder, what if he wants to build the sign himself? He may want to just do that. So we just think it's, it should be that if that sign comes down, that it should be the property owner and the property owner only who has the right to go ahead and file for that permit. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, or?
I'm Bo Pally with Orion Outdoor Media. I wanted to thank staff, you guys worked really, really hard on this, appreciate your good faith in negotiating with the industry. I basically am going to replicate what Jay Brown has just represented to you. You know, when I first read this draft, I kind of got, I saw it both ways. I saw that the word "sign owner" could be a new sign owner or an old sign owner, but it was unclear to me, and that's why I got a hold of Jay, and I said, "Jay, I just, it could be taken both ways, and any time that we've been involved in ordinance changes, crystal clear is always the best way to go." It can be done by, like what Jay said, just change it to "property owner." We believe it's a property right, it annures to the property, it is a land use element, definitely, we absolutely agree with that.
So you're in agreement with everything that Mr. Brown just said?
Absolutely, 100%, but I mean, if you guys are okay with going, if you guys want to do just "property owner," we're okay. Or it could be "property owner and old and new sign owner," it could be applicant, but property owner by itself seems to be the most simplistic way to handle it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, when we were writing this, and I think when the negotiations occurred, and Chris and I talked about this today, that the word "sign owner" means the owner of the sign proposed to be constructed. That could be the old owner, if in fact, the property owner has made another agreement with that old sign owner, or it could be the new sign, the new billboard company that the, that the property owners made an agreement with.
What if we use the word "applicant" there instead of "sign owner"?
Agreed, agreed.
Then that could be the old or the new, or whoever's filing the application.
Well, like I said, it's going to be up to you to make those recommendations to the city council going forward, so.
I mean, it could be the city, it could be anybody that way. Okay.
Chairman, we would agree with the word "applicant," I think that's neutral language that we can live with.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate all your help.
Anyone else wishing to speak that's faster than Mr. Larson?
I promise to be quick.
Okay.
For the record, Paul Larson, 300 South Fourth Street, representing Clear Channel Outdoor. First of all, I'd like to commend Chris Knight and the city staff, they did yeoman's work in working out what is essentially a consensus between the city and the industry. We seem to be focusing a lot on section, the new section, 19 dot 14 dot 100 sub H. Since this section was essentially my idea, I brought it up in the meetings, I'd like to explain exactly what we are trying to do here. We have a situation now, for example, and we always use the same example, so I'll be consistent. Over at Wholesome Lofts, there's an old sign, it's essentially two steel I-beams stuck in the ground, and because it's a non-conforming location, a non-conforming structure, there's no way to modify that, to upgrade it, to make it more aesthetic. You can't even pull a use permit for that. So, in essence, you're in a position where you have to leave it in place without any kind of modification. What we wanted to do was permit the owner of those non-conforming structures to be able to upgrade them, replace them, make them more aesthetic, such as the ones across the street, the Clear Channel also owns, at the outlet mall. So that was the purpose of subsection H. Subsection H wasn't intended to create a, an ability to perpetuate without review billboards on a particular site often to the future. And if you construe it the way it was suggested this evening, that's exactly what will happen. You could have, once a year, a new prop, a new sign company come in and replace a sign, replace a sign, replace a sign, as long as it's done within ninety days. And that was not the intent of that section. So what we would suggest, and Clear Channel is willing to do this for the structures that they would bring before you, is, there's a provision that says, "No special use permit," yes, "No special use permit shall be required." We would suggest that the way to address this, if we're going to address this the way that's being suggested tonight, and make it an entitlement that runs with the land, make it a special use permit. Mr. Brown specifically used the word "permit." If you do it any other way, you have a perpetuation of what was previously a non-conforming structure. The law in Nevada is, as long as a non-con, excuse me, non-conforming structure exists, it can continue to exist. If it's modified beyond 50%, damaged in any way beyond 50%, it comes down. That's the law. We were trying to put a provision in place where you could upgrade that structure. Right now, if it's construed the way it's being suggested this evening, you're creating a non-reviewable ability to not perpetuate a structure, but replace a structure over and over and over and over, with no ability to oversee it at this level or at city council level, no ability to put conditions on the review, no ability to do anything else. What Clear Channel would volunteer and would like to see, is if we're going to replace a non-conforming structure with an upgraded board, that we do it subject to a use permit, and that would allow you to impose conditions, that would allow you to impose the review periods, would allow you to have oversight over structures you don't have oversight now. And we think that would solve our concern of being able to upgrade structures, and your concern of being able to oversee boards. Otherwise, you have a situation that escapes your review ad infinitum, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, Professor Commissioner?
Well, I-
Mr. Larson?
Well, I don't know, I just want to make a comment, and he can correct me from my misunderstanding, I hope so, because I don't see a problem with a sign owner that wants to replace it every year, and that's, that would be incredibly poor business decision, but that's a decision that that sign owner could make. I think that where I, we'll go back to my original comments, I think that the city needs to retain some kind of aesthetic review, so that whenever the new sign comes forward, if it's on an annual basis, so be it, that the city gets to review and make sure that the new sign is aesthetically pleasing, and also structurally sound and all that.
I think we're concurring with you. What we're suggesting is that the vehicle for that review, and imposition of additional conditions as necessary, would be a use permit and not a design review.
Okay.
But, Mr. Larson, the proposed ordinance does say that the reconstruction has to be approved by city council pursuant to a site development plan review.
Correct.
So it gets there, and at that point, these things can be done. What's, it appeared to me was attempting to speed up the process and skip this particular body here.
Yes.
Which I understand, and move on there.
A site development plan review is basically a one-time thumbs up, thumbs down.
Right.
A use permit would give you the ability to periodically review and impose additional conditions to mitigate any problems. We're simply suggesting that might be the better vehicle to address both the concerns of Commissioner Trobridge and concerning you just addressed as well.
Thank you.
Will, Ms. Lazovich?
Maybe Ms. Lazovich can explain it to us, because-
Could you say that in non-attorney terms?
I'll try. Jennifer Lazovich, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here tonight on behalf of Lamar Advertising. Again, I think I maybe more than the most need to just extend my deepest thanks to your staff for working with us. I have been personally working on this issue for over a year, and they have done a great job in trying to get us all on the same page with a number of issues. We do still come down tonight to, I really think, one issue that amongst the billboard industry, I guess perhaps we have a difference of opinion, I don't know, Mr. Brown is waiting to talk. On behalf of Lamar, we agree with what Mr. Larson is suggesting, and we are not up here suggesting that we should be taking away anyone's property rights. I want that to be extraordinarily clear. All we are suggesting is that there should be a review done by this body and the city council in a use permit fashion for boards that may be voluntarily reconstructed. Now, why would something be voluntarily reconstructed? It could be the wholesome lofts example that Mr. Larson just raised, where Clear Channel comes in and wants to redo that board to maybe make it fit in a little bit more with the way wholesome lofts is developed at. This body and the city council would have an ability to see that and make comments as to how that new board would look. If, in the case that the property owner chooses to go from one billboard company to another billboard company, we're not suggesting that they shouldn't have that right to do that. If they do have the right to do that, we're suggesting, just get it, just go through the public hearing process so that this body can see what that new billboard is going to look like. I think it is in line with what Commissioner Trobridge said, that you could effectively have new use permits coming before you once a year, if in fact, the property owner wants to change over that many times, but at least there's a public hearing process in place. That is all that we're asking to do. If it, if it was drafted in such a way to remove that, I suppose that we're now before you making sure that both the planning commission and the city council have that review in cases where I've just described that are voluntarily reconstructed. Did that, did I happen to do it without sounding too much like a lawyer?
The way I'm understanding it, then, this goes along with Mr. Brown, is it would let the owner of the land pick a different sign company, and it just, the only difference would be is that we would be reviewing it.
Yes.
Am I understanding that, or, I, yes, sir?
I guess I'm a little confused too here, because I thought that the whole point of these negotiations were that they didn't want that to happen, because our current code under 1914-100B1 states that if you're going to construct, place, erect, or modify a sign, you have to get a special use permit. That, I mean, it's currently in our code now, and I'm a little confused as to what we're doing now. I guess you're saying now you'd like to see that happen, when it comes to the complete destruction and re-rection of a sign, you'd like to see a special use permit?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Just to respond, we're all in accord that the public hearing for review is mandatory. No issue there at all. It gives the existing sign owner a step up if he or she can argue to the property owner, "If you don't stay with us, you got to go for a brand-new use permit, okay? And we should be on a level playing field. The property owner should be on a level playing field." He or she who owned the property got, received the use permit, it doesn't go away because the structure goes down, and a new one goes up, but yes, if you change it once a month, once a year, you must have a public hearing. This body and the city council must review the design of the new sign. No argument there at all. We just don't want a new use permit every time, so that we're on a level playing field with the property owners, with the existing sign company, that's all.
Okay.
Can I respond?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
This is still not clear to me, but-
In that, just to respond, and I, we're getting closer, but just to respond to what Mr. Brown just said, in almost, in the cases that we're describing, odds are these non-conforming structures are located either outside of the overlay, or they no longer meet distance separations, hence, that's what makes them a non-conforming sign. You have some of those, you have some that are still conforming locations. In the non-conforming situations, if that board was taken down, by law, that use permit would technically go away, technically, okay? What we're suggesting, in order to recognize what this commission and others have said about protecting property owners' rights, is that you should be able to come forward and apply for another use permit. And why should it be a use permit? It should be a use permit because it is a non-conform, potential, in these situations, it's a non-conforming location or outside of the overlay. This body and the city council should have a chance to look at the area, and you can approve it. I mean, I think what everybody is fearing here is that, well, this body and/or the city council is going to automatically deny any kind of a use permit that may come before you. You're forgetting that the other half of that is you have the right to approve it. You have the right to approve it, you have the right to look at the neighborhood, if there are no neighbors that have come out to object, if there's no changes. I mean, we're starting to become a city that while we still change, there are areas that are now staying the same, and therefore, there aren't changes. And in those cases, I don't know why this particular body or the city council wouldn't approve the sign or the use permit, but you, that gives you the ability to see it. That's what we're suggesting, and yes- And yes, it is a departure from what we initially discussed when the majority of the industry had been working on this with staff, but we think that that is a fair compromise.
And the differences between their side and your side is that their side is now a new use permit, and you're saying we shouldn't have it. You're agreeing with everything except it should be the, the old use permit?
Yes. And I'll explain why.
Okay. Go ahead.
We need another attorney's opinion here.
I, I know, and I'm going to try to keep it, keep it short. A special use permit, oh, John David Pereira, General Counsel for Orion Outdoor Media, I can't remember the, the local address. In any case, when we met, industry met on several occasions trying to reach a consensus here, and we had a June sixth, two thousand and seven meeting in which Mr. Scott and Mr. Knight and the entire industry sat in a room and discussed the provisions as you see it for the most, excuse me, for the most part. And prior to the end of that meeting, Mr. Knight and Mr. Scott asked the industry, are you okay with the ordinance as it stands? Is there anybody that doesn't like it? Last chance, this is it. And industry agreed to it. The reason it is being changed now by Lamar and Clear Channel is, is a property rights issue. They want to go to the property owner and say, look, if you stay with us, you don't have to get a special use permit. If you get a special use permit, city council can attach conditions, and they can actually now attach a review period because a special use permit is a new permit. You risk reducing the period of time you have that sign, you risk all these things. Stay with us. Nothing's changed except the way that it's been framed to this council. If you go with the ordinance as it's written now, the property owner, your constituents, maintain the greatest rights. Now, I'm a billboard litigator. I see this issue all the time. But fair is fair, and if you're in this business, land use is a property right, and what we don't want to see is landowners being put in a position by the larger billboard companies to say, if you don't do it our way, you're going to have to go through this onerous process. The whole reason it was rewritten, as you recognized, is to get rid of that process and make it easier to get signs improved and improve the look of this good city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, and I, I will not do this back and forth, I understand that that's not what this commission wants to see, but I want to clarify the record on one thing, and it's very important. I have been the only one consistently that has been at every single one of these meetings. I flew from Carson City down to Vegas, to Las Vegas to be in every one of those meetings. And the meeting that he just referenced, very specifically, Chris Prickett from Lamar said, we do not agree with that change. Now, having said that, we are now before you on something that we didn't agree to at that last meeting, and this is our chance to explain to you the reasons why we don't agree to it, and how we think you can, or we would suggest that this commission consider to resolve the issues that we've raised tonight. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask Chris to come back up and actually speak English and explain it yet another way. You were at all the meetings, I'm sure.
Unfortunately, so.
Do you not remember the, like, our past president, you don't remember the circumstances, or?
No, sir, I remember the circumstances very well. As I said in my presentation, this was eleventh-hour issue. We had been negotiating in very good faith with the industry. One of the things we had asked of the industry, and they had agreed, because there are numerous billboard companies out there, it is very difficult. The fact remains, and, and it really didn't play in us, because as, as public servants, as, as the government, we wanted to make sure we addressed the entire industry. But at the legislature, there were only two billboard, billboard companies really present up there that were pressing the legislation that we were responding to. But we invited everybody, we wanted to have one voice from the billboard industry, from the off-premise sign industry. That was one of the negotiating rules, if you will, that, that we said. And as we moved into this, like I said, at the eleventh hour, this issue came up, and that one voice began to erode. And from our standpoint as staff, the language that you had, because this is really a free-market issue. It is between the property owner and the billboard company. Now, who is the customer and who's the provider here, I'm, I'm not sure of that. But the issue we said is, it is not for the city of Las Vegas to enact, and as Mr. Truesdale has said, to enact legislation that gives one aspect of the market an advantage over the other aspect of the market. And thus, the language that you have in front of you is what we felt did that with the discussions we had with the city attorney's office. I think that in speaking with one voice, if the billboard industry can come with the SUP, again, as, as Ms. Lazarus has, has clearly stated, they, they understand that that does not accomplish the objective that they had on the non-conforming issue, but it, again, it is, it is up to the industry to negotiate that, and up to the industry to say, we're willing to, to, to live with that and not accomplish that goal on taking these billboards down and putting them back up if, if it means that there's a change in the market conditions as they currently are. And that is the choice that they make. It is not a choice we believe the city of Las Vegas should be making. We believe that the property owner and the billboard owner should have equal rights, and that, as Chairman Truesdale said, this should be tied to the, the land use entitlement and, and the land as well. But understand that the billboard owner has a significant investment in this issue as well. You cannot ignore that. So that's the reason we came with the language that we did.
Okay. Mr. Scott? For me, I, I agree with Commissioner Truesdale, and I think it was Commissioner Trowbridge, that our idea is that the homeowner should be the beneficial here. And in your opinion, then, if I can put you on the spot, is the wording that we currently have, if we change it to applicant or new signer owner, would be the language that would best protect the landowner?
By putting, by placing applicant, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's keeping what you had, just clarifying that it does mean-
Right. Applicant, applicant would be the person who's, the person who's applying for whatever approvals you want. So applicant may be the way you want to go.
But, but it would be the homeowner, but I meant this wording and the way that, that it's being proposed, as to going with what Ms. Lazarus proposed and going to a SUP and, and going that way, because I could see how they could say, you know, you're going to have to go through this whole process, and you may not get approved, which would be the most protection for the home, of the property owner? I think this version, am I right, or?
And you are putting me on the spot with that one, but-
No.
Like I said, the SUP method, in, in order to relocate a sign, change a sign, modify a sign, that's currently in our code under nineteen fourteen one hundred. We don't have the provision in our code which allows for a sign to be completely demolished and re-erected within the ninety days, so this draft that we've given, you would have to be modified to meet that goal, if that's what you'd like to do. With regard to the protection for the landowner, I'm assuming you, you want the landowner to be the person in control to determine whether or not a sign is erected on his or her property?
And, and who he, who he contracts with.
And who he contracts with. The, the word applicant, as you had suggested, would probably be the most beneficial, because that would indicate that's the person who's, and normally we accept applications from the property owner, or we do from a less seed or optionee or per, contract purchaser, if that person has the approval, the written approval of the landowner.
Yeah.
So nothing can be done without the landowner being involved.
Yeah, so that would, that would solve that problem. Okay. Were there any other questions?
I just want to clarify a couple of words here, because I didn't understand it. On D two, where it says, "All off-premise signs shall be detached..."
D.
"...and permanently secured." I'm not sure how you have something detached, but yet permanently secured.
It's on thirty eight.
Oh, three D two, I'm sorry.
My, my guess is that detached refers to the, not being attached to any building, but permanently secured.
And we can clarify that, if it's, if it's not detat, or attached to a structure.
Which, which is, I just, it, it was kind of, I thought it was more of a writing issue. And I want to, I've been accused of being the one that is absolutely opposed to the billboards, and I'm not, and I support what the industry is, is trying to do here and what staff is, is really trying to accomplish, and in, in, with the couple of changes we talked, I'm, I am going to support this. And, but I want to support it with the, with everybody understanding is, the better we clarify this ordinance, it lets the staff, the city, and the planning commission positively look at billboards as, as an integral part of a business throughout our community. I'm not opposed to billboards. I think they're appropriate, they, they fill a, a significant need, and they, they fit our culture and our community. We just need to have a good understanding of what happens with those. I think the clarifications here under the, the embellishments may be more than what I thought was, but it, it, it really clarifies what we know when the applicants talk to staff, they, the sign industry has a good understanding of what everybody expects, and that's really what should be meant by this. And in that regard, I do support this, and, and I support all the efforts of the industry, I really do.
Mr. Chairman, I was, I was surprised to hear the comment earlier from over here that when you take down a sign, the SUP survives, that special use permit that was already there. I'm not sure I can concur with that. I don't know what the special use permit is on at that point, and when I read through this, I wrote down, no SUP, no planning commission. In this process, I truly believe an SUP is necessary in this process for a new sign, replacement sign. So I would support that particular change of this.
Okay. Anyone else? Is there a motion? Commissioner Trowbridge? Truesdale?
Again, based on all the efforts and all the, the input, I would make a motion to approve the document that has been submitted before us as the, as I understand, the negotiated version with the industry, with the one change of the word applicant in, I forget the right-
It's in number two, in G and H.
Yeah, in sections two, G and H.
In place of sign.
In place of sign owner. I don't think that changes the world as it is, but I think it, it clarifies that property owners are, have to be involved in this process. And I think, and, and that's the only change I would recommend. I think the rest of this is things that are going to be clarified by, by staff through the process, unless we need to add the condition for the ninety-day period, if, to clarify that.
We, we had a question over here, three or five. Did you want to do anything with that?
I, Mr. Chairman, through you, and I would certainly be open for thoughts on this, but I'm wondering if, for the protection of the city, that three years might be more appropriate than the five for the consistency of the review period.
I, and, and I don't have a problem with the three years, and I, I would make that a part of my motion.
Thank you.
Would you make a part of your motion to include an SUP in these two different items here?
No, for the fact that I, I'm not sure that if we get into the draft in here, we might just unravel what, what's been presented to us. I don't want to, I don't feel comfortable enough making that change, that I think it would affect us somewhere else in this air code.
Okay. We have a motion for-
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify that, just for one second, just for the record, for the clerk? So that'll be a change to section one, B, three, sections A, to read three years, and section B to read three years for the review periods. And then it would be a change to section four, G, two-
Two.
...to be changed that, "Application for approval under subsection G shall require signature by the applicant." And then also change to section four, H, two, which should also read, "Application for approval under this subsection H shall require signature of the applicant."
And actually, that was both the property owner-
Property owner and applicant.
Yeah.
Okay, property owner and applicant, they may both be the same.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval with those changes to item fifty-four. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to the city council and ordinance board.
Thank you. Sorry about that, I didn't think it would take that long. We'll move back to item number fourteen now. MOD two-two-eight-eight-two, applicant owner Spinacre Homes V LLC, to change the land use designation from M L T C, medium-low residential town center, to M T C, medium-residential town center, adjacent to the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and Campbell Road. Item fifteen, S D R two-two-eight-seven-seven, for a proposed two-story, one-hundred-and-forty-nine-unit multifamily residential development. Staff?
Chairman and commissioners, the proposed development will be consistent with the existing and proposed development around the site, and will create a transition in the residential density from the single-family neighborhoods to the north and west, to the more intense developments proposed to the east, under constructions to the south. Therefore, staff recommends approval. In addition, a neighborhood meeting was held on July thirtieth at Mount Crest Community Center. No citizens were in attendance.
Thank you. Ms. Lazarus?
Good evening again, Jennifer Lazarus, here on behalf of the applicant, addresses thirty-eight-hundred Hard Hughes Parkway. Appreciate staff's recommendation of approval. As you did indicate, we held a neighborhood meeting, nobody did attend. We would ask you to follow staff's recommendation on both items.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'm abstaining on the side in as much as I represent a property within notice area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Parlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. On item number fifteen, says, "Request for a site development plan review." Where's the, where's the site development? There it is. It's pretty hard, you know, for us out in the audience to see anything when they don't put it on the overhead here. And this is just what I thought. We spent an entire day Monday discussing about holding these dove developers feet to the fire to make these places more econo, or, more environmentally friendly. Right here is the same thing that we were talking about. We have no homes orient, there's no orientation of these homes to the sun. There is no, I see no elevations here on the houses themselves to show if they have roof elevations orientated to the sun. I don't even know where to start, but if we're going to, if we're going to, if we're going to go to this, this environmental thing that we had the entire day of discussion on, these developers are going to have to come here with more detailed plans on how they accept, they expect to meet our energy needs in the year twenty-twenty and below, beyond. Right here, I see absolutely nothing of it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask the commission for... Mr. Dunham?
I'll make a motion for approval on item sport, on fourteen, for staff's recommendations.
We have a motion for approval of item fourteen. Please vote. Post.
And on item fifteen, move for approval with, for staff's recommendations.
And we have a motion for approval of item fifteen. Please vote. Post. And Commissioner Truesdale was abstaining on both of those, and that carries.
Thank you. Goes forward to council on October seventeenth.
Thank you. Moving on to item number twenty, and, V A R two-two-eight-four-nine, applicant owner Paul and Heather Blonsky, to allow a ten-foot yard setback where a twenty-foot yard, twenty-foot setback is required for a detached accessory structure class two, side-loaded garage at twenty-four-hundred Kerry Drive, and, pardon? And V A R two-three-one-two-five, applicant owner Brian Hess, to allow a proposed, excuse me, just item number twenty. number 20. Staff?
The applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to locate the garage within the setback area. Staff has no basis to support this request and recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Paul Blonsky, 2400 Carley. Good evening, everyone. And we were here before, and you said, go back and talk to the neighbors, so we did. And the neighbors overwhelmingly said, yeah, go for it. If you're improving on our street, you want it. I have signatures from everyone that I talked to. There was one person on the street I wasn't able to talk to. I tried knocking and calling and talking, but he wasn't able to, get ahold of him. And he's the one that sent in the postcard saying that he didn't want me to build anything. So I wasn't able to talk to him to find out why. But everyone on the street's a dead-end block. It's a nice place. I've lived there for 15 years. I'm going to live there for quite a while longer. I need to improve the house, make it a little bit bigger, because I'm expecting a family in January, so we need to have some room. I love the house. I love the neighborhood. And I just want to make it look better and make it my home.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask the commission if they have any questions.
I just wanted to ask a question. This is the house where you're not going to attach the garage to the house. Is that correct?
It's actually going to be attached, but just by a turret. So it's not going to be, yeah, it's not going to be up against, but it's going to be attached. So when you enter, you can go into the garage or the home, so when you park, you can just go right into the home.
Are you the ones who improved your garage into a room?
No. There is no garage in the home.
It was a garage at one time, wasn't it?
Yeah, I assume it was. It was well before I bought it.
To the right down that picture.
Yeah, that, I guess, was a garage. This was probably 20 years ago.
That's what makes this unusual on that street, is that you occupied the garage. I'm sure it's very nice. And now you want to replace that space with a piece of property that comes out towards the street.
Yeah.
And is different from what most have done on that street. And I want you to substantiate why you should do that.
Well, a lot of them have expanded out, like where the garage should be in my home, have pulled out towards the street. What I'm doing is the exact same thing, just putting it on where you see the tree, a little bit right there, kind of. So when you pull in, it goes right in, and everything's all nice and flowy. That's what we're moving.
Mr. Chairman, and perhaps you can assist me, Commissioner Steinman. You had said that there was one person that opposed it, and they said something, and I don't know whether you get the backup material, but I'm counting six.
Yeah, one person on our street.
On your street?
Yeah, yeah.
And your immediate neighbors to each side?
They, yeah. I have letters.
Something, okay. So the notification area where this was sent out, the people that protested, it aren't necessarily right adjacent to you.
No, no. They're people who are quite a ways away.
And then I think when we were here before, and I think, Commissioner Steinman, my questions are consistent, I think, with your concerns. What does it look like from the rest of the streetscape? Does it stick out? And does it look out of character? Or is it, or does it not?
I hope it doesn't look out of character. I think it's going to look great. If you can see here, this is the front elevation, so this is where the, what do you call the old garage? This is the new garage. So it's going to be very symmetric with the turret in the middle, and this is going to be out a little bit, that's going to be in a bit, so you can park like that, kind of go in. So to me and the architect that we had do this, it looks beautiful.
And there was no way that you could meet your needs and stay within our code?
No, not right now. No.
And later?
Trying to let the house fell down, sure. But barring that, no, there's no way to get into the back or anything like that. That would be ideal to actually put it in the back, but we can't. We can't get any machinery back there. The walls and everything are too close.
And the reason that you need this is because you enclose the garage?
I never enclose a garage.
But somebody did.
Somebody did, yeah. I just need more storage. We would like to have a garage. It makes most sense to put that structure up there. It's going to look great. It's what we want. It's...
But in fact, the garage, you say it's going to stick out a little bit. It's going to stick out by this measurement, 30 foot from the garage. You could actually almost flip the building you want over and put it in front of the garage, which would then leave you a front yard, which is, my concern is you're going to have the immense garage sitting on the sidewalk. And my understanding is that you could almost meet codes if you put it in front of the garage and made it a few foot narrow. We talked in my office.
Yeah, we thought about that, and the more we discussed that, it would look really kind of weird having a building in this really long structure, is what it would be like.
To you, that would look weird. To me, a garage in your front yard with no front yard would look weird.
Yeah, but it would still, I don't know, we'd still have a front yard no matter what.
Not really. I mean, you're going to have, to me, it's going to be out of place in the neighborhood, and I know you've talked to your neighbors, and they apparently agree, but I still can't support it. The bottom line is, you could move that over to the driveway and accomplish what you want to accomplish with a side load in.
I agree, but the way that the sun...
And you still have a front yard. With the sun, the building would be the same place, so your sun is going to hit it identical.
No, no. The sun sets this way, so if you park there, you get shade all day pretty much from noon on. Whereas if you put the garage on the other side, the sun's going to be beating in there on the opposite. At the end of the day, it's going to get really hot.
Well, you've got a tree.
You're moving this garage east.
I have a tree that's like this.
You're, we're talking about moving the building you want to build east. By moving it east, you aren't going to affect how the sun hits it.
Sure.
No, the entrance to the garage.
It's still going to be on, okay, instead of being on the east, it would be on the west side.
Exactly. And that makes the difference. It's going to be on the front as opposed to the back. So the garage door will be beating in the sun from noon on as opposed to the back of the garage, and having shade. Like everyone else on the block has it on that side.
No, nobody else has their garage in their front yard.
No, everyone does. That's what the neighbors on the others, the...
They got a setback.
I don't know what that means, but the neighbors just to the right, neighbors to the left have the exact same thing that we're trying, minus the detached part. They have it attached. We want it detached.
And they don't come out as far to the street?
No, they don't, no, no.
Okay.
That's the main thing, is coming out to the street is why we're here.
Yeah, you're filling up the front yard. Yeah, I, you know, I just, I talked to you, and I tried to convince you that that was a better way, and you do have a big backyard where you could add a room on back there, but you seem to be locked into building a, a building in your, in the front there, and I just can't support it. I mean, I just believe at some point in time, you're going to be sorry, if you win, that you do that. That's my opinion, so. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I appreciate that you went back and met with your neighbors.
Yeah.
Because that's usually the first threshold of considering something within a residential area that affects it. One thing that I did look at, there's a house going up on the Welland Block North, or two blocks north, that is pushed out to the street pretty significantly. And several of the homes here, this is one of the original structures that are there. Most of the homes that have gotten bigger have completely changed what the houses are. And while I appreciate very much what the chairman and George Steinman bring up, in most communities, when you side-load the garage, most, the planning communities give you an additional encroachment towards the street based on the side-loading, because that, the cars technically come in off the side. Most of these homes along here that have converted are doing nothing more than parking cars in their front yard. I think what you're trying to do can, is an improvement over the fact that you're not having just uncovered cars out there, and you can park them. I assume you're going to be removing the ass, or the concrete that's up against the house as part of this change?
Yeah, it's going to be really nice looking.
And, you know, most of these houses were designed originally without front rooms. They were the old-style Las Vegas design, where all the rooms were in the back, and you had a garage, and you had a bathroom, and an entry door on the front side, and bathroom. I think yours is where you didn't do it, but the converted garage is your front room?
Yeah.
So you do have an ability to look out and landscape that as you go forward?
Yeah, yeah.
I can support what you've submitted, and I, for a couple of things. One, I went and looked at several of the other expansions in the neighborhood, and I think a lot of them happened without the benefit of code review, because there are some that encroach significantly on some of the streets through there. And the fact that you have spent time with your neighbors. I mean, it's a fairly significant street, and you've reached out and got their support. In that regard, I can support this.
Thank you. Yeah, I've tried to make this very easy for all of my neighbors and talk to them. I'm very friendly with all of them. For the last 14 years, we've gotten to know each other, at least most of us. There's some that I don't know, some that just come and go to work and hardly see them. But most of the time, I say hi to them and go over and talk to them a lot, and they know our situation with our family, and they've known me for a while, and they watch my dogs when I go on vacation and things like that, so.
And I somewhat concur. I may, in fact, support this, but I am concerned that, you know, the enclosing of these garages, and then later someone wants to continue building in the front, I'm concerned that it affects the streetscape, and it affects the other neighbors. At what point do we say enough is enough? There's a code for a reason. It's not unreasonable. And, but I would concur with Commissioner Truesdale. You've done your homework, and this will see my support, but I'm not real happy about it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
This is such a natural item to pick up and put where the driveway is right now on that side, and leave a beautiful front yard with a beautiful tree. Yes, it will still exceed the setback, but it does it in a way that still provides a real beautiful setting for you. And I don't know why you're, whether you're trying not to block the window that is the old garage, if that's why you want it over there. But this gap that occurs between that garage and the house is quite excessive. And I'd rather see you go over and push it against the building, the old garage, and leave that beautiful...
Yeah, because the reason that, that little courtyard area is going to be beautiful when it's done. When we have kids, they're going to be able to...
Yeah, but not for anybody along the street to see.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Commissioner Steinman, are you saying that the tree will be removed, and all that landscaping will be removed?
Everything's gone.
Well, then I change my mind. I absolutely support that.
Well, it's going to...
If you're removing the tree, and you're removing the landscaping in your yard, I think it will be out of character.
Exactly. There will be a garage sitting in the front yard.
There is an answer here.
Thank you. Okay. That's a beautiful yard. I just, is there a motion?
I guess, I mean, the question I've got is, is the answer putting the extension, still giving him the waiver, but putting the extension on the other side, and in theory, blocking his living room, so the landscaping will open up onto the two bedrooms?
Yeah, just won't be able to see out ever. That's, I mean, it's okay, but I like looking at the people that are driving up and down.
I think if we're going to, if we're going to look at this in some vein of, because either way, you'd be getting the waiver, and the tree's going to go either way. Because if you move it over there and you side-load it, cars are going to go, you're going to have driveway through the trees. You're going to rip out the front fencing, and you're going to do a curb to coming off that side of the property.
Yeah, and then no front yard again.
I, I'm just impressed that you went out and met with your neighbors and came back to us, and I'm going to, whether, you know, I don't know where this goes, but I'm going to make a motion for approval, because I believe either solution is going to have a similar effect, and if this actually is the least impact on the, we're still going to get a landscape, we're still going to get what we need there. The tree, under either scenario that's been described here, the tree would go, so I will make, if you move the drive, if you, if what Commissioner Davenport is talking about, putting over there, side-loading it, you still...
You can load it from the front?
Front load.
Front loading from the front?
Front load.
Then you wouldn't have the, I think you'd...
And that window could be moved to the side of the building. But I'm just saying, is, you're going to create, simply, somebody driving by, all they're going to see is concrete and building. They're going to see nothing else the way it's being proposed. But we have a motion for approval of item number 20. Please vote. And that motion fails.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Nope, nope. It's kind of unprotected, but we have to do it the other way.
I'll make the motion on the agenda item number 20, VAR 22849, move for denial.
We have a motion for denial on item number 20. Please vote. Post. And that motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
I'm not sure what that means.
It means you have to appeal it if you wish to take it to the council. Otherwise, this is final action this evening.
Otherwise, it's...
What you do is you just write a letter to the, to the city clerk's office indicating you'd like to appeal this planning commission's decision.
Okay, then I can go to city council.
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to item 21, VAR 23125, applicant owner Brian Hess, to allow a proposed 15-foot-high accessory structure, class 2 workshop, where 13-foot is the maximum allowable height, and to allow a 1,200 square foot accessory structure, where 742 square foot is the maximum floor area allowed at 4100 Roxanne Drive. And I'm going to sneak in that after this item, we're going to take a break. Staff?
The applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing an accessory structure that does not comply with the zoning code. Staff has no basis to support this request and recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. Brian Hess, 4100 Roxanne Drive. I was in last time, and you guys recommended I go back and get my neighbors.
Your neighbors aren't here, huh?
No, I guess they didn't come.
It's a good sign.
Yeah, I spoke with them after the meeting. We talked about a lot of the, you know, what their issues were, and there's still one neighbor, the one neighbor with the lesser of the, because I have two neighbors on my back wall, that still opposes it. He said he was going to send a letter in or be here, but I don't know if he did. Other than that, I have everybody's approval, except the neighbor on the, that would be the east side of me. He is unreachable. You, you know, you can knock on the door, whatever. He never answers. If they are there, they park in the backyard, so they don't want to be even noticed at their home, so I've tried.
Okay. Cool. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Just out of curiosity, why is, why is 13 feet the maximum height there? I thought the...
Can't be higher than the main structure.
Ah, got it. Thanks.
Hey, what is not higher than the main structure? Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And I think since they're not here tonight, that makes me think that they agree with you now. So is there any questions from the commission?
On item 21, move for approval with staff's as-if-approved conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item 321. Please vote. Post. These in brand. And that motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
So if you want to appeal and say you don't want it approved, you have to send a letter in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Okay, we're going to call it back to order. And moving on to item number 22, SUP 23093, applicant Shadow Mountain Massage Nevada LLC, owner Shadow Mountain Marketplace LLC, for a proposed 3,270-square-foot massage establishment with a waiver of the hours of operation limitation to allow business hours from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., where business hours are restricted to 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., a waiver of the 400-foot minimum distance separation requirement to allow a 67-foot distance separation from a partial zone for residential use and a 30-foot distance separation from a city park, and a waiver of the 1,000-foot distance separation requirement to allow 130-foot distance separation from another massage establishment at 6475 North Decatur Boulevard, Suite 160 and 165. Staff?
Staff cannot support a waiver of the separation standards and recommends denial of this request.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item inasmuch as I abstained when we held this. I do have an open contract with regards to one of the pad deals there.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Lazovich?
Good evening again. Jennifer Lazovich, 3-800-HOWARD-HUSE-PARKWAY, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. With me also is the applicant's daughter. This is Haley, and she's going to be turning 11 tomorrow, so she wanted to come up and help me present tonight.
We can hold this if you want us to. And then...
If you can turn your attention to my overhead, please. Thank you. The proposed use is located in a shopping center, as you can, unfortunately, I was hoping that would come out a little bit clearer, but we would be located back here adjacent to the Beltway. The shopping center is located on Decatur and the Beltway. This is the Costco, and then back in this area, you have, in no particular order, a Best Buy, a Stein Mart, and a Wix Furniture that have already actually gone in. We're in one of these inline retail shops, again, that backs up to the Beltway. We have several waiver requests that make this application look probably more concerning than maybe it really needs to be because it's a difference between what your code requirements require versus what, if you really look at where this site is located, what those actual distances are. From a code standpoint, we have to waive from three uses. One is a park that would be located eventually to the north of us, to the residences who are located to the west of us, and then as well as an existing day spa that's located over where the Walmart is located. In taking those individually, from where our particular massage envy location would be located, we're required to be 400 feet away from the park, and from our location to the park, we're 1,185 feet away. From the residential area that's located right here, we are located 780 feet away. Again, that's from actual location to house, not as measured by code, which has to take the outer boundaries of the entire shopping center in order to notice this properly. And then from our location to the Euphoria Day Spa, which is located across the street on Decatur, we are 750 feet away. In that particular instance, we're required to be 1,000 feet, so that waiver would still exist if you were able to measure from essentially door to door. But in actual distances, at least in terms of to the park and to the residence, we at least double the distance, and in the case of the park, we almost triple the distance. We have also asked for a waiver of the hours to be open Monday through Friday until 10 p.m. Your code requires us to close at 9:00 p.m. To be clear on what we're asking for in this particular instance, we take our last appointments at 9:00 o'clock. Sometimes we could take a half an hour appointment at 9:30, but in no event would we be open later than 10:00 o'clock. So the doors would be closed at 10:00 o'clock. In this shopping center, virtually all of the other food uses, there's a Chili's, a Mexican restaurant, there's a grill, there's a Panda Express, those types of uses will be open until at least 10:00 p.m. So the other uses in there are probably closing around 9:00, so between 9:00 and 10:00, you'll still have activity in the center. And we, for that reason, think it would be appropriate to stay open until 10:00 p.m. We had a neighborhood meeting on Monday night. Approximately 10 to 12 neighbors came. I believe they all live in this area over in here. The owner of the center, Haley's dad, was also there to tell the neighbors and explain who Massage Envy is, that it would be the operator of this particular location. It is a very, very, very reputable franchise operator. They have 270 locations in 30 states that are presently open and operating. And so I think they are part of the solution and not part of the problem. People like this, when they come in and they operate in a professional manner without problems, I think that these are the people that should get these types of use permits so that they can perhaps be an example to neighbors and the city as to how you should operate these types of businesses and not focus on some of the problems that have been in other locations. This would be, I believe, the fifth location in Southern Nevada for Massage Envy. They are confident that they are professional, responsible, that they're a good operator. I think we conveyed that to the neighbors. I did recognize one or two neighbors are here tonight. I'm not entirely sure if they're going to speak, but I hope that we conveyed that. It seemed to be a positive neighborhood meeting. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. We can give your name and address for the record.
Kevin Marsh, 1401 Sun Blush Lane. I'm one of the owners of the shopping center. I have a letter here from Mr. Daryl Wright, who's the majority owner of the shopping center, who lives in Southern California. It's just a real brief letter. I'd like to read it. It's Mr. Chairman and commission members. By way of introduction, my name is Daryl Wright, and I am one of the two managing members of Shadow Mountain Marketplace LLC. Mr. Mark D. Linehan, the other managing member of Shadow Mountain Marketplace, and I are ultimately concerned with the long-term ownership of high-quality retail shopping centers. Between us, we currently own 1,500,000 square feet of retail space and fully realize that our success rests with the caliber and quality of tenants we select for our centers. We are a component of neighborhood which we wish to serve with the most reputable of goods and services. We have investigated Massage Envy and Mr. and Mrs. Cook's business conduct and have concluded without reservation that their business practices are beyond reproach. In addition to city ordinance, our CCNRs preclude any illegal or offensive commerce, and in fact, our CCNRs restrict many legal businesses that may be found in shopping centers throughout Las Vegas. If Massage Envy or any other tenant at Shadow Mountain Marketplace, for that matter, were to violate any state, county, or city law or ordinance or our CCNRs, they would be in default of their lease. In the case of Massage Envy, if such violation occurred, it would be met with lease termination and repossession of the space. Please rest assured that we fully understand that it is incumbent upon us to operate and manage a high-quality shopping center. Because of our previously stated business practice of long-term ownership, the quality and conduct of our tenant is primary concern in our business plan. Sincerely, Daryl Wright.
Good evening, my name is Harold Hammond, we live at sixty-four eighty-four Mimosa Valley Court Street, and evidently we're the house that the distance is measured to. To be perfectly transparent, when we first saw the posting, it was like, not over my dead body. You know, allow any kind of massage establishment in close proximity. But once we learned the name of the establishment, we did a web search, reviewed it, did a little research on our own, and then we went to the community meeting and met the people that were actually gonna operate it and learn more about the corporation, and we feel in our hearts that, in effect, we're equating Barnes and Noble with the adult bookstore. They both handle periodicals, but it's kinda like apples and oranges. The type of establishment that's going in is nowhere near the type of establishment that we feel the ordinance is set for. We commend the ordinance, we feel the ordinance is good, but it doesn't really apply in this scenario, and we would like it to go through.
Okay, you support it?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And any rebuttal?
No, that was very, we appreciate the neighbors coming out, that was very, very nice for them to spend their evening with all of us here tonight.
Any questions from the commission or comments or motion?
Just, just a quick comment. We still have in our packet, you know, these letters of opposition, and I think it's imperative that, you know, we are asking, or you are asking for a number of waivers, and so I would, in order for me to support this, I think it would have to have the hours from eight to nine, and then put a one-year review on that, and to come back in a year, and if you do what you say you're gonna do, and I believe that you're gonna do what you say you do, then we could explore the, extending the hours of operation to ten o'clock, so if no one has any other comments, I would make a motion. On item twenty-two, for approval with staffs, per staffs, as if approved conditions limiting the hours from eight AM to nine PM seven days a week, and that it be heard by this board again in one year.
And that's to review the hours?
That's to review the hours.
Okay.
Would the applicant accept that?
Yes, we appreciate that, it was one of the things that we discussed with the neighbors, and I think we'll be able to come before you in a year and prove that we've been a good operator, and you'll probably see a request at that time to go to ten, but we appreciate and accept the condition.
Thank you.
If I may, just to clarify, then that would be the deletion of number four, which retains the hours per code at eight to nine PM, and then the addition of a condition that there shall be a one-year review of the hours of operation at a public hearing of the planning commission.
The one year from the date of issuance of business license.
Yes, that should be, because business license allows us to start operating, right?
Whenever you get your business license, right.
Okay, yes.
Did you have?
I'm going to vote to support the motion, but before, I just wanna make an observation. I looked at the protest cards that were returned and checked them against the names of the streets on the maps, and none of the cards come from the streets on the map. And I don't know whether these protest letters belong to another project or are a result of something that we don't know about, but they don't appear to come from the neighbors to this particular project.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of item number twenty-three?
If I may, I'm sorry, Chairman, let me fix something, that the, we won't delete condition number four, but rather indicate that the waiver of the, the requested waiver of business hours is not approved. And that way, it's clear.
Okay.
My motion is so amended.
Please vote. Post, and motion carries.
Thank you.
And that is with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining, and that goes forward to counsel on October seventeen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Haley.
You did a great job. Tell your daddy owes you a big bonus. Because I wouldn't have voted for it if you weren't here.
I told you.
SDR two, item number twenty-three, SDR two-two-two-oh-five, applicant Don F. Ahern, owner DFALLC, to allow for thirty-seven thousand two hundred square foot of light manufacturing, forty thousand square foot of light assembly and fabrication, twenty-two thousand square feet of auto repair garage major, and thirteen thousand eight hundred square foot of office space with a waiver of perimeter landscape requirements to allow a zero-foot wide buffer where eight foot is required along the east, west, and south property lines on the south side of Bonanza Road, approximately five hundred and fifty feet west of Martin Luther King Boulevard. Note, this application has been amended from three, thirty-seven thousand two hundred square foot of light manufacturing to thirty, thirty-six thousand nine hundred square feet, forty thousand square foot of light assembly to eighty thousand square feet, and thirteen thousand eight hundred square feet of office space to sixteen thousand five hundred square foot. Staff?
The proposed development is consistent with the general plan and Title Nineteen standards, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Grossbeck?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Robert Grossbeck, one forty-five East Reno, Suite E-one, Las Vegas, on behalf of the owner and applicant. And, Mr. Chairman, I think everyone's pretty familiar with the project as it's evolved, this is basically our third phase, we concur with staff's recommendations, and would also ask for your approval. Be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no, oops.
Macon Jackson, seven-oh-nine Sunny Place, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'd just like to quickly say that Ahern Rentals Corporation has been a very good neighbor for us, and my neighbors and myself, we wholeheartedly support what Mr. Ahern and the Ahern family is trying to do here, and we just like your support along with the Ahern deal today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And I just, along with what he said, when I drove by to look at this, I wanna comment, you guys did remove that berm, and you've got a nice wall that matches the wall on the other side, and plants in there, so I thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's coming along nicely.
There's no discussion, I'd ready to make a motion.
I had a couple of questions, because I'm looking at the buildings, and where's the rental equipment gonna wind up? Because I, I hear light manufacturing, so I'm, light assembly, and I know some of the things you're doing, I'm just trying to understand.
Sure.
What is employee parking, and where we're gonna see the rental equipment that's currently there?
If we can go to the overhead, I hear.
This is the project here, as you can see, all the parking, the equipment you see now, you know, the highlights, et cetera, will be in the parking furthest, or closest to the freeway.
And they take it away from the street and push it back as far as we can. And that'll mitigate those site issues on Bonanza.
And the light, I guess it's the light manufacturing building to the west of the site?
Correct, yeah, Building A as we.
That's the new building, right?
That is a new building.
And?
That's the one on the right?
Right.
Yeah, on my board here, it's denoted as Building A.
Okay. I think it's, what we're looking at is the far right corner, which is the west.
Correct. Over toward Clarkway.
Just, just so I know, where are the employees within that light manufacturing? Where do they park, and how do they get to their, from their parking to their workplace?
Sure. You see Building D, you can't see it well.
Okay.
In this vicinity, we'll have parking, we're gonna have equipment there as well, but of course, we anticipate at some point, when we build out here, excluding the tower, of course, we're probably have close to a thousand employees. With our various approvals, we meet all the parking requirements. We've got plenty of parking over here adjacent to Washington, we will have storage over there as well, but we envision at some point, we'll probably shuttling some employees if we need to, that work on the south side of Bonanza, over across the street, but we think that we can accommodate them there, it's just a question of when we get it built out and the amount of equipment we have on site, we'll make that determination at that point. But to answer your question, we've got more than enough parking spaces to meet our anticipated growth.
Okay, and those paved lanes that we see going to the, the south of the property, those are the fire circulation, right?
Correct, and a portion, that's a good question, Commissioner, actually, that southernmost portion there is in the N dot easement, and we're working through the draft document right now, the lease, and we hope to have that finalized here within the next several days. So that'll allow us, given this additional fifteen feet, that'll allow that flow, which obviously the fire department's very, very happy with.
Okay, and just, I assume as the, this plan evolves, we will see future applications before us, right?
Well, I don't know if you're gonna need to see future applications with respect to the project, obviously, we're gonna pull permits.
Okay, I didn't know if there was some additional evolution of the overall.
No, I think we're fully entitled, you know, up to this point, with the exception of SDR, of course.
I think we'll see some on the, on the project on the north and on the tower, not on this.
Yeah, the tower will come back, I mean, we have our approvals there, but we're obviously engineering through that, we're gonna have to come back to the city, I'd envision on one or two occasions there, but as far as this project goes here before you tonight, we hope to start building.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Evans?
Yes, just as a matter of full disclosure, I took the opportunity and Mr., to meet with both Mr. Ahern and Mr. Grossbeck, who kinda walked me through their project, and substantially, I was very impressed. But I also wanted to just make a quick note that as the true value hardware store, I believe, that you intend to operate there becomes a reality, I'm really looking forward to going to a smaller store, not a big box store, in order to, you know, to, for my hardware needs, so I appreciate that, but I do appreciate all the hard work that you've all put into this and.
Well, thank you, we, we appreciate that, and we're very excited, we know it's gonna be a great amenity to the neighborhood, and we'll certainly have you, Commissioner, to the ribbon cutting.
Thank you. Commissioner Trobridge?
Ready for a motion? Yes. In regards to item number twenty-three, Site Development Review twenty-two-two-oh-five, I'd recommend approval subject to all staff recommended conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item twenty-three, please vote. Post, motion carries.
And that'll be final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, Z O N two-three-five-seven-nine, applicant owner Raul Gil from an R-four high-density residential to C-two general commercial at three-eleven North Eleventh Street, V A R two-three-five-eight-zero, to allow seven parking spaces where eleven are required for a proposed food processing facility at three-oh-five and three-eleven North Eleventh Street, V A R two-three-five-eight-two, to allow a seven-foot side yard setback where ten foot is the minimum required, and a fifteen-foot rear yard setback where twenty foot is the minimum required for a proposed fifty-one hundred square foot food processing facility, SUP two-three-five-eight-three, to allow a proposed fifty-one hundred square foot food processing facility with a waiver of the retail use requirement, and SDR two-three-five-seven-seven, for a proposed two-building, fifty-one hundred total square foot food processing facility with waivers to allow no landscaping buffer around the east perimeter where fifteen foot is required, to allow no landscaping buffer around the west and north perimeter, and to allow a six-foot landscape buffer around the south perimeter where eight foot is required. Staff?
Chairman and Commissioners, the proposed development is not compatible with adjacent residential development in the surrounding area, as it requires multiple deviations from design standards, including a variance to allow for reduced setbacks. Further, the intensity of the proposed use is not appropriate at this location due to existing adjacent residential uses to the north, east, and west, therefore, staff recommends denial on all applications.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Rex Bell. Rex Bell, behalf of the applicant and the owner of the property, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Ray DeJardins, he's the contractor on the property, Mr. Wrangle, it will be one of the owners, Mr. Raul Gil, that owns Casa Don Juan, is the other owner, and intends to be active, active participating partner in this project. Most of this, I will leave up to Mr. DeJardins, but to explain to you a little bit. The R-four, which is this piece of property right here, all this is C-two, and there's C, there's C-two here, C-two here, this is the R-four. That's where we want the light, the zone change, we think that is compatible in the area to have that, and that would seem to make sense. The, the manufacturing is that of ice cream. It's an Italian ice cream that is wholesale only, not retail. That's the reason for the special use permit, not asking us not to have to put a retail store right with it, it's highly unlikely, I would submit to you, in that area, that people are gonna run over there and buy ice cream retail. They might, but I doubt it. So that's the reason for that request. I'll have Mr. DeJardins refer to the, the rest of it, he's been actively participating on an everyday basis. Mr. DeJardins?
Thank you. Good evening. Ray DeJardins, three-three-oh-five Spring Mountain Road. Our project is on the northwest corner of Stewart and Eleventh Street. We have two existing buildings, one is a single-story, which is already Zone C-two, adjacent, or just north of an existing C-two property that faces Stewart Street, which is, which is this property here. Directly north of this property is ours again, which is a C-four. We're requesting this to be rezoned to a C-two. Upon that approval, we would then join both properties together. Next on our list, it would be the special use permit, because the existing C-two that we have has a condition on it, whereas Mr. Bell indicated that it requires some retail. However, the business at hand is strictly wholesale for this gelato ice cream. We're also asking for some relaxation for the parking. Unfortunately, we are a little bit short of parking. Needless to say, that Eleventh Street heading directly north is a dead-end street. It, there's very little traffic that occurs there, and we found that there's a considerable amount of on-street parking. That being said, after the application was made, we found that there is a vacation that's already started, running from Stewart Street all the way down Eleventh Street for an area of ten feet. And that ten feet, which we would plan on using again, once that is vacated, to additional parking, so that would give us another two parking stalls. Then we have our setback variance. These two structures, the C-two in particular, are relatively old, and they've been there for a considerable amount of time. The setbacks on the north side of the property is only seven foot, and we require ten feet, unfortunately for us, obviously, we can't move the building, and we have to live with that. In the site plan review, we're also requesting that we have a variance for landscaping. Again, the same problem we have, the existing properties are what they are. We've done, we've done as much as we can, we do have a six-foot buffer at the south side of the property, that is with a various landscaping and rocks and trees, et cetera, and also, we went to the north side and put, and did a fairly good attempt on landscaping in front of the parking area, where we have what I would call bouts landscaping with, again, some desert landscaping, et cetera. After that, we have been successful with, with a rezone of the R-four property, directly north of us is an R, again, an R-four property. Should this be, with this being a C-two, I believe we have to have a screen wall dividing two. Our neighbor to the north had just installed a brand-new ornamental iron fence, as we did all around the property, and unfortunately, he's, he can't be with us tonight, but requested that it would take away a lot from what he just invested on his property, should a block wall or a screen wall be put in front of his property. wall or a screen wall be put in front of his property. The other characteristics of the project is we have our traffic flow, which for deliveries and pickup would be coming in off 11th Street through this, this path here and then coming out to the, to the west side, which is a 20-foot lane that's, again, existing. The buildings are separated into two phases and the reason for that is, the first phase, which would encompass the, I'll just say this as a C2, has an investment that they have to make, not including the real estate, of course, of close to $1 million. These buildings, as I stated at the outset, are relatively old and demand a lot of attention. We've already, Mr. Gill, the owner of the property, has done quite a bit of work on these properties for a number of reasons. One of the reasons is, is that that area town, or on this property, that area town, he's had unfortunate luck with some of the people that, I guess, transits would stay in his, in his buildings. There was a meth lab that burnt one of his buildings. And as we cleaned out some of the areas, physically cleaned it out, we found all kinds of drug paraphernalia. It was rat-infested and a lot of other things. So what he's, what I'm saying is, he's cleaned up the area considerably, to the point that my understanding of the Las Vegas Police Department has recommended him for what he's done in securing the area of these because of the prostitution and some of the other items that I've mentioned. He, again, has put a wrought iron fence around his entire property. And I should mention that additional to Mr. Gill owning these two pieces of property, he does own the C2 property directly south of him that faces Stewart Street. That being said, the buildings itself, I mentioned they were old. The single-story for our first phase is concrete block, built more like as a bunker than anything else. I understand it was built for the military way back when. The plant that is going in there is relatively high-tech, quiet, non-pollution, for sake of a word, and very little working area. One of the larger areas, if you split the building in two, one area is mainly a walk-in freezer and a blast freezer for the product. The other side of the building would be the actual manufacturing of this product, of the gelato ice cream. So because, again, that was the first phase. The second phase, again, there's been a considerable amount of money that was spent on the exterior of the building for paint, some of the windows and the re-roofing of the structure. Again, because of the investment that we're doing on the first phase, we decided that we'll work on the second phase once we have this product up and running. Our intent for the second phase would be primarily for dry storage for the product that's going to be produced here. The area. Directly east of us is a apartment complex, I believe, as I'm told, it's senior people that live there. There's an R4 directly north of us and some residential further down. On the west side, on the other side of the lane, we're separated with some R1 residential. And directly south is, again, Mr. Gill's property and Stewart Street. We also believe by having this type of facility is going to be a benefit to the area, not to mention jobs and the offshoots of the product that's being processed there. I think I've covered pretty much anything with reference to the actual product operation and how it works. We have Mr. Regal here that, if you want, could explain how this.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can, I'm hoping to guide maybe their presentation so that my questions can be answered. If you don't have any objection, can I just throw some questions out there so maybe they can answer them?
Yeah.
Yes. First of all, the hours of delivery, because I'm assuming you say you're an ice cream plant?
Yes.
Is that something that you bring dairy in? You transport dairy? And what would your routes be? Are there, is there sufficient alleyway entrance or do you come off of 11th? Is it a food processing facility that's operating 24 hours a day or is there shift work? And I want to know about the noise, the equipment. You talk about the blast freezers and the, you know, the equipment that you would make the gelato or the.
Yes.
Ice cream. I'm somewhat familiar with that. I'm kind of curious if, what kind of state-of-the-art equipment and if you've done any noise studies. I note that you're right next to some residential and I would like some answers maybe to what you think the noise levels would be in terms of the impact on the neighbors, the delivery aspect again. And then finally, I note that it's in the redevelopment district and I'm kind of curious why you would choose to put a food processing plant right in the heart of where they're building high-rises and where we just built Campaign Place. And I know the area is a challenge. You talk about some of the crime in the area that we're really hoping that that'll turn around and downtown's really coming along. I'm curious why you would take a relatively prime piece of property and want to build a plant? Maybe you could answer those questions for me.
I'll start with your last question. Why did we pick this area? Mr. Gill and Mr. Wrangle are being partners in this scenario. Mr. Gill had, as I stated before, a lot of not such good luck with the apartments that were there before and all the problems that he had. Therefore, decided that all he wants to do is just say a little bit low-key, was not interested in developing anything major other than being involved with this ice cream factory that he believes this was the right area for him. I can't really say much more than that because that's, I guess, that'd become out of his head directly, but that's my understanding of why he got involved with this. As far as the noise level and the manufacturing of the product, I'll leave this to Mr. Wrangle to explain to you. However, I will say as far as noise is concerned, I did state that the building is, what I'm saying is relatively sound. It's also going to be insulated as well as it's a block wall with an exterior brick, which of course reduces an enormous amount of sound. That being said, the equipment that they do have is the latest in technology and is relatively quiet. But off that note, I'll just leave the rest for him.
Mr. Gill was not really aware of the redevelopment area when he bought it. He and Mr. Wrangle had gotten together and had seen this is an excellent place to actually have this plant. Actually, of course, it's your all called, but we think it actually improves the area as certainly it was. But Mr. Wrangle will tell you about the hours and the equipment, which is your main question.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Fernando Wrangle, one of the owners, partner with Mr. Gill. This is the equipment we're going to use. It's the latest equipment in the world making ice cream, gelato. Doesn't make any noise. That's the main mixer right here. And this is the batch freezer, who makes noise like any freezer at home. And the noise on the main freezers, the big ones, is going to have a compressor outside and makes the noise as any other compressor, air conditioning compressor in any other apartments or house. Then it doesn't make more noise than whatever we used to have in our homes outside with the compressor. And with the machines, doesn't make any noise. It's, it's just a mixer mixing the powder with the milk and it doesn't make any noise.
And then how does it get into the various containers and you have conveyor belts and is it stored somewhere? Do you have people moving it, trucks picking it up?
Yes. We're going to pack on gallons like the milk. We're going to put it on a batch, on a freezer, blast freezer to keep it frozen. And then we're going to put it on a regular freezer to maintain the product. But it is going to be made in the morning. We're going to have the first shift, shift at 8:00 in the morning to 1:00 afternoon and the second one, 1:00 afternoon to 9:00 at night. And we're going to make just one delivery in the morning and all the production made in the day is going to be delivered to the hotels and casinos and restaurants for the software machines.
And how many employees per shift do you have?
We're going to have just four employees.
Per shift?
Yeah, it's going to be, yeah, four employees per shift.
Question with regard to, you talk about the powder, so that's delivered, so you've got delivery trucks bringing that and you have delivery trucks bringing milk, whether those are large trucks, tanker trucks?
No.
I'd like to understand, you know, and those deliveries would.
It's not going to be.
At 8:00?
It's not going to be a big trucks. They're going to make a delivery once a week. We're going to receive the product, actually on the milk. But on the powder, we're going to receive every two weeks. It's not a big problem. It's just a truck, not too big truck to receive the powder and then our truck is not, is not going to be big and we're going to make a deliveries once a day.
But is that off of, do the deliveries come off of 10th, 11th, Ogden or Stewart? Do you know? Is there a route? Do they go through an alley?
Yes.
Are they small trucks, large trucks, semi-trucks, milk trucks?
No, I don't think it'd be any semi-trucks, keeping in mind that the actual facility for the plant is only 2,300 square feet, 23 plus, 2,400 square feet.
It says 5,100 square feet.
That's for the, that's for the two buildings, Commissioner. The building where the actual plant is going to be is 2,400 square feet. The other building, which is a two-story building, is 20-some-hundred square feet as well. But there is not one facility of 5,100 square feet. Therefore, that would also minimize the amount of production that you could do.
I'm just trying to wrap my mind around your, your production and how you would make it profitable and trying to calculate what I've heard the real estate prices are down there and trying to get an idea of the volume of traffic and the, I'm trying to think of how you would make a profit and why you would put a plant in the middle of a redevelopment area.
Well.
Where the land is really quite a premium, from what I understand.
Well, again, this is a choice of the owner of the property, who owns all three pieces of property. Mr. Gill decided that's what he wants to do with it. I can't answer much more than that.
But surrounded by residential.
Understood, Commissioner, understood. Going back to the route, I would believe that it would be coming off of Stewart Street onto 11th and then flowing through the property, doing this drop-off or delivery, pickup or delivery, then go through the laneway and then back out on Stewart and perhaps hooking up to the highway or whichever direction.
And that would all occur prior or at 8:00 AM?
I'm only in a construct. He's the ice cream man. I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to figure out. Do they bring the hotels? Do they make the deliveries that are that late in the morning or does it take a long time to load the product?
No, it's on pallets. It comes on those boxes like the milk comes with the six gallons each box and every pallet has 156 gallons. That's how it's going to be the delivery. And it's going to be one delivery in the morning. And the question you ask, it's a very high-end quality product and you can, you can make with a gallon actually 55 servings. Then it's, it's a good profit margin.
Okay, I want to, I thought it was just going to be a few questions, so I'm going to cut it and say that this is a public hearing and anyone from the public that wishes to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Paul at 240 North 19th Street. And this is my neighborhood. This is where I am. Margot, I need you to fill in the commission on what this area is intended to be in 2020. What this area is intended to be in 2020 is a work, a live-work area where we passed law, the change, what was it, seven years ago where you would, you could have a store or whatever it is on the bottom floor and you would live above. But the whole thing in 2020 is live-work. This is to be a pedestrian area where everybody walks around. In 2015, NDOT says that Stewart Street is going to carry 55,000 cars a day. That's Stewart Street, the same level that Charleston is now. But this is supposed to be a pedestrian area and that's what we want. My complaint with what they're doing right now is that they don't have a little consumer area where you can go in and buy the stuff on at the place like Universal Bakery has right down the street on Stewart and I think it's 14th, Maryland Parkway. That's a commercial thing. They make commercial cakes and everything. But you can walk over there and they have a seating thing, just a few views and a booth and that, and you can buy your stuff. And that is what we want and we made them do it and I think that we need to make these people do it because we need to look at the 2020 thing. And if, I love, I love that, that Italian ice cream. I'll be the first one there. Be the first one there and probably be in there every day. But if, if they have a place for us to buy it and sit down, maybe a little outdoor area. But that's what I want to see there and I'm all for this.
Mr. Farlow, Mr. Farlow.
They're shaking their head.
If you read the staff, Mr. Farlow up here, the staff report that Margot, her staff's reference, talks about the residential component. That's what's missing here in the live-work thing. So, or at least that's the goal part of the redevelopment agency.
And that's the thing, we have the senior, we have hand that already has two buildings and now they're starting construction on the third. And we're getting, we're getting all the people there. Now we need little places to go. We've got Stewart Market, we've got Universal or International, whatever that bakery is. Now we need this. We need this open for the passerby.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Federico, 323 North 11th Street. I've never been before, met you before. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm an attorney in Las Vegas, partner in Olson, Cannon, Gorman &amp; Russo, alternate municipal court judge. And my wife also, she owns 319 North 11th. So we really are the neighbors, so to speak. A little bit of background information on this area, I'm sure you guys are familiar, at least vaguely, but we've been working the area for about two and a half years as far as our two four-plexes. As you know, there, it's R4 over there at 319 and 323 North 11th Street. And we've owned the properties for about two and a half years and I'll admit, I'm the first one to admit, that when we first bought those properties, it was, it was a nightmare. It was very difficult for us. And there was a lot of bad tenants in our units and I'm sure there were bad tenants in other units. And we were going to give up rather quickly, but instead what we did was we found suitable tenants. We also made our improvements. We paved the parking lot, we did painting, we changed the carpets, we put in additional lighting for security. I also talked to Metro on several occasions because I know a lot of the officers, I know some of the patrol officers on bike over there. They stepped up their, their presence in the area and pretty much have cleaned up for the most part that area. As far as I can see, I mean, we have no problem with redevelopment of Las Vegas and obviously we bought property two and a half years ago over there because the redevelopment was going on. My wife is a Realtor, she can tell you a little bit more. We just can't see how this really is conforming to the area whatsoever. And the biggest problem I have, I don't have any problem with the very corner building doing some kind of business, but the delivery trucks is going to be a real concern. What you have behind our properties on 319, 323 North 11th Street, there's a very small alleyway, but basically only one vehicle can go in there at a time in one direction, either one direction or the other. And that's where the trash is also picked up. And my tenants already, and have always complained about, you know, the fact that the dumpsters are pretty much right there. Anyway, bottom line is we have concerns over the noise. are pretty much right there. Anyway, bottom line is we have concerns over the noise, we have concerns over possible noxious fumes, we have concerns over the parking. We have our nice parking lots. They don't appear to really have any over there. And if they're going to congest the streets with their employees, we are very much against it. I think they need to do something else to that property. Thank you.
Sylvia Forensic, Federico, 319 North 11th Street. I am a little bit concerned with the loss, excuse me, the loss of any landscaping. The parking, of course, is gonna be all along the street, so you're turning it into more of an industrial type place when right next to it is our four. I mean, we'd like to remain our four. We have not given up on the community. And I don't believe that when they purchased the property, since I'm a Realtor and I was approached by one of the Realtors working for, I think it was Mr. Gill, I believe that their intentions were to turn that whole corner into C2. And I don't think that's beneficial for us. I do think that we need to improve with the apartments. There's a shortage of apartments. There's a shortage of lower-income housing. So I do think that it should stay that way and the landscaping should be worked on. I don't think that they should be granted everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask if you wish to comment.
One of the comments, nobody is taking away any landscaping. If anything, there'd be some added. And again, just pointing out, regardless of redevelopment area and so on, this was C2, C2, and this one, which backs up to the apartments, is one we're asking to change that to the C2. And the idea when it was bought was, is correct. It was intended to try, it looked like it fit so that it could all be C2. And C2 is compatible with the particular item that we're wanting to build there. I mean, it allows for that in particularity. As to the profit margins and so on, no one could ever guarantee that, but the same for any other business. And as to the gentleman who came up and said that he would like to be able to go over there and get ice cream, all right, we did not figure that likely that anybody would want to, but I can assure you, there's enough there that that could be made available so he can buy it retail. And if we only get him, I'm not sure it's worth it, so he'll have to talk some of his friends into it. I don't know. Anything else?
No. Thank you. Do the commissions have any questions? Commissioner Steinman?
What does the owner expect to do with the property on Stewart, right on Stewart? What's the plan? Yeah.
What are you gonna do with this? This I know has to be, go through building and be, of course, all refurbished. That's the one I believe the fire was in.
Yes, it was.
It was. And so that has to be all refurbished and then it will become part of it. What are you gonna do with the building?
Yep, that's exactly it. We've already got it, that building wasn't intended tenant. However, as we went forward with the project, Mr. Gill realized that again, it is C2, so why not at a later date have that property join the rest of his properties and just do one big property.
Well, I see a potential here of joining both the C2s in what you wanna do and opening up a retail store. To me, if this had a retail store aspect to it and an ability to go in there and watch this stuff being made and back, it lends a uniqueness to that particular area of downtown. And now I have a different attitude towards it. The way it is now, it's a factory making ice cream in the middle of some residential there. And I'd like to turn this around and have it be an attraction for our city and also achieve what you want to as a profit in making gelato. So that's, I think, where we ought to go with this.
Well, I actually, I think that's an excellent idea, Commissioner. But we still, obviously I'd have to take that up with my clients, but having those, the three properties together as such, I think is something that could probably be worked out.
But I'm not understanding why in two phases, if you can run the gelato operation over one building.
Yes, yes.
What is the need for the rezoning to the north and that other building? Why does that have to be there? What is the necessity of that?
It's space, Commissioner. There's not enough...
Space for what?
For parking, space for...
Parking, but what's the building gonna be used for?
That one was for storage. That was for storage.
Storage, well, if you're not gonna have that when you start up the operation, where's the storage?
Well, we wanted to, because of the amount of money that we're putting into this, we wanted to start and construct that and get it going and then refurbish this building here. But as I stated, as we were going through with the project, we started talking about that building in the front, which we were gonna join at a later date.
I'd rather see focus up there. Then it makes some sense.
Sure.
I mean, it's a unique thing for our community. It would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I just, I thank you very much for your, for your answers to my questions. And I would agree with Commissioner Steinman. I think that there may be a real missed opportunity here, you know, in terms of the uniqueness of your operation. The thing that comes to my mind is the little Lovitz frozen custard over on Oak. There's a line out there, five, six nights a week and not a single place to sit or anything. It's the most unattractive little place in town and yet there's, they do more business than they know what to do with. I think you would have a great opportunity for that kind of an experience there. But my bigger issues, other than your business plan, are that I don't see where any of the goals of the redevelopment, the redevelopment district would be met. And it seems awfully intense, given the residential proximities. And just in terms of the visions and the goals and the dreams for downtown, I'm not sure that this would do anything to enhance that. I know if I lived near there, I would have some definite concerns. So I very much appreciate that you wanna redevelop the property, but I think that in the downtown area, I mean, it's just a stone's throw from here. And we've got people investing, you know, their lives, investing their lives in downtown and I'm not sure that this is consistent with that. So as much as I appreciate the fact that you wanna redevelop it, I just, I can't, I can't support this in its present application.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
I have mixed emotions about the projects, quite frankly. I think that some of my concerns would go away if there was a commitment to landscape along 11th. I also think that a perhaps a walk-up type public service area where people could buy the products at the same time, not create additional demand for parking would be a welcome addition to the project. But contrary to what some of my colleagues might be thinking, I do think this is an appropriate project, although I probably would agree with them that this isn't the goal for the property 10 years from now. I see this being a five-year program. It's gonna take a piece of property that's not making any money or doing much and have it do something now while the rest of that area kind of blossoms up around it. And at that point in time, this property is gonna be way too valuable to have an ice cream factory sitting on it. And it's probably not more than five years away. So.
Thank you.
If we get landscaping in the walk-up area for public service.
Already discussed with my client, which is an issue for that, for the retail space. And again, that 10-foot area on 11th Street that I was talking about that's being vacated, again, could be a green space for that as well. These are things that we'd have to massage and figure out.
Dirty word. Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I understand what you're asking for. I, you know, this was just a zoning. You were gonna put a retail use in there that was somewhat appropriate. I mean, everybody loves ice cream, so that's what gives everybody a fear of problem to deal with this. But the reality is you're asking for a special use permit for a food processing plant adjacent to a residential use. And that I can't get past. And it's not that, I don't think your intentions are good. It's just you're gonna have, by the nature of processing food, you're gonna have a greater delivery of product to the site than a typical retail, C2 use. You're gonna have a greater trash and pickup schedule because you're dealing with food products that have a higher handling issues with them. And your wholesale delivery, that's, we're talking, put in a lot of delivery and trucking intensity going right out of an alleyway adjacent to existing apartments. And that's where I have a problem with this. And that's why I agree with staff's assessment of this and that it may be a great use, but just the intensity is the wrong, wrong time at the wrong place. And that's why I won't support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any motion?
I'd like to see them go back and rework this. I think there's potential here. Actually, I'm not afraid of the food processing if it's made a part of the attraction of the property. And I don't want just to see a little stand up front where you hand out dishes of gelato. I wanna see a place where people can sit down and enjoy this thing and that's a destination for them to come and watch the process being done. So maybe I ought to rework this instead of us potentially turning it down. But I think that, I would agree, but I think that's an entirely separate application with all various, all different considerations from both staff and all the legal parameters. But I agree with your vision.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're not unwilling to do that either.
You're not?
We're not unwilling to go back.
Oh, you are willing.
And, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We're not unwilling to go back, if you all thought it really could be reworked to somewhat of a satisfaction of the commission.
I don't know if you've ever been to Beaufort, Utah, where they do the cheese and they just have a big window there and you can watch them. It's cool. And people drive through there and...
The only thing I've been, Chairman, was Krispy Kreme doughnuts and I watched.
Yeah.
Ate and watched and grew.
Only trouble is you gain weight watching Krispy Kreme.
Yeah, exactly.
But I mean, but I don't know with your machines if that's really a realistic thing that you could have some kind of a viewing of them making ice cream. I don't know.
I don't know if you've been out to Perump and watched them make the wine. You can get down there and watch them.
I've gone three times, but I don't remember it.
I went, I've only gone once. I remember that. It was pretty interesting because they bring all the juice in and they make their own wine there and they have those, you know, it's all the nice-looking machinery, those baths and et cetera. So people do have an interest in maybe looking at that. I still think that even in a rework though, because of the way the situation was with the owner up here that has the residential places, if he doesn't have an objection, still think he would be able to pull that thing into what some of the ideas you all have, still almost have to get this to be C2. C2 was for that purpose.
Oh, we're not just, I don't think they're disagreeing with it, but they're saying they need that.
That extra oomph on the project.
Integration, yes.
Yeah, that part of it to go and give you the C2 part.
I believe that we could come up with something, Chairman.
Okay.
How much time do you want? A month?
Probably 30 days.
Yes. I'll make, I'll make a motion then on Agenda Items Number 24, 25, 26, 27 and 28 to obey for the first meeting in the month of October.
October 11th.
October 11th.
October 11th. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion to hold this till October 11th. Please vote. Post. And motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen.
And if you need any volunteers for tasting, me and Commissioner Evans are available.
We'll remember that, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 29, VAR 23524, applicant FF Development LP, owner Fairfield Centennial LLC, to allow a retaining wall height of 12 foot, where the maximum retaining wall height is six foot on the north, south and east property lines, and to allow a total height of 15.5 feet, where the maximum total height of retaining and screening wall is 12 foot, for a proposed 414-unit condominium development on the south side of Centennial Parkway, approximately 340 feet east of Pulley Road. And TMP 23525 for a 414-unit condominium subdivision. Staff?
Staff would note that we've received revised tentative map for this application, date stamped 8/22/07. Just had a minor change showing a turnaround radius for fire equipment. So the conditions that are in your backup reflect that revised tentative map. In regards to our recommendation, we find that there is no hardship associated with this site, which requires the construction of oversized walls, and we recommend denial of the variance and the related tentative map.
Thank you. Mr. Kemper?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Chris Kemper here on behalf of the owner and applicant. I actually, if we can go back to the previous overhead that shows the site, that gives you an idea of what actually this particular property is next to. You've seen this before. You approved the multifamily development on that site. It is just south of Centennial and as you can see, the Beltway is immediately to the east of us. The issue here, and we have our engineer, should you have any questions appropriate for his consideration, but in a nutshell, what we're talking about is a piece of property that has to be terraced. And in terracing it, you have to also meet ADA requirements, which means you can't have slopes that are too great. So while the request seeks wall heights up to 12 feet, and it's important and we appreciate staff's recommendation because staff always tells you what the maximum heights are that are being requested. If we can go over to the overhead now, here is the site that you just saw. The Beltway would be off here to the east, Centennial up to the north. As you can see, and I don't, I don't think you can read what I put in here, but basically from here down to here, the wall heights go from two feet up to eight feet, most being around four to six feet. The area that's up eight to 12 feet, or eight to 10 here and eight to 12 here, is just this small area right here. Similarly, it's this small area right here. And again, in this area from here to here, except for this small part here and this area here, all of this is four to eight feet. Basically, the 12 feet is where drainage channels come into the property and Commissioner Dunham will understand this better than I did, but the wall has to come out like this to reflect the, deflect the flows actually, to slow them down so that they enter the property here essentially at the same speed that they're leaving, so you're not exacerbating the situation. So that's why the funny-looking walls in these particular locations. So all in all, the vast majority of this property, I think it's like 90% of the property, is well under eight feet and under. And on top of that is a three-foot decorative wrought iron fence so to maintain views and appearance. So we, we very much always appreciate staff's comments. They're constrained by what the requirements of the code are. And the code is, this is, doesn't meet the requirements of the code. But in light of the small amount of area that's actually involved, we'd respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask Commissioner Dunham if he has any. I saw you shaking your head. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. On item, let me get my glasses here. Item 29, move for approval with staff's as-if-approved conditions.
We have a motion for approval on 29. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. And 30?
And on item 30, move for approval with staff's as-if-approved conditions.
We have a motion for approval on item number 30. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Necros forward to council on October 17.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 33, VAR. They were held. Scare me. Item 33, VAR 23585, applicant Drake Real Estate Services, owner Pecos Partners LLC, to allow a 50-foot residential adjacency setback where 73 foot is the minimum required, adjacent to the south side of Owens Avenue, approximately 295 foot west of Pecos Road. VAR 23588, to allow 71 parking spaces where 81 spaces is the minimum required. And SUP 23593, for a proposed retail establishment with an accessory package liquor off sale. And an SDR 23581, for a proposed... and an SDR 23581 for a proposed 14,000, 28-square-foot general retail store with waivers of perimeter landscaping standards to allow a zero-foot landscaping buffer where eight foot is required along the east property line. Staff?
First, we'd like to note that Pecos Partners LLC should be listed as the owner for all four applications instead of Drake Real Estate Services. With that, the residential adjacency variance, parking variance, and landscape waiver indicate that this proposal is too intense for this site, and staff recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Hi. Lenny Scar, 3753 Howard Hughes Parkway, representing the applicant. This is another one of the Little Fresh and Easy neighborhood markets. You've seen me up here before with those. And I want, what I think what I'm going to do is kind of walk you through what the layout is here so that you can understand it. And I'm going to also apologize to staff because I actually picked up the revised site plan at 10 minutes after 5:00. So they have not seen it, but the changes aren't great. I'm just going to see if there was a, there's a CVS grocery store with their parking lot. And as you can tell, there is a joint access drive between our property and theirs. This is where their pharmacy drive-through is. That's the drive aisle, the joint access drive. And that's the property line between our property and CVS. Then there is a remainder of the parcel which CVS, all of this is one parcel. So there's a remainder of the parcel which the owner is keeping, and Fresh and Easy won't have any control over that portion of the site. This is the slope analysis for the residential adjacency on this project, and you can see our finished floor is going to be two to two and a half feet higher than the residential property that we are abutting on our south side. So this is the portion of the building that does not meet the residential adjacency slope. So that is the section that we are asking for, that variance for residential adjacency The parking variance, you've heard me give this little speech before, we're doing 71 spaces where 81 spaces are required. Fresh and Easy, in their own research, has decided that 70 spaces are adequate for their stores for a couple of reasons. One being that the items that have a lot of traffic for something like a convenience store, cigarettes, gas, are not available at these stores. So people that are looking to pick up those items are not going to find them here. We don't have any slot machines where somebody's going to sit down for a couple of hours and play the machines. This is, they're not looking to have customers that are going to come in and load up two shopping carts full of groceries for the next two weeks. What they're looking for is the shoppers that have three or four items, they're going to be in the store 10 to 15 minutes and be gone. So the people that come and shop here aren't going to have their cars parked in this parking lot for an hour while they're doing their grocery shopping. It's going to be a lot of quick trips like you'd see at a convenience store, and so they don't feel that 81 spaces are required for that type of traffic. The shopping carts that they have are the little shopping carts, like, they call them trolleys. So a week's worth of groceries wouldn't even fit in their shopping carts. So that is our reasoning for only having the 71 spaces for parking. On the special use permit for the liquor, there are two things that I would like to bring to your attention. One of them is condition number six, has the condition on it, the sale of individual containers of any size of beer, wine coolers, or screw-cap wine is prohibited. And we would like to be able to sell some of those 10, 12, 15, $30 bottles that come with a screw cap. And so we would like that sentence of the condition changed to say the sale of individual containers of any size of beer or wine coolers is prohibited. And then the last thing I'm going to talk about in the site plan review, I already pointed out where our east property line is. What we would like to do, instead of having that landscape planter through the middle of the joint access drive, is instead to put an eight-foot planter immediately adjacent to our building. And that planter would be right here. And it would have trees, the same style of trees, varieties that we are using in the rest of our landscape planters. And then the last thing I'm going to address, and it's covered by condition number 19, in case you want to look it up, but it was brought up by staff and also a couple of the commissioners mentioned it to me. We are going to pave these parking spaces, and we have worked out an agreement with the property owner where we will do the complete width of this western driveway, and then since it's not on our site, they will reimburse us for it. But we're going to go ahead and pave that entire width of the driveway when the store is built. So, and I know there were questions about landscaping. As you can see, we have the full width planters along the south. We also have them along the street frontage. We're meeting this number and size of landscaping finger planters in the parking area. So the only place that we are requesting the variance is through the middle of that drive aisle. And you would not have landscaping, you know, where the truck turns in those areas either way. So basically, we're taking what landscaping there would be from here and putting it here. In, I've read through staff's conditions on all of the applications with the exception of the removal of or screw-cap wine from the use permit. Now, I agree with all of staff's conditions. I would ask that one condition be added to that permit. And that is to limit our use to beer, wine, and coolers only. I would like a condition specifically placed on this that says the sale of distilled spirits is prohibited at this location. So if the commissioners would be willing to add that, I would appreciate it. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
My name is Chris Bush. I live at 3504 Madonna Street, which is in the vicinity. I'm opposed to this. I, right across the street from this proposed store is a bar and a liquor store. There's a 7-Eleven kitty corner across the street sells liquor. There's CVS Pharmacy that sells liquor. There's a high-density apartment complex that may be North Las Vegas property. There's a lot of people hanging out on the streets at night, a lot of traffic accidents at that corner. And to leave this property, they can only go left on Owens, or right on Owens, can't take a left-hand turn, but you do see people taking a left-hand turn over the median. I, I don't think this is a good place to put this type of store. And the small grocery carts are the same ones that are in my property every morning when I get up.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Did you wish any more comments or...?
I guess I will make a couple of comments. First thing I have to agree with is the tavern across the street. The first time I went out and visited this site, there actually was, and I'll borrow a word, a rave going on in the parking lot out there, and I was kind of scared to drive through there. With this one, though, you know, it's designed to sell a six-pack of beer that somebody takes home. The amount of alcohol that would be in this store is very small. The policy of Fresh and Easy is that at none of their locations can it exceed 3.2% of the floor area, where a use permit would allow 10% of the floor area for alcohol. So Fresh and Easy even realizes that this is to be strictly a convenience for the people that would come there to pick up their daily shopping needs, a head of lettuce, quart of milk, roll of paper towels. It is not something that is going to be prominently displayed. It is not going to be displayed in the front of the store. Anyone that wished to buy that type of product is probably going to find it cheaper across the street, and they're definitely going to find it with easier access. Anyone looking to purchase that particular type of product is going to be walking into the store because what's on their shopping list is produce or something for dinner.
Thank you. Does any of the commissioners have questions? Mr. Treutje?
Yeah. One question I've got is, I understand your comments with regards to Fresh and Easy not agreeing with our code. You know, they, they have a better understanding of parking with regards to their business. But it is our code. And it is a self-imposed issue here. There, as I understand it, they're acquiring property to build this site, and acquiring enough land for 10 additional parking spaces, I can't see for the third, fourth-largest retailer in the world, it's probably not the end of the hunt to meet the local codes. So that's one thing I, I have a problem supporting because I would think a major retailer coming in here to make a statement in the community, and they've done a very good job so far, shouldn't have to waive everything going, coming in the door. And parking, I've tried to look at the other markets they're in, but quite frankly, they're not in it yet. They're not open yet. So it's all study and it's all, you know, speculation. But if, if we're, if our code's right and they're wrong, we have, we have an issue on site here that, that we're knowingly creating. And that's, that's what I have a problem with. I would think that if, if they want to continue to make applications here and ask for these waivers, it's incumbent upon them to work with staff to maybe come up with a solution that isn't a waiver, because I'm not quite as rigid as Commissioner Dunham is on, on the parking. But on, on the other hand, this is something, you're acquiring a site from a property owner, and it, it's, to me, there's more dirt there, whether you acquired it or not, or whether it laid out differently. I think that's, that's the big hurdle for me. A grocery store selling beer and wine, if we can get the wording right on whether it's screw-taps or it's box wine or whatever it is, we can, I think we've addressed that on, on other sites with them or with similar type uses. But my biggest concern is you address the landscaping against a building on the east side. It's a good-looking building, it's a good-looking, this is an appropriate location for it. It's just, I'm not going to support the waiver on that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion? Mr. Steinman?
I'll make a motion on Agenda Item Number 33. VAR 23585, move for approval subject to conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item 33. Please vote. Motion carries.
Agenda Item Number 34, VAR 23588, move for approval subject to conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item 34. Please vote. Motion does not carry. That was for approval. Do we have a motion for the denial?
Make a motion for, to follow staff's recommendation and deny the variance.
And the motion does not carry. Chairman, that goes forward with new recommendation. Yes. Item 35?
Agenda Item Number 35, SUP 23593, move for approval, subject to stated conditions with a contemplated change to number six as it relates to the beer, wine, and the coolers. And would the director assist me, because we've been through this before.
That would just be Chairman and Commissioner Steinman, that would be in condition number six to just delete the phrase "or screw-cap wine."
So amended. What?
Yes, yes. And then in the other condition that was put forward by the applicant for your consideration would be the additional condition that the sale of distilled alcohol shall be prohibited at this location.
So amended.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval with two changes. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And Agenda Item Number 36, SDR 23581, move for approval subject to conditions.
Motion for approval...
That condition is that the landscaping is against the wall?
On the east side.
Correct.
I don't see it on the plan. It's not on your plan either, is it?
Didn't we receive a new one, didn't you say?
Yes, it's on this new one that I just picked up at 5:00.
Oh, you, you didn't have that one up?
It's 7:00 to 5:10.
Take a look. Bring it up.
September 13, 2007, date stamped.
Where's the lens? That looks like it's inside the building line.
This is the building line.
Oh, it is. Okay. Have the, have the staff take a look there, please.
This is, this is the loading dock. This is the building line here. On the previous plan, for whatever reason, they were showing a sidewalk.
Okay.
So in essence, we'd have a condition that there would be an eight-foot landscaping buffer on the east side of the building.
Right.
And what's the date of that one? That plan?
September 13, 07.
Is it 9/13?
That would be today.
Well, I just wondered if it's dated today.
Well, we'll date...
Well, that's when we received it.
We're dated again. So amended.
Please, we have a motion for approval, subject to conditions. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
That goes forward to council on October 17.
Ms. Scar, if I can...
Yes.
Just, the woman who came to speak about the shopping carts, do you use the system, like some of the stores, the CAP system, where the cart cannot go beyond the perimeter of the, are they smaller carts? And what can you do or can you ask your client to do something about ensuring that they're not removed from the premises and they end up in neighborhoods?
We've actually, we've talked about, I've talked with my client about a couple of different systems. One is the one that, where you have the wire that you lay around the property, and they're actually, you know, not huge fans of that, but I guess they're...
I'm not a fan of shopping carts in neighborhoods.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not either.
All ones end up in people's yards. So anything you can do to assist them as these applications...
It's my understanding that there is another newer system, and I'll be honest, I don't totally understand it.
I've seen some systems that work better than the others.
Yeah.
Okay. Go back to your client, you're coming forward with these and try to figure something out, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to item 37 and 38. VAR 24021, applicant owner Parkway Center LLC, to allow an off-premise billboard sign with digital display to be erected 45 feet above the elevation of the Orin K. Grayson Freeway, where 30 foot above the elevation of the freeway is the maximum height allowed at the northeast corner of City Parkway and Grand Central Parkway, and SUP 23330 to allow a proposed 71-foot tall, 30-foot by 22-foot off-premise billboard sign with digital display. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to make a finding of a hardship in the variance application and therefore is recommending denial of both variance and the special use permit.
Thank you. Mr. Kemper?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Chris Kemper. With me in the audience is Suzanne Sanders, if you have questions, appropriate for her consideration. You've seen this, if we can go to the overhead, you've seen this building before, you've seen this situation before. There has been a sign here for quite a while, or there was, and what happened is, we wanted to remove that sign so that we could put signage on this side of the building and on the other side of the building, creating, in the words of our planning director, one big fat pole that had two sign faces on it. Unfortunately, when we got to the final stages of that, NDOT has informed us that there is another sign across the freeway that is 700, closer than 750 feet, and so we can't do either one of those. So we're asking to go back to the same location, the same height as we had previously. We do intend to enhance that sign, and we'll work with staff on that, but we would just ask essentially that we be allowed to have, again, the sign that was there in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 249 North 19th Street. And I just want to commend the applicant, what a beautiful building this is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Wish you would cover up that building behind it, but seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and ask the Commissioner Trobridge.
I have no problem supporting these two items, but I would suggest that just to improve the aesthetics of the sign base so that it's, looks more like the building than just a steel pole coming out of the ground. Those are fairly unattractive when you just go right around the, closer to the backside of the World Market Center. Those signs that are there are very attractive. You could use that as a model and probably make it look more like the building that's there, the Alaskan building.
To the extent we can. I understand that these very elaborate kinds of displays here will be what will be utilized on the pole, so it kind of puts the build, all of the building together, so that...
Have confidence that Mrs. Sanders won't let you get away with anything tacky.
I'm confident you won't let Mrs. Sanders get away with anything tacky.
Commissioner Trusdale?
This is unfortunately one of those cases where no good deed will go unpunished. We worked with the applicant extensively to come up with a solution to the billboard issue over there. I mean, with the sheer investment in this building, and it's a phenomenal building, and the applicant worked diligently to get these, to deal with the digital boards in the right locations. And again, for some reason, whether it's the billboard industry, the state, or somebody, we're stuck, you know, looking what's right here, and this is one that I can't say I agree with, but I will support.
Thank you. Commissioner Steinman?
Where in our code are the standards relating to light emission, et cetera, from a, on a digital sign? Where do we determine what's right and what's wrong?
We don't have any circle.
Then, you know, I don't think there's an attempt here to have a sign like the Great Cowboy, which lights up the entire US 95, but...
My backyard.
In your backyard. And we know people are now saying things about the Mandalay Bay sign. I don't think we're talking about that here. But how do we control light emission that it's, isn't distracting on the freeway there? That's my issue, when we don't have standards relating to that. Can you help me?
Well, I can't, maybe Suzanne might.
Commissioner, there's no standard of which I am aware, but I'd be happy to work with staff to make sure that you've got what you need in terms of, I understand your concerns.
I think we just need to make aware...
This will be an LED board, this is not a neon or flashing, it's not that type of advertising.
And Commissioner, it's probably similar to the ones that already exist, like next to the Ahern site, are they the same Suzanne?
Yes, same kind of thing.
They're fairly low.
Yeah, they are, and there is no neighborhood, really. It's the freeway essentially.
But if the industry's going this direction with these kind of signs, why, why in the new ordinance is there not going to be standards relating to this kind of a sign?
Because we're a government entity, and we always run behind.
Yeah, but we have our chance right now to do it right.
But I don't think the LEDs, the LEDs don't really generate a lot of light.
I know, but they're different. We don't have any standards for it.
I think you have a valid concern. I don't think it relates to this application. I think it's something that should be addressed.
It should be addressed. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is. I'll make a motion on agenda item 37. VAR 24021, move for approval, subject to conditions.
We have a motion for approval of 37. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Yeah. And on agenda item 38. SUP 23330, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion for approval of 38. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Goes forward to counsel on October 17.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, my wife always says whenever I bend over to do something, there's a certain glare that comes off the top of my head. Maybe we could use that as a standard or something.
I was going to say, I think that's a more important ordinance.
Because we're seeing that glare right now.
Commissioner Steinman can relate to that.
Say, please. Not as much as I can.
Please, I have a little bit left.
Item 39. WVR 23568, applicant owner Coleman Toll LP, to allow an internal intersection offset of 84 foot, where 125 foot is required adjacent to the northeast, northwest corner of Alcone Road and Somber Road. VAR 23569, petition to vacate public sewer and drainage easements, and TMP 23567 for 199 lot, single-family residential subdivision. Staff?
This request is as a result of a change of product, going from alley-loaded and rear-loaded housing product to a standard front-loaded, single-family dwelling units. All the applications are in conformance to the Cliff's Edge development. Staff does support the waiver request and the vacation, is recommending approval of all applications.
Thank you. Applicant?
Hi, Chase Jenkins, 9900 Covington Cross. Like Steph said, the developer has developed a new product to meet the current market demands, and, which actually enabled us to make some significant improvements to the site to meet the intent of the master plan. There's several improvements we made, and I don't know if you'd like me to keep this short, or I can...
Do you agree with the staff's...
I do agree with the staff's recommendations.
Short's good.
Conditions, yes. Okay, I thought so.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask the commission if they have any questions.
I've got just a comment. I saw in the justification for this that you have some existing utilities in the ground, and because you have changed your mind and changed your product, you now want to deviate from the standards by not having an internal street meet the offset requirements. And your justification was, well, it's a little bit expensive for us to relocate those utilities, but that's our justification. I really don't have a problem with that, I just wanted to put it on the record that I'm not in favor of granting those types of waivers when it's a long-term detriment to the general public. Those standards are created for a reason, and just because you guys changed your mind and don't want to spend any money, because you changed your mind, the public and the city of Las Vegas have to live with these decisions for the rest of that community's life, 50, 60 years. So I am going to support it, but I just, I wanted to get that out there, that we have to, the decisions that are made here are forever. The decisions and the reasons you guys are doing that is monetary and is very brief, so.
Is that a motion?
On item 39, move for approval per staff's recommendations.
We have a motion for approval of 39. Please vote. Mr. Dunham? Post. Motion carries.
Item 40, move for approval per staff's recommendations.
We have a motion for approval. Please vote. Mr. Trusdale? Post. Motion carries.
On item 41, tentative map, move for approval per staff's recommendations.
We have a motion for approval of item 41. Please vote.
And, Mr. Chairman, I neglect, I'm sorry.
Post. Motion carries. Go ahead.
Goes forward to counsel on October 17.
When I asked the applicant if he agreed with the staff's assessment for approval, I neglected to ask him if he agreed with all the if-approved conditions.
He said he agreed with all the conditions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 42. Moving on to item 42. VAR 23427, applicant owner Carol Weedle, to allow a six-foot setback for a proposed carport and a 12-foot setback for a proposed patio cover, where a 20-foot front yard setback is the minimum required at 309 Westeria Avenue. Staff?
Staff has deemed the request a self-imposed hardship and therefore recommends denial of the application.
Thank you. Applicant?
Carol Weedle, at 309 Westeria Avenue. I'm 71 years old, and I was praying that the commissioners would let me have the carport and the patio, because I am susceptible to sun infection, and I'm also part of the neighborhood watch, and I try to take care of the people's property when they're, when they're gone, and when they have packages coming, I try to put it in, into an area where it's not visible to the street so that it's protected. And I really feel that I need to have the carport for my, I have a car, too, and I just, I just hope that you'll allow me to have the variance. And I have a man from Duracool who has helped me upgrade my house, and he's got some other things to tell you and show you what he could do for my house.
Okay.
I have a...
Would you give your name and address?
John Crotalli.
On the mic? Can't hear you.
John Crotalli, 6417 La Palma Parkway.
Thank you.
This is the sketch that I've made of...
No, we can hear him.
Okay. Anyway, there's a sketch of it, and then I have a picture of what we're going to do on our property.
That's not the carport, though, right? Or is it...
That would be the patio.
No, that's, that's really a patio cover, but hers is going to be designed the same way.
Okay, so are you using a Lumawood?
Ultra wood.
Ultra wood.
That's a step up.
Okay.
And it would be the pillars and that in the front? It would look just like that, only longer? Okay.
Yeah, there's Stoklott also.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If, are you, have you read over all the if-approved conditions? And do you accept them?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask Commissioner Steinman.
I would, first of all, I understand you were cited by code enforcement, you had to take something down.
Yes, I had a carport up there.
You had a carport.
And I did that right after my husband had passed away, and I then had to take it down because they said it was...
Too close?
A violation.
Too close to the street?
Too close to the street or something.
So, so this one, the same thing?
It wasn't disturbing, I mean, like if the fire department had to come in, or the police department had to come in, it was not deterrent where they couldn't get to, if they needed to get in.
Well, I question whether there's 24 feet from the house to the sidewalk, because when I looked at it, it couldn't be, but that's not the point. The point is that across the street from you, at 304, is a pretty ugly carport.
Mine's kind of going to look that way.
I know. My point here is that I'm not sure why code enforcement has not cited the people across the street, and they cited you for whatever you had. We don't even know what it is.
I don't have a...
But I will tell you that what he's planning to build is going to look a lot better than what's across the street. So actually, it's going to improve what the look is in that neighborhood. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would somewhat concur, and if there's no discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okey-dokey.
I think the applicant has made a compelling argument, and the proposed carport won't provide any public detriment, and I think it will be attractive, so my motion would be for approval of agenda item number 42, for variance 23427.
We have a motion for approval of item 42. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal.
Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Moving on to item 43. VAR 23561, applicant owner Ronald Purdue, to allow a proposed 18.1-foot-high accessory structure Class II garage, where a 14.2-foot is the maximum allowable height at 4121 Bradley Road. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the request is a self-imposed hardship and recommends denial of the variance.
Thank you. Mr. Purdue?
Yes. Ronald Purdue, 4121 Bradley Road.
Okay. Did you want to make any comment, or?
I did visit my neighbors, and I do have a list of signatures.
Okay. From all the surrounding neighbors?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Most of the property is a one-acre and half-acre lot, so it's...
And you're aware of all the if-approved conditions?
Yes.
And you're in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask the commission for comments or a motion. Commissioner Dunham, you look like you're a deep thought. Would you like to make a motion?
I have to abstain, as I'm within the notification circle.
I'd be glad to make a motion. I went out and looked at, this will be, it's a large lot, and definitely an improvement around there, and I commend you for doing it, and so I'll move to approve agenda item 43, VAR 23561.
We have a motion for approval...
Before you, before we vote on that, Commissioner Steinman, or for the applicant, is there any, I didn't see any sort of an illustration of what the final product will look like. Because it's pretty big, I mean, it's 20, 2,200-plus square feet. It's not going to look like a Quonson hut or anything.
Oh, no. It's a prefabricated metal building with a pitch.
And that, see, that concerns me.
An original.
Is there a picture of it? Is it going to look like a barn or a shed?
Oh, no.
Well, the reality is that he's among farms and barns all around it. I mean, that's the reality.
There are some of those Quonson huts in the area that are not really approved.
Not very good.
But it doesn't pick up any of the architectural...
Of the house.
Elements of the house.
That's correct.
No.
And that's my concern. I mean, it's a pretty excessive deviation from the code, but if it were to see my support, I'd like to see it in a character that looks a lot like the house, not like, you know, a metal shed. By the way, it's much larger than even my home.
Okay.
Maybe he wants to put some of those big gates on it.
We have a motion for approval on item 43. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. We have a motion for approval on item forty-three, please vote. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal.
Moving on to item forty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, in other words, if you don't want it approved, you can appeal that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
V A R two-three-five-seven-five, applicant owner Ebenezer Church of God in Christ, to allow a freestanding institutional sign to be ten-point-seven-five-feet-high, where eight feet is the maximum height permitted, to allow the sign area to be a hundred-and-ninety twenty-nine square feet, where fifty square foot is the maximum area permitted, and to include an electronic message unit where no such elimination type is permitted for an existing church, house, or house of worship at one-zero-seven-two West Bartlett Avenue. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the request to be out of character with the residential nature of the neighborhood, and therefore recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I, my name is Leonard Fulmer, I'm from ten-seventy-two West Bartlett, and we have, at this location, I'm hopeful that you can all see this, a two-point-four-million-dollar improvement to what is generally classified as a depressed area of our community. And we believe that our improvement here will go far to enhance our community and our city. In keeping with the investment that we're making here, we're asking that we be allowed to install this, the sign, that is comparable, complimentary, and informative. We have a membership of about five-hundred people, and as most who attend services, they don't attend every service. So the board is going to be very, very helpful in informing those members and in keeping us in contact with the community. And we humbly and respectfully ask your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. If you could move to the right or left, or.
Thank you, Todd Parlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I have no problem with the sign the way it's pictured now, but quite often, in bad neighborhoods, if you go to L.A., the churches there and the businesses there have put up screens around the signs to keep the beer bottles and that from breaking, breaking the stuff, and then it looks pretty shabby. So I would like to see some restriction in that regard, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and ask the commissioners, Commissioner Truesdale?
I appreciate the pastor's remarks, although I think this is actually one of the better areas within the West Las Vegas area, the streets and neighborhood, or people trying hard and really making a difference for their community. I, when you came in, we talked about, you know, the additions to the church, which I believe I supported wholeheartedly at the time, I just, I don't think a flashing reader board in a residential character, I think your church fits, is considered a residential neighborhood with a church, which is appropriate in our community, at least, you know, in what's evolved here. But I don't believe the electronic sign will make the difference in the, in the quality of the church, and I think it will affect the quality of the neighborhood. So I, in that regard, I won't support it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Trowbridge?
Just a question, see two beautiful color photographs of the church under construction? I think those are the ones that you showed.
Yes, sir.
There's several others that have the same address, are these the four pictures? Is that what was removed? Can you see them from here? It's a single-level blockhouse mustard color.
Yes, that, that.
That was, these are the four and afters.
Yes, sir.
Vast improvement. Is the reader sign, that's, the sign is an attractive sign, although it's somewhat large. The reader board portion of it is where we have the bone of contention, a very expensive element of the sign. Is it intended to advertise anything other than church activities?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Can I say something about the reader board?
Sure.
Donna Myers with All-Star Signs, sixty-six, twenty-five South Valley View. The reader board, as was mentioned earlier tonight, is where the industry's going. Also, these reader boards have a dimmer, I mean, it can be turned down. You don't have to have glaring light, there's not a lot of flashing, but they can be dimmed to go with the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
I don't know how this application came to be, and I guess in the grand scheme, it's not the most egregious thing, but in the staff report, it talks about the sign as visible from residential homeowners, and I'm assuming with the reader board, you have the ability to, you know, to flash things on there. If I lived there, I'm not sure I'd want a reader board that would reflect in my window, it's kind of like living above the motel with the neon light that flashes, and I've seen some of them, they can be programmed where it's almost like a strobe light, and I find that very disconcerting. You have a beautiful building there, and I question why you'd want to put this ten-foot sign, and it says that it exceeds the code, and I'm curious, if you're part of the sign industry and this is what you do, how come you can't work within the code and tell your client, this is what you're allowed and this is what you do? You got to demonstrate to me, I guess, that, that the variance is needed, and I don't, I'm not hearing anything other than that we want it.
Well, that's kind of true, except that this is a seventeen-thousand-square-foot church, and just to bring the sign up in scale just a little bit, looks, looks more in keeping with, you know, the scale of the situation. This church has actually been here since the sixties.
Right.
So it's very permanent and longstanding, and about the reader board, I think you said something, that it can be programmed to be like a strobe light and so forth.
Well, they could be programmed, I know that they flash, and they, it just seems so out of character, you have the beautiful building. And I guess my other issue is, in the justification letter that you provided, it says that you have a five-hundred membership and growing, and I'm looking at the site, and I'm thinking, where do five-hundred people park? I'm looking at all these houses along here.
Well, this doesn't show the whole, the whole property. It's over an acre.
Right, there, if I may, first of all, the church and the membership, there was a committee selected wherein, you know, they solicited many, many signs. So it is, this particular sign was selected after considerable consideration of a lot of signs.
But Reverend, if you know that the code says that you're allowed fifty square feet, what made you or your membership come back and say, we need a hundred-and-twenty-nine square feet? And what's the justification other than that you want it?
Well, I tried to address that in the beginning, and I think it's quite a bit like all of the other signs that have come for variance this evening. We believe that this sign more adequately addresses the needs that we have, the needs that we have for communication, the needs that we have for information, the needs, we conduct a number of feeding programs in the community, we, clothing programs in the community, and we use the signage to make notifications and to set schedules so that our homeless people are made aware of the things that we're doing. We think that this is an essential part of the ministry that we're trying to, to conduct there. And just to speak to the neighborhood, we solicited the neighborhood anticipating that you may have some concerns for what the neighbors thought, and we have a petition wherein they indicate that they're, you know, they're not in opposition to the sign. I believe that the, all of the people in the, in the notification area were notified, and, you know, they recognize the work that we're doing there. I think that the investment that we've made there highlights the work that we're doing there, and I believe the sign is in keeping with that. The sign is large, but the facility is large, the work is large.
I just don't know how you can, you know, it seems to me you could continue your Christian ministry without a huge sign, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Steinman?
Pastor, I'm, excuse me, I'm aware that across this country, I think more churches are turning to reader boards, just like you're trying to do here. Yes, there's a matter of size here. Would, would you, if we, if we would approve this, be agreeable to not putting anything on there except things, items relating to the church directly? That's number one. And number two, turning it off at nine o'clock at night? I don't think this needs to run all night. I just don't believe, I mean, I'm not sure you're there all night anyway, but maybe you are, maybe you can tell me otherwise, but if we have an issue with light in the neighborhood, and as you heard before, we really don't have standards for this, a way to solve it within a neighborhood is turn it off at a certain time so that the community has seen it all day, and then into the night, and then let's deal away with it at that point relating to reader boards.
Yes, sir, I think we could.
I think that would probably work, for me especially.
Mr. Chairman, and I do appreciate comments by Commissioner Steinman, there are over two-hundred churches in West Las Vegas. This church sits less than three-hundred feet from one of the nicest parks in that community. Do we need a sign? There are several other churches in the same neighborhood. How many signs do we do? I think we're going down the wrong path here. Signs are not going to make your ministry, and you talk about you're reaching out, the sign to reach out to the homeless. I'm sure most of the residents that have their children go to that park are not wanting you to encourage more homeless to come into the park in their neighborhood. I mean, I think the ministry is important, but the community of the neighborhood is as great as importance as anything. There's, you've been there for many years and you've, you've successfully grown, is the sign going to make a big difference to your ministry today?
Well, the sign is a part of the ministry.
That means, that means all churches should become McDonald's restaurants. We should, we should put, bigger signs will make better ministry.
Well, I don't know that all.
And I just don't think in a residential neighborhood, I think the church fits well, it's grown well there, I just believe if we, putting a sign that has a reader board goes, we, we've discussed this on other church, big churches down off Bruce, and we, and we restricted signage, we've restricted signage on West Charleston and various churches, and they were, they were on major arterials. Here, you're talking about in a residential street, and there's no question, I, I'm going to make a motion to follow staff's recommendations.
Commissioner Trowbridge, I think, had a comment?
Well, it was a, more of a technical question, because the size of the sign is larger than what's permitted. My question is to staff, what drives the permit? Is it the, is it the square footage of the house of worship, or is it the size of the lot?
The, the size of the sign is driven by the zoning district, the maximum square footage of the signage is, this is driven by the zoning.
It's driven by zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
We have a motion for denial of item forty-four, please vote. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days to the city clerk's office.
For denial?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item forty-five, S U P two-three-two-nine-six, applicant B.J. Stores LLC, owners La Fiera LLC, for a financial institution specified with a waiver to allow a three-one-six-foot distance separation from another financial institution where one-thousand foot is required, a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from residential uses where two-hundred foot is required, and a waiver of the square footage requirement to allow a nine-hundred-and-forty square-foot financial institution specified where fifteen-hundred square foot is the minimum required at three-eight-five-one Pinewood Avenue, Suite V-one and V-two. Staff?
Staff cannot support a waiver of the separation requirements and recommends denial of this request.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, my name's John Berry, I live at forty-five-fifty-five West Sahara, I'm representative of La Fiera, La Fiera LLC, and what we've done, because this is not our first rodeo here, we came in about, I'd say about six months ago, and requested a parking variance, because the owners of this property made a great investment in this property to try and put together neighborhood, community-based mom-and-pop-type venues in one of the city's most densest areas. And what they're requesting is just an expansion of the check-cashing limited license that they already have for the store, okay? I spoke with the owners with regard to the reasons for denial, and one of the things that they wanted to, they wanted me to let the committee know, was that, you know, most of the traffic here, as we said before when we did the parking variance, is mostly people that walk, okay? They take public transportation, they get back and forth to work, or they carpool back and forth to work, okay? The type of check-cashing that we're, that we are requesting now is needed in that neighborhood. The other thing that they wanted to let you know before you voted is, the financial institution that they're talking about that's within the space, okay, is a seven-eleven that's at the corner of Pinewood and Valley View that sells, they said they sell Western Union money orders there, okay? Now, if it's, if it's something different, I don't know, because I live there and I've never seen any type of.
According to this, we have one, two, two pawn plus in the area, we have a super pawn in the area, we have ASAP loans in the area, and we have instant cash in the area.
Okay.
And seven-eleven's not one of those, so that would be another one.
Okay, then, then those, then those, those establishments are well beyond a thousand feet of this building.
Not according to the map that we were given. That outer circle is your thousand feet.
Okay, with all due respect, I can pull my computer up, because I just checked it, from the front of their store to the middle of that building where that seven-eleven is, is four-hundred-and-seventeen feet according to the assessors, Clark County.
Yeah, but unfortunately, the way they figure that is from property line to property line.
So what you do is you take and you put a radius from the middle of the building, and that's the thousand?
The building really doesn't relate to it, it's the property line of the property to the property line of the other one. It's, it's not door-to-door, it's property line to property line. You're almost on one end of the property, they're measuring clear from the other end. In essence, you wouldn't have any space away from seven-eleven because you butt up to it.
Right.
So that, it's just the way they measure it.
The property line going out this way is a thousand feet?
That's a thousand feet right there.
So. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then. I understand. I understand, but you know, if, if that is the case, how did all of us, these people get their licenses?
We didn't have a separation. They were all there before. The law's only been three years? Two, three?
Okay.
And the reason they enacted that was for the keep the proliferation in one neighborhood, even if it's just perception, so that you don't have too many in one neighborhood. And now what you're asking for is, uh, for this body and ultimately the city council to allow yet another one, so I guess that's your burden that you need to.
This would be my question, okay?
You're the representative, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, do any of the bill, if there's super pawn or do any of these people, okay, deal specifically with the Hispanic community that is entrenched in that area?
I, I wouldn't know, but that's not what we get to look at.
I do know, okay? And they don't.
Okay. Your argument, I think your, your suggestion is that it's a mom-and-pop operation and you're going to do mom and local payday loans, but the issue is distance.
What I said is they want to put mom-and-pop operations in there, okay? There are Spanish, specifically Spanish, just like the Orientals have this stuff over in Chinatown, these people have Spanish community-based, Spanish-owned-based businesses in that complex.
I guess I need to jump in here. We cannot make a determination as to race-based businesses. I mean, that, that would just be highly inappropriate for this body to consider something.
All we can look at is the businesses that are there. We can't tell you what.
Okay, well, the business that's there has been there for quite some time.
Okay, this, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. And he'll read the application. The distance isn't the only problem with this. And we pass these laws for a reason. And if there's one area in town that doesn't need any more of these places, this is the place.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And now, if you wish to make a comment or?
I want to know if this guy's got a life.
No, it's not important.
Well, I've been sitting here since 10 o'clock waiting and I've heard him come up here and say a bunch of banter about things that are really unnecessary and have taken up time.
That's his right. Um, do any of the commissioners have questions?
Right, it is a problem.
Commissioner Truist, Dan?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. We follow staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a recommend, uh, motion for denial on item 45. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to city council on October 17th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 46 SUP 23331, applicant Male For You Inc., owner Sahara Durango Limited Partnership, for a proposed auto title loan use within an existing financial institution specified with waivers to allow a distance separation of zero foot from a parcel zone for residential use where 200 feet is the minimum separation required, to allow a distance separation of 100 foot from an existing financial institution specified, and auto title loan use where 1,000 foot is the minimum required, and to allow a 565-square-foot food, foot establishment where 1,500 square foot is the minimum floor area required at 8635 West Sahara Avenue. Staff?
Staff has no basis to support a waiver of the separation requirements and recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
John Muscarella, 8635 West Sahara, owner of Male For You. Male For You has been there since 1986. I purchased it in 1998. Uh, I brought the payday loans in, um, 1999. At that time, there was no, um, license requirements. I, then in 2003, I applied for my license and received one. Ever since 2003, I've been doing payday loans. The reason why I'm asking for title loans to be added to this location is because I have another store in Henderson, and what's happening there is the casino is buying up the property and I'm losing the store. I have to be out by December. So I felt that if I was able to bring title loans to Male For You, which has been there, it's, it's a mom-and-pop store, and, uh, we have like 300 mailboxes, we do, it's, it's like a mail, it's like a mailbox, et cetera. And I also offer the payday loans. So for that reason, I am, uh, applying for the waivers to bring the payday loans. Now, there is a payday loan company across the street that offers title loans and payday loans. And it's true, it's about 100 feet away. They started in, um, 2004, I believe. Okay, so they were there after me and they are counting. So I was just wondering why they don't have the same 1,000-feet rule that city does, you know? Yeah, uh, Durango separates the city from county, so.
I can't begin to explain the county codes.
No, I understand. I was just wondering, I mean, you know, the businesses are businesses. We all have the same problems and we all have the same issues.
But they have their codes and we have our codes.
Sure, I understand.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Boy, don't you have a life?
No, I don't have one. This is my life. Thank you, Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. The thing is, though, that the distance isn't the only problem here. There's also a square footage in there that, that, that he doesn't meet either. Is he going to increase this, the square footage or, or how does this work?
Well, as far as the title loans to increase the square.
Wait a minute, anybody else wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Now it's your turn.
Okay. As far as the title loans, all you need is the file cabinet and a checkbook, you know, and, uh, basically, I als, I, I, um, do payday loans and I have 300 mailboxes there and customers come in and out all the time. There's no problem as far as the square footage, as far as taking care of the customers, you know, coming in and out of the store. The parking is no issue. There's plenty of room in the area. Um, uh, the other issue was that the actual parcel is right next to the condominiums, um, to the, uh, south, I believe. And, um, the actual footage from building to building is over 180 square feet, which I understand that the variance because of the parcel, it's, it butts right up to the, um, residential area. Um, I never had any complaints from people in the area or any customers while I was there with the payday loans, um, ever since 1999, so I just feel that, um, that a waiver is not out of the question. And you can see the store is a nice-looking store and it doesn't take away from the neighborhood. And, um, like I said, I'm a mom-and-pop store and I have a lot of people that come in there continuously and repeatedly.
Okay. Um, my question to maybe Mr. Rankin is, um, we also have the 1,000-foot requirement or 1,500-foot space requirement on a payday loan, don't we?
Uh, correct. Uh, as the applicant indicated, that, uh, they received their payday loan license prior to the requirement for a special use permit.
Thank you. That's what I was wondering. Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask you, uh, in 562 square feet, how do you transact business in a private manner with somebody asking for a loan? With all those mailboxes and everything else going on in there, how can you do that? There's, that's one reason you need a bigger store.
No, that's a good question. Um, basically, we have a counter, an L-shaped counter, and we do use one side of the counter and we, you know, we try not to.
Talk too loud?
Yeah.
I see. Okay. That is an issue, though, I think, when you're dealing with some high-power money.
Um, it could be a ti- Yes, it could be at times when it is crowded in there, but nine out of 10 of the times, um, you know, the customers there are loaning we can conduct confidentially.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, I was trying to find the conditions really quickly, and I'm assuming that we have the condition in here that if he's making auto loans, he can't store any repossessed cars, and that would be under, uh, in concurrence with Title 19 for an auto title loan use.
That is correct. That's one of the conditions of the, yes, special use permit is that you cannot store vehicles at the site.
So if he did, for some reason, make a bad loan and get the car back, he couldn't park it there?
Uh, that is correct.
Any other? Commissioner Evans?
It looked like the gentleman was going to say something.
In reference to what you were saying, Chairman, um, I would not store any cars on-site. I have a repo company that takes it to a specific lot that I'm using with my business in Henderson.
Yeah, I, I mean, I kind of share Commissioner Steinman's concern as to.
Confidentiality.
Confidentiality, but I would have the same concern with your payday loan. So you're doing that now, um, I don't know that it's, to me, a pro, to consider, if you're doing payday loans and you're handling them privately, then you should be able to do car loans. Payday loans is more what I would like to control than the car loans.
Well, the, I just have issues with, uh, I mean, do we have to have every single strip mall, every single center in this community have payday loans, auto title loans, advance loans? I mean, when, when they do, when you do a, uh, an auto loan, they must bring the car in. You've got to look at the car, right? They bring in the registration of the car?
Yes.
So you've got a car out there. You're going out and you're doing the, the run-through of the car. You've got to determine it's worth for the purposes of your loan. So somebody's got to go out there and do that. You got, by your own, by your own admission, what do you say, 200 or 300 mailboxes?
Mm-hmm.
People come and get their mail every day, right?
Well.
And then you're doing payday loans at the counter and you want to do auto title loans and you want to go out and check the autos and check them in and then when they can't pay the loan, you've got a repo company that you say goes and gets it and take it to a lot? The whole purpose, I think, of this ordinance was part of it is perception. At what point do we as a community not have to have car title loans and payday loans in every center? It doesn't meet the code. And you got to prove that otherwise. And I, in my mind, you haven't made that, you haven't made that case. And, and so I don't know why we need to bend around the rules in order to make your business happen when it really, in my mind, shouldn't happen to begin with, in that center, in that location. It doesn't meet the code. And there's nothing to prevent you from going somewhere else and opening up a business because it is allowable. But I, I'm, I'm so irritated that we as a community bend over to make everybody's business work at the detriment of the community. Thank you.
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. As far as the mailboxes, it's 24-hour access. And, um, as far as the business I will be doing on title loans, it's not going to be that big of a business. It's just an added convenience for my customers. The interest on title loans is a lot cheaper than payday loans. So I looked at it that way for my customers. I don't like, and you're right, there are too many of these places around. It's not my fault. You guys okay them. You know? And I, I agree. I mean, I was there first, then there was one across the street, there was one over on the north side, there's one over here on the, uh, south side. I mean, you know, they just popped up. I agree, they shouldn't be in, in every strip mall. You're 100% right. But I feel by bringing in title loans, I'd be benefiting my customers because I can offer them a cheaper interest rate and phase out the payday loans. If it was up to me, I would have all title loans. It's better for me because I have the collateral.
Okay. Commissioner Steinman?
I make a motion on gen. item number 46, SUP 23331, move for denial.
We have a motion for denial on item 46. Please vote. Motion for denial carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 47, SUP 23422, applicant Streets of New York, owner Village of Centennial Springs Partners LLC, for a proposed beer/wine cooler on sale, estab, on-sale establishment in conjunction with a proposed restaurant and a waiver to allow a distance separation of 373 feet from a childcare facility where 400 feet is required at 7570 Norman Rockwell Lane. Staff?
Staff has no basis to support a waiver of the separation requirement and recommends denial.
Thank you.
Yes, it does. Uh, Mr. Chairman, first of all, the overhead, that is not our particular property.
Picky, picky, pi. You should go with that, it has no separation problem.
Why don't we go? Why don't we, if we go, if we go to the overhead, we'll show, all right, there we go. Or the overhead's fine, too. Um, actually, um, Ms. Lazovich, I, uh, conducted some neighborhood meetings, has some very technical arguments to show you. I actually just want to show you this and ask you to complete the sentence, pizza and, and that's what the application is about, pizza and soda pop.
Soda pop.
This is our application to allow beer and wine in conjunction with the restaurant. As you can see, it's a legitimate restaurant, legitimate menu items. There is, in fact, the distance issue and, um, Ms. Lazovich can go into exactly what that, uh, distance, um, situation is and the neighborhood meeting that we conducted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich. We are approximately 28 feet short of the distance requirement to the daycare center. However, between our use and the daycare center is Tulie Springs, which is an 80-foot right-of-way, and there will be other intervening buildings between our use and, um, even Tulie Springs, although it just hasn't been developed out yet. So, um, at the neighborhood meeting, we actually got positive comments from everyone who attended, which is, please, we would like to have, um, this type of a restaurant, and we understand that beer and wine go with pizza, and we would like to see this used there. Beer, wine, and soda pop.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. You're not public. We'll close the public hearing and ask the Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, if there's no discussion, this is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned.
I don't know, I think there's too many pizza places. They're on every corner.
Well, um, there's no such thing as too many pizza places.
I'll second that motion.
Um, I don't think that there's any public deterrent here and, uh, it's simply for the addition of, I believe, beer and wine.
Yes.
It doesn't include hard liquor or?
Uh, it, it's beer/wine cooler. No, I don't believe that includes hard liquor.
Okay. Um, and, uh, I don't see where it would be of any harm in my motion would be, um, to approve the SUP, gen. item number 47, uh, 23422.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval of item 47. Please vote. Motion carries.
Goes forward to council October 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Lutheran lemonade, right?
Absolutely.
Number 48, SUP 23485, applicant Tori Romero, owner Brio's Pizzeria LLC, for a proposed anti-smog check with waivers to allow a 120-square-foot building where 400 square foot is required, and to allow a no-stacking lane where a stacking lane for three cars is required at 4211 West Sahara Avenue, Unit G. Staff?
Staff has no basis to support a waiver of the parking lane requirements and recommends denial of this request.
You're stuck on a record there. Applicant?
Well, there is kind of a limited parking in the area.
Your name and address for the record?
I'm Tori Romero, 7909 Quill Gordon.
Thank you.
There is limited parking, but every time I visit the area, there's, where I plan on having not a stacking lane where the cars can't be parked.
Is this, is that what used to be a key place?
It used to be Liberty Lock and.
The Liberty Lock, had the statue there, okay.
Yeah.
Do you know who the owners of that center are?
Yes, right here.
No, I don't.
Um, his name is, uh.
Okay, cool. Because I know somebody who used to own it years ago and apparently he still doesn't, so.
He doesn't own that property.
So I'm safe, I don't have a conflict.
But usually when I go, there's seven parking spots. I'll show you right here. There's seven spots, when I show up, you know, there's maybe two or three taken. Majority of these are, you know, used at, you know, most of the times, but where I plan to do the testing is right next to the building, there's a door right here where the machine can be rolled out, and the test could be formed in here. Then if there is cars waiting, there's usually one or two or three spots that can be used for parking where the cars need to wait.
Okay. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Now, are you with the public, or are you, you're with him?
No, we're not together. In fact, we've never met before. My name is Dr. Frank Schneider. I am one of the original owners of the plaza. I did not develop it, it was developed by a gentleman out of state in 1981, Mr. Ned Gilbert, and they were sold as, my address now is 7545 West Sahara. They were sold originally as condominium units, there were six units, 1,200 square feet apiece. And I owned several of them in the early days and still continue to own one of them. I'm here tonight representing six of the seven owners, actually, now. And the six of us are actually dead-set against this idea, but let me just tell you why. We've never met before, this has nothing to do with your business plan or anything like that, but probably no one knows this plaza better than I do. I had my practice there for 16 years. Now, for the 72, I'm an eye doctor, for the 7,200 square feet that are there, we have 20 parking spaces, which is incredibly low ratio of less than three spaces per thousand feet. And there are, there is a lot of traffic that's in and out of that plaza today as well. And over the years, when you mentioned that there was Liberty Lock and Key there, there were several businesses that were there through the years. Originally, the kiosk that was there was not designed to be a retail space, but was actually a storage facility for maintenance, for paint, for ladders, for cleaning facilities, for cleaning products related to the plaza. But through a number of different incantations over there, incarnations, it ended up as a, as a retail space, all of whom actually failed. And one of the reasons they failed was because of the parking. And for the years that we were there, the, the only thing that ever went a little bit there was when you had a quick drive up and drive in and drive out. But then, even then, the problem was, there was never a month that went by that cars weren't banging into each other, because people would be pulling out of the plaza and they'd be backing up next to the, next to the statue. Now, where the gentleman is talking about, there are places in front over there, but they're actually not dedicated to the little kiosk. They actually are dedicated to the rest of the plaza, so that at most, there would be two spots available for you, at most, one of which would probably be an employee.
And the parking up back also.
Okay. So we, we get, so you...
So parking is a major issue.
Six of them, and his is the seventh?
Yes.
Okay, so your six are against it?
And of the 7,200 square feet, that doesn't even count this.
Right. No, we, we got it.
Right.
Does the gentleman behind you wish to speak?
Actually, he is one of the tenants in the plaza, and he came down to give his opinion as well.
Okay.
Is his opinion the same as yours?
Pardon me?
Is his opinion the same as yours?
I'm sure it is.
Okay.
Okay.
He doesn't wanna be redundant, and, but he just wanted to show you there's more support, and the other tenants just 11...
Yeah, that's, we're not trying to force you out, you're welcome to speak, but we've got it. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do you wish to respond to, if you wanna have a seat?
How many spots do you say are in the plaza?
There are 20 spots in the plaza.
There's like 33.
Okay, if you wanna have a seat? Yeah, we closed the publics.
There's more out in the back of the complex there. There's eight, eight and four, there'll be 12 spots out back. I counted 33 total in my site plan, there could actually be an extra, I'm not sure, but there's at least 33 spots. May I comment on that?
No, we, we've closed the public, so, and we have, the 33 is listed in our report.
Right, and also, like I said, out front, every time I've been, there's at least three spots open. I even have pictures of the Saturday when I was out there, if you wanna see, and there's two cars parked there.
Thank you. Any commissioners? Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, this, this center, like several of the ones right through here, have been parking impaired over the years. I mean, cause they, while they have cross-access, they don't have cross-parking. And I have been there, actually, when Dr. Snyder was in the center, and when there was a couple of the users in the center, and it's, it's always been a, a problem. I'm not sure if the smog use really, people getting smog, they're not gonna park in the back. I don't, I don't think, in every smog station I've seen, the employee that runs it, it usually parks right next to it. I mean, if you go into Summerlin, where they have smogs, they, they're, so, at the end of the day, we're, we're looking at a kiosk that'll have a ma- have a bigger impact on the, the potential of the center, based on the requirements of special use permit, I can't support this item.
That's a possibility, it's just the smog test usually takes about, you know, six to 10 minutes approximately per test. So it's gonna be revolving cars in and out, you know?
Did you have a comment?
I don't think it's gonna be that congested, in my opinion.
Okay, Commissioner Evans?
No, I really didn't have a comment, but once again, I'm, I, I feel like we're putting a, what's the saying, a round peg in a square hole or something? I, I would agree, I think it's a parking issue, and staff's recommending denial, and I don't think you've met your burden to prove that, that it'd be good for the community and it would be an appropriate location. So I would support the staff, and if there's no discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion to follow their recommendation for denial.
Okay, I just wanted to make one comment, that you're saying it only takes six or seven minutes for a smog, and I know this whole center, all the way from Weiner Schnitzel up, has got a par- parking problem.
Right.
But to make a key would take a lot less time, and those businesses haven't been able to flourish either, they've got a problem. I think, you know, I go to, and have my smog checks done in a place just like this, but I think this is a place where you, you really need to find something that's gonna give you a little bit better in and out.
Right.
So, we have a motion for denial.
I'm, I'm not sure I made the motion yet, but I would, I would, for the recommendation of staff denial of agenda item number 48, SUP 23485.
We have a recommendation, or a motion for denial of 48, please vote. Post, motion carries.
And that denial of the SUP is final action in the absence of appeal.
Thank you. Item 49, SUP 23515, applicant owner Bragg Gallon, for a proposed group residential care facility with a waiver to allow an approximately, to allow an approximately 1,060-foot distance separation from another group residential care facility where 1,500 feet is the minimum separation distance required at 3508 Chad Circle. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the additional group home within the 1,500-foot distance radius would increase the land use intensity within the neighborhood, and therefore recommends denial of the subject property.
Thank you. Have you read the if-approved conditions?
Yes, sir.
And you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Do you wish to make any comments?
My name is Gwen Ostrades, presenting the applicant. We're hoping for the approval of the waiver, knowing that although there is another facility within the lesser than the proposed distance, we know that this won't be detrimental or harmful to the community itself, so we request for the approval of the waiver.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street, this is my warrant. And I was, before the, the planning commission and the council, in, when they put these, these conditions, these distance separation conditions in effect, and we put them in effect because there was a need for them. They just, and, and to turn our back and, and to allow these waivers is, is just not right. We put it, we, we made the conditions for a reason, and we ought to hold to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Bush, I live at 3504 Madama Street. And this is about distance, is that the only thing you can talk about?
What do you mean?
The house that they wanna put this group home in.
Right.
When it was built, was probably...
No, no, you can talk anything.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
When it was built, it was probably 1,200 square feet, including the garage. They wanna put nine senior citizens into that space. Says over there, senior citizens, but either way, my immediate neighbor lives in the same model house, and the thing is, at best, tiny. You have a small living room, small kitchen, I assume the garage has been converted to living space, and the garage, or there's an addition to the house. And I think this from quality of living, that it's not a good idea to approve it because the place is too small for nine people, plus some sort of staff.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Chris Bush, I live at 3504 Madama, right around the corner from Chad House, and I'm concerned about the parking. We've got nine extra people, are they gonna have cars? We already have a house that has group living illegally, and the streets are full of cars every night.
Illegally?
Well, there's a lot of people and a lot of cars, and they never went through a hearing.
Would you give us the address?
Yes. 3512 Madama.
M-A-D-O-N-A?
M-A-D-A-M-A.
M-A-D, okay. Thank you.
Maybe, while we're doing that, Mr. Chairman, could I ask the applicant, and there's some discussion about what kind of a group facility this would be? Is it for teenage girls?
No, it would be for elderly, elderly people.
So there's not a referral from other agencies or court agencies, or...
Not court, mostly referrals from case managers or social workers from other hospitals or other facilities that would need somebody at 24-hour care. And as what the gentleman said earlier, that about the, the size of the group home, proposed group home, we are working well, of course, with the health district, for them to give us the business license, they have to inspect everything, whether we would be in compliance with what is required.
So the elderly people that are referred from the various rehab hospitals and whatnot, are, are you indicating that they're ambulatory, or they need help with meds, or...
Yes, uh-huh.
Are there people that are suffering from Alzheimer's, or dementia?
Yes, some of them, like, like early stages of dementia maybe, or just somebody who would just need help in bathing, or just have no family members to take care of them, you know, those kind of things.
And then, do you just accept whatever the social security is, or is this...
Sometimes we would, and if they have fixed income, depending on the agreement with the family, if there is one, or the guardian, and then sometimes there would be public payment from those referred from the community.
Can you, can you tell me what the average cost per, per, per patient would be?
Probably like about 950 to 1,000.
Social Security pays more than that, though, doesn't it?
Yes, but then some of them, if they don't have social security yet, we have to apply for them.
Right.
Like when they reach the age.
I thought the average was closer to about 1,500.
No, I think it just went up to 1,200, in fact. Before, it was only like a 800-something.
So this is a for-profit venture?
Yeah, mostly for profit, and also because we saw the need.
Right. So if it were, say, 1,200, and you had 10 people, it would be, you'd be making about, your gross would be about 10,000 per month, or 12,000 per month?
Which is, you know, I mean, considering the payment at the staff expense and everything, yeah, but would you think of it like that? Yes.
And then, would there be an on-site staff person living there?
Yes, it has to be, to be, it has to be, to be...
Would they be living there?
Yes, uh-huh.
Is that a couple generally, or...
A couple, and then a registered person, medical person.
So you've got three, and then you've got 10 elderly people, so that's...
And then that is excluding the, like, the, just the help.
Right.
Doesn't need to have a certificate or, to be registered, just, just the help.
Thank you very much.
By registered, you're not saying an RN?
Yes, not, an RN will have to be, to be visiting. She doesn't have to be a resident of that, she doesn't have to live there.
I, I have one more question before we move forward. I, I believe there were some new laws enacted, but I'm curious about our zoning codes that require fire safety suppression, does the, is the house have to be sprinkled?
Yes.
So it does provide a sprinkler?
Yes, uh-huh. We just finished the sprinkler and inspected by the fire department, a fire marshal.
And, and what would, just out of curiosity, since it's a, a special use permit, what would happen if it gets denied? Isn't that a, a pretty substantial expense to put in?
Yes, uh-huh. In fact, we just, we were just aware of the distance requirement recently, so, and, and somebody suggested to us about the, when that incident happened before, that other elderly group home that caused a fire.
Caught on fire, people die, yeah.
And then they suggested us that we put the sprinkler. And so immediately, we wanted, when, when we got the property, then we wanted that to be first done because there was a, an incident going on, so even before we knew about the distance.
Okay, thank you.
Requirement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Steinman?
Who, who in the state licenses you and controls everything? Is there regulations from the state, or you just have a, have a business license from the city?
We have to have a, a business license and a health permit.
From?
From the county.
From the county?
Uh-huh.
But we don't have state regulations for these group homes, do we?
Depends, I think, sir, I'm not so sure.
Not like California.
I'm not so sure, sir, about, you know, where to file.
Tell me what you're gonna do with the exterior of this house. It is a mess. It's ugly.
Uh-huh, yes.
It can't stay like that.
It's still an ongoing...
You've got a lot to on-go with that one.
Yes, yes, we do, we do.
I think somehow, we're gonna have to, if we would approve this, there's gotta be a requirement to remodel that house exteriorly, too. I mean, it's a mess. Just fall apart.
It, um, we, when we initially got it, I mean, we planned to do a lot of work on it, and then, you know, we just, hopefully that we could get the license and then work, while do, while trying to get the license and approval.
Is this about 1,600 square feet, or a little less than that?
It is 1,600, and then...
1,600?
Uh-huh.
And you, and you really can put nine patients and a caregiver in there?
No, no, it's just a license, requested for a license for nine, but it won't, not all the time will it be for nine. It won't, it won't fill up nine, we won't have nine patients.
But you could.
Request, yeah.
You could. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Truesdale?
Yeah. I, I appreciate what the applicant wants to do, I mean, I think we have to find ways to take care of seniors and, and this situation, but this is a house that was designed and built for a family of four, originally. And it has plumbing, bathroom facilities that are designed to accommodate that, and you're talking about putting three times that number potentially in there, plus if there are visitors in a neighborhood. That's why the distance separations are so great. That, to me, I just can't understand, cause I, I think if we're trying to find a solution here, this is, to me, not the solution. The house has not been maintained well. I, I don't think sprinklers are gonna make it, make it the environment it's supposed to be, and in that regard, I can't support the application.
I, I have to agree with Commissioner Trubridge, or Truesdale, in that we put these separations and not put any undue pressure or undue, overburden on one neighborhood, and in this case, we already have one, and I can't support putting another one in that same neighborhood, which to me, looks like it's two blocks away, maybe three. But two to three blocks away, I just think that's, that's unfair to ask that neighborhood to take on the burden of a second group home in the area. So I wouldn't be supporting it. Did I hear Commissioner Evans stating a motion?
I'm, yes, and again, I concur that there's a need, but this is, doesn't meet the parameters, so my motion would be follow the recommendation of the staff for denial on agenda item number 49, SUP 23515.
We have a recommend, a motion for denial of 49, please vote. Post, motion carries.
And the denial of the SUP is final action in the absence of an appeal.
The denial of the SUP is final action and the absentee appeal within ten days.
Thank you.
Item number fifty, SUP two-three-five-five-nine, applicant owner George R. and Lori M. Cole, for a proposed horse corral or stable at five-seven-oh-one Mellow Avenue. Staff?
This, the, the requested special use meets all the conditions for a commercial stable, and therefore staff is recommending approval.
Thank you.
Lori Cole, five-seven-oh-one Mellow Avenue.
Have you read all the conditions, if approved, conditions?
Yes, I have.
And you agree?
I agree.
And do you wish to make any other comments?
No.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
My name is Dennis Banto, and I live just east of her property. And, uh, that entire area is pretty much all one-acre homesites. And, uh, anywhere within a hundred yards of my property or her property, most of the people have horses, although most people have only two. Um, so I do know what it's like to deal with the, the noise and the dust and the flies. And I'm concerned about having eight horses next door. They've built some nice corrals out there. The corrals actually are large enough for two horses, which would allow sixteen. And from what I've seen of the, uh, the zoning, the number of horses is driven only by the number of parking spaces available for commercial customers. The zoning says one parking space for every five horses. And, uh, it would be very easy to park eight, even ten, cars around that property. And, uh, I'm not willing to deal with that many horses. So if you do approve this, I would, I would ask that, uh, you limit it to a maximum of eight horses.
It has a condition, as it stands right now, the maximum of eight horses are allowed to be boarded on the premises.
Okay. Um, my major concern is the horse waste. It doesn't show on the, the plot plan there, but they have, um, proposed putting in a, an arena between the property line and the swimming pool. And, uh... Is it possible to go back to that plot plan?
Can you put it, there you go.
There you go. Okay, between the bottom, the property line and the swimming pool, I believe, is where you want your...
We had discussed doing a turnout area for the horses. So at least, you know, there's a place where they can at least exercise, run, the owners can come in and exercise them if they feel like it. That is not something that we have addressed at this time. It's something in the future. But, I mean, the horses have to exercise, there has to be someplace for them to be turned out.
Right now, we're simply looking at allowing them to have the, the corrals with eight horses is what is before us.
Okay. My big concern is, my water well is ten feet across the property line at the bottom, uh, straight below the end of the swimming pool, about the center of the property there. Now, when I applied for my well permit, I had to plot the neighbors' wells and their leach field areas, and the distance to any animal pens, and I had to stay one hundred feet from all of those. If, if their horses are in that area, that's ten feet from my water well, and polluting the water well out there is going to, it will pollute the whole entire area out there because we are all on water wells out there.
Okay.
That's my concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
My name is Celine Green. I live at fifty-seven hundred Mellow Avenue, right across the street. I am a horse owner. I have two and a half acres, and I have three horses. My concern is, we are one block long. This is RE development. There is one house on the block that is half an acre. Everything else is one acre or two, oh, two and a half acres. We do not want to see commercial come in. If commercial comes in and a special use permit from one person, we have other people on the block that are just dying to start little businesses commercially. And we feel as though if you allow one commercial business on this block, which is one block long, you're going to open a can of worms. And we, who have, there are probably six of us that have lived on this block for over thirty years. We have our investment there. We're not going anywhere else. We're going to have to die there because we're retired. This is all we've got, and to have a commercial property come into a block that is a very well-established block is something that we fought. I believe you got a letter, and I would love to know the cards that got sent out, how many approved it and how many disapproved it. Thank you.
I'm looking at one protest and one, one against and one for. Okay. Is anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
No one, seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioner Dunham?
I just had a question about, Commissioner Dunham, maybe you know, the, is there a limit on the number of horses or livestock and staff? Anyone? Is it eight or ten, or did we indicate that there...
The, if I may, the proposed condition of approval is for a maximum of eight on this location.
And wouldn't that somewhat restrict what can happen there? Eight horses, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yeah, I, I got a, um, a letter signed by, uh, Ms. Green, and by the Bantos, and seven other lots. There were a lot more signatures, but there were seven total lots in that area that were opposed to this. And I'm kind of of the opinion that if you don't make your neighbors happy, um, I'm not going to support it. And it looks like of the nine lots, I mean, there were nine lots, right, right on Mellow, everybody lives on Mellow, that, um, that are not happy with your endeavor. And so I'm, I'm, it's going to be hard for me to support this, but if it does get approved tonight, I would like to see a one-year review on a special use permit. And the, it's not, we're not changing the zoning to commercial. It's, it's a use of... Like I said, I'm not going to support it, but if it does, I want to see a review in one year. But it's not changing the zoning to commercial. It's a use permit that allows a commercial enterprise of this sort. So that's, that's all I've got to say.
I, I would like to state something else also.
Okay.
I mean, I understand the concern, I understand her concern, you know, about the commercial tagged on to the end of it. It was explained to me that that is strictly commercial for horse boarding. Doesn't mean they can come in and start a mechanic shop or anything like that, so I don't know if that can be explained any further. Secondly, I find it interesting that she does riding lessons right across the street from me. The people behind me on ANO run a boarding facility without a license. There's people in, I mean, I, I don't see where I'm causing any more, you know, disturbance in the area than what's already there. There will never, and I, we have property on the other side of town that we boarded horses, there's never, or was never, more than maybe two at any given time, as far as traffic goes, coming in, you know, to see their horses. You know, she's got traffic across the street for her people that come in to, you know, to, to do riding lessons, so I don't understand why they're...
We've closed the public hearing, so we, thank you.
And then to address the well situation, our well, which is right around the back end of the pool, is more than fifty feet from our corrals. I'm positive his is even further. So I don't think that, that's an issue either. We made sure of that.
Okay. Commissioner Trubridge?
Yes. But he said a hundred feet was what he had to submit, a rendering showing whether those are...
I was told by the city it was, it had to be fifty.
Fifty feet from where pens are.
Yeah.
You had said you were going to consider using some of that other, what's white space on your rendering there for a run for the horses, or a...
Yeah, to turn them out to exercise. That, I mean, we have, we've discussed doing that, or just putting in a round pen. We haven't really discussed any further until, you know, we got the permit is what we could do. I mean, I've got pictures of the property, I can show you...
What if the health department said you can't have any of the horses because of the natural consequences within fifty feet of your well or of his well? What would that do to your, your project?
Nothing, because I'm well over fifty feet.
Even when you put, just let them out to, to exercise?
I think it's where they're, where they're housed, I think is what the issue is. I don't think there's an issue, I wasn't aware of an issue for a turnout.
Nor, nor am I. I'm just, I'm just asking, and I can...
I don't know, and I know that, you know, yeah, I don't know.
It's, you know, um...
But my question is, if it's going to, you know, if, if that's an issue, then the house across the street, I know their well is really close to their, to their pens. So if it becomes an issue for me, then it should be an issue for them, but I know that I'm, I'm more than fifty feet away. I know that we're more than fifty feet away from him, and I know the people that are behind us, you know, we're well within our perimeters.
I, I just am very cautious about taking...
Yeah, I, I'm not for sure about the turnout. I mean, I, 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 I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm coming here at the request to do this legally and not to bring the horses in and do that, you know, without a license, you know, so I'm trying to do it in our thing above board, so whatever I have to do to, you know, comply with what, what needs to be done.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you trying to do it right, but at the same time, I would feel very apprehensive about approving something that unless we get an answer from somebody that knows, maybe the DA, about the consequences of negative impact on your neighbor's water. If you want to poison your own well, that's, I guess that's up to you.
I, I don't see why the law...
But your neighbors, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm not a water guy, but somebody needs to say, well, why is it fifty feet from the pens? And then does it make a difference from where the, the pens are, the stalls, versus the, uh, the, the open area where they're just going to have access to the, the range? Now, I don't know if it makes any difference or not.
Isn't that something that, um, that they would determine that wouldn't have an impact on our special use permit? I'm curious. Anybody?
Well, it's actually, as I understand it, it's actually a health department requirement.
Right.
So, and I, I've never run across it. I mean, it's always been a septic tank to...
Yeah.
To well-distance requirement. I don't remember seeing pens.
I've only heard...
I could do the research and find out.
Right. But if they said, if the health department said this is a public hazard, you know, the special use permit, I mean, I...
Well, they would close it down.
We're not, we're not, it's not a factor, I don't think...
I guess if you wanted to do this, you could make your approval, if that's what you're planning on doing, subject to any kind of health regulations that may be applicable, and we can look those up.
Well, and I'd be happy to, but I, I would agree that the applicant, I, I have to commend her for coming forward, getting all the approvals, because we, I think many people know that there's, uh, a, a good deal of commerce going on out there in the area that was once, you know, a rural part of our community. So, um, I, my thought is that if you want to add the additional condition about, you know, some kind of a, if there's a health department standard or sanitation issue, that, you know, they look at it, but my thought is, the staff has looked at this and says that they don't find eight horses to be excessive. And I absolutely would concur with Commissioner Dunham that if we give a review period of a year to determine if there is any kind of a problem, and then it can come either forward back to this board, or if not, an administrative review, either one, and we could expunge it if, if there's a problem. But I don't know where else in this community you're going to board horses if we don't allow it there. It's not going to happen down at that food, ice cream facility, that's for sure. So...
Darn.
My motion would be for approval of the SUP, perhaps with an added condition and with a period of review. And Ms. Wheeler, maybe you can...
If I may, Chairman and Commissioner, that, um, if approved, there shall be a one-year review after issuance of business license at a public hearing of the Planning Commission, and also that all health department permits shall be obtained and maintained.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I did have one, a couple comments. It, it appears to me, in the light of the fact that we've got petitions from almost everybody up and down the street, that there's a bigger issue here, and these are all horse people. They aren't people that are saying, hey, don't put horses next to me.
Not all.
Well, I, I think that, that's a concern. I guess I'm kind of harking back to the applications before us where we, we're very matter-of-fact about dealing with seniors. We don't want to overburden a property, but here, we're trying to find all the ways to help the horses. I mean, I'm not going to support, uh, the, you know, putting eight horses on here. There's no run-out area for them, it may be in the future. We're just sticking horses in a corral, and I'm not sure we're, we're doing anything that's good for the community and, and we're creating a commercial venture. I, I, I won't support this.
Well, I, I'm not for sure if you guys have actually seen the size of the corrals, but they're twenty by thirty corrals.
Yeah.
They're, they're like three times as big as most corrals and horses are put in. They're not a little small pen.
Yeah.
So the corrals themselves, the horses...
Okay, but I, I still want to make a comment, um, because I agree pretty much with Commissioner Truesdale in that I remember the infamous six goats, and we only let her put six goats, which are a lot smaller, and we have our expert out there on goats, um, a lot smaller and a lot less, and I'm confused why we allow only six goats but eight horses.
For how much property?
Same amount.
Uh, Chair, Mr. Chairman, I can't answer that. Our code doesn't actually permit goats except in the RA district as a use. Goats are not a permitted use. Horses and bovines are the only items you're allowed to have outside of the RA district.
Okay. Then we have, Commissioner Evans' motion was for approval? Was, was it approval?
It was for approval with the additional condition that you had read into the record, I thought.
Yes, that's what I thought. For approval of item number fifty with the additional conditions, um, please vote. Again, it was approval, voting for approval, item fifty. Post, and that motion does not carry. Do we have a motion in the negative?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, to deny this item.
We have a motion for denial of item number fifty. Please vote and post. And motion carries.
And that, that denial of the SUP is final action unless appealed within ten days.
All right, thank you.
Item fifty, SDR two-three-six-oh-six, applicant owner WMCV-two Associates LLC, for a proposed two million four hundred and ninety-five thousand ninety-one square foot commercial center with a waiver of the downtown centennial plan, build-to-line standard, what? To allow fifty-three. I'm on fifty-three. Keep up with me here. Now I lost my place. Standard to allow a two-hundred-and-six-foot front setback and the expansion of an approved parking garage adjacent to the southwest corner of Grand Central Parkway and Discovery Drive, and a two-thousand-three-hundred-and-six-foot space temporary parking lot adjacent to the northwest corner of Grand Central Parkway and Discovery Drive. Staff?
This request is compatible with existing and proposed development in this area of the city. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
For the record, Robert Holgate, uh, representing World Market Center Associates, four-ninety-five South Grand Central Parkway. Before I concur to all the conditions, there's one clarification. Item number twenty-four of Public Works refers to work on Discovery to the distance of MLK. My previous conversations with city engineer was to the, the line of limits of our Phase One off-site improvements, which we currently have cash in lieu of bond to be deferred until, uh, construction of Phases Four and Five are completed. The fact is, is that because of the heavy equipment and damaging that road, it would make sense to defer that off. I believe he's in agreement. I, I don't recall any conversation regarding all the way to MLK, which is outside of our limit line. I think maybe we should just clarify that before it goes to city council.
That was item twenty-three? Twenty-four?
Yes, with Public Works.
Uh, Mr. Anderson?
I'll clarify this with the city engineer, so that we do have an answer by the time it goes to city council. I did, uh, send this condition through the city engineer, and he didn't change it, but I'll draw his attention to it, just to make sure.
Okay. This is a public, oh, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farland, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I just want to thank World Market Center for coming to Las Vegas and telling what a... I just wanna thank World Market Center for coming to Las Vegas and tell them what a great, great job they're doing.
Even though they don't have ice cream?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the end of the, oh, you weren't here when...
Well, I don't wanna make this filibuster. It's only, I, thank you for your dedication and time and, uh, staff's efforts and commissioners and, uh, Chairman. Uh, we did ask for a waiver, but it was for just for interim landscaping we, we had to put in. We didn't wanna put in anything that was unnecessary, would have to be ripped out because of construction in future, but we contend to meet all the trail guidelines and, uh, standards that's set forth by Planning Commission.
Thank you. And, uh, seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and ask...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like, if there's no comments, I'll make a motion.
I just wanna make a comment. Uh, every time you come here, we always say we really wanna take a tour.
Yeah.
Is, and we really do. I mean, it's reached the point now that we need to take a tour. So can we just call and arrange with you? Is that all right?
Absolutely. I'll need to call myself or Jerry Sawyer, our chief operating officer. I'm glad your doors are open.
Do you have, do you have a card or... Or here's my card.
There you go.
We have a, um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval on item fifty-three, subject to all staff's conditions with the, uh, clarification with regard to the city engineer, uh, handling that, uh, road development between now and City Council.
Okay. We have a motion for approval of item fifty-three. Please vote. Post, motion carries.
That goes to council on October seventeenth.
Are you tearing up the street or is somebody else tearing it up?
We incurred some damage through the Grand Prix.
Oh.
Apparatuses were set and some borings of the street, plus our construction was a... We, uh, we agree we should just go ahead and, and do it right. But, uh, the timing of, of construction, we wanna work with the city.
I just noticed it was closed this morning, so...
Plus the BRT activity and everything else, but we'll coordinate that with the city engineer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And moving on to item number fifty-five, TXT two-three-eight-four-eight, text amendment, public hearing. Applicant, City of Las Vegas. Discussion and possible action to amend Title nineteen point one-eight point oh-six-oh to allow the Planning Commission action to be final action for special use permits. Staff?
Chairman, this item comes before you at the request of the City Council, and it could not be more timely, as I made an error this evening. The, currently, SUPs are final action if they're denied, but they're advisory if they're approved, which, as I can testify to this evening, is confusing. As is the case in other agencies, and we show you the chart there. This text amendment would make, uh, Planning Commission final action on approvals and denials. They would be able to be appealed not only by the citizens and those agreed, but also by the City Council. So this allows the City Council the option of having an item be final at the Planning Commission or bring it forward to themselves. On page two of your staff report, um, the last section, uh, J two, should read "final action by City Council", and then, um, the City Council shall make the final decision to current, concerning the application if appealed. That concludes staff report. If there's any questions, I'll certainly attempt to address them.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does, if anyone wishes to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the Commissioners, Commissioner Truesdale.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman? If, if there are no other comments, um, I'm prepared to make a motion for approval, subject to...
Um, we have a motion, yes, uh, subject to the change. We have a motion for approval of item fifty-five, subject to the change, read in by Director Wheeler. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you. That goes forward to council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Item fifty-six, TXT two-three-eight-seven-six, text amendment, public hearing. Applicant, City of Las Vegas. Discussion and possible action to amend Title nineteen point oh-four and Title nineteen point two-zero to revive standards for childcare and adult care facilities. Staff?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this comes as a part of a council request and a request from the Department of, uh, uh, from the Planning Department and Business Licensing. In regards to, to the adult daycare, uh, currently it's permitted in the commercial zones. This would allow it in, in as a special use permit within certain residential districts, uh, much like childcare, uh, uses. In regards to the childcare use, uh, the change would bring into compliance, uh, conformance the Title nineteen requirements and Title six requirements for childcare. Uh, currently, uh, in the licensing under, under childcare, under Title six, uh, one to six children are permitted, but three additional children may be permitted for care during non-school hours. So therefore, uh, someone could watch toddlers during the day and then, uh, uh, then other children come home from school and they can watch those children during that time. This would bring those, uh, uh, two titles into conformance.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask the Commission for a motion or a comment.
I, I have some comments, and I, I know it's late, but... Um, doesn't matter. I understand. I'm on the, uh, a board of a company in Southern California that does senior housing and includes, uh, daycare for adults, seniors. And, uh, I was just there yesterday and talked to the experts, and I know about them, and I've, I've visited the facilities. This is not gonna work for adult daycare. Because when, adult daycare is basically an, a facility that is a wide-open space. It's a big room. There's no need for bedrooms. It will not fit in a house properly. It needs a large area where these people have lounges they can sit in, if they're wheelchair, whatever. This is a very different approach, adult daycare. And, and it's gonna be a very difficult thing to do in a house that has a lot of rooms, because you can't supervise the people when they're in rooms, and they don't come there to sleep. So I would say that this needs to be looked at again. I would also say that when you have parking requirements of one for each staff member and one for each client, there isn't a customer we've ever had at our company that ever drove, and that's why they're in adult daycare. I understand. But my question is the need for parking spaces for clients. There is no need. However, I will say this, that eighty percent of our customers in adult daycare come by van that our company provides to go pick them up. So there is need for, I would guess you would say, a handicapped space for that particular facility, if that's what you're going to do. I think this needs to be reworked. I'm all for it. I'm not sure it belongs in residential districts, just because of the nature of going into a sixteen-hundred or, or two-thousand-square-foot house. I think you need a totally open area with an office for a director and somebody else and maybe a place where they have a conference room or a place for a doctor or nurse if they're on sta, on staff. But you don't need a lot of rooms. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I think it needs to be looked at again. I know where it came from. Came out of my ward, if I believe, my councilman, and I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it. So I wanted to put those comments on the record. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? No? Do we have a motion? No?
I think it should be relooked at, uh, from the standpoint of a residential neighborhood. And if it's gonna be done, there oughta be, I mean, fifteen square feet of common area per person. If you have ten feet, that's seven, ten people, that's seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet that you have to have, that's not enough for the kind of activities that are involved in adult daycare. It may be enough when you have a nursing-type situation, which the people don't get out of their beds. That's adequate, and I know that's where that came from. So I, I would like, I'll work with you on the situation and help you out, but I think it needs to be revised as it relates to adult daycare.
So are you wanting to hold it?
I think it should be held, and I'll be glad to work with staff on it and get some other answers and work with Larry on it. Larry Brown?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to obey for, let's make it thirty days, so it's right.
We have a motion on item fifty-six to hold to...
October eleventh?
October eleventh. Please vote.
Thank you.
Post. Motion carries. We move on to item fifty-seven. Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Seeing none, I'll close the public participation.
Thank you. Todd Farland, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I just wanna throw this out. A few years ago, down at, uh, at the Senior Center down here, uh, and also at East Las Vegas, NDOT had a proposal on what they're gonna do with I-95 down here. And one of the proposals was that they were gonna make a double-decker out of that thing that was eighty-five feet in the air. These billboards that they're talking about are supposed to be thirty feet above the sound wall. So that's, we've got a billboard down there now at Stewart's Market that's eighty-two feet. So if that, if that double-decker freeway they're gonna put in someday is gonna be eighty feet, and then there's gonna be a sound wall on top of that, and then another thirty-some feet for that billboard, I just want somebody to picture what that's gonna do to that neighborhood down there.
It's gonna be a maximum height of sixty-five, so you would never, you'll never see a billboard that high.
Well, it's over sixty-five now.
No, no, no. The maximum height of the billboard will only be sixty-five feet.
Yeah, but that could be waived, can it? That's what administratively could be done, is sixty-five feet. And you can go beyond that if you had...
But it could be waived now, so...
Yeah, that's right.
Uh-oh. You talked too long and let somebody else slip in.
Good evening. Uh, Dave Clapp's out with, uh, G.C. Garcia, seventeen-eleven Whitney Mesa Drive in Henderson. Not here to talk about goats tonight. Happy not to do that. But, um, we were here monitoring the adult daycare center. This does affect a client of ours, um, that we want to ensure never has a problem with not being conforming to this ordinance with being residential. Commissioner Simon, we would love to be able to work with you, staff, to make sure that, um, your concerns are taken care of.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. And, and, uh, the director has an announcement?
Planning Commission is invited to the City Council on October third in the morning. We will have a proclamation, um, for National Community Planning Month, and we would certainly like to have the Planning Commissioners represented, uh, at the ceremonials at the City Council the morning of October third. No, you have to share it, sir. It's a group award.
Seeing no one else, I'll close.